Alexis, we put 30 seconds on the clock and start our video stream.
Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guetta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
I am here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Vice Mayor Guetta, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Mido, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin and Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Ranch area, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation of Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Salute. Joining me in the pledge of allegiance, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, a very good afternoon to my colleagues, the city team, and most important, the members of the public who we serve. We have a very busy agenda tonight, mostly focused on, again, our upcoming city budget. And, but before we do that, we get the privilege of starting with a special presentation. And I get to start with a special presentation. And that is a mayoral proclamation in support of SEIU Local 1000's contract bargaining. So this is special for me for several reasons. Number one, of those of you who know my journey here in Sacramento, know that I got my start as an attorney with SEIU Local 1000 for 10 years. I had the privilege of representing state workers in collective bargaining, adverse actions, the whole host of things. It was one of the best experiences of my life and in part made me what I am and who I am today, where I learned how to be an advocate. More important than that, though, Local 1000 has a long and important history of representing core workers in the city of Sacramento. That's what makes this proclamation, this mayoral proclamation especially relevant, is that we are home to so many Local 1000 employees. And you have been through the ups and downs of state budgets, made sacrifices where that has been necessary. But it's always been, always been, about a fight to make sure that the public service is defined as more than a living wage, but good wages, good health care, good retirement security, and good benefits as a model for not only other public workers, but for the private sector as well. And so you now have another round. And we all, I know, I love and have the greatest regard for Governor Newsom and the administration, all the things he's doing. But we wanted, I wanted to put forward a proclamation that simply said, "We see you. We recognize you." And that collective bargaining and good faith negotiations are a pillar of what has built the middle class and what has helped build Sacramento. And so it's in that spirit that we reward this proclamation. I want to thank, you know, a lot of people, Councilmember Valenzuela. I know that, you know, you've been championing this for some time. I want to thank you for your leadership. I know Eric Guetta, Katie Maple, everybody actually on this dais is a strong supporter of state workers and what it is you do. And so is there anybody from Local 1000 that wants to come up and say nice things about the mayor?[314.26][314.27][laughter]
I would be honored to. So let me see if I can start out with some nice things about the mayor. So Honorable Mayor, Mr. Steinberg, esteemed council members. Can you hear me? Can I get a little bit closer? Do I need to lean in a little bit? All right. So Honorable Mayor Darrell Steinberg, esteemed council members, and the members of SEIU Local 1000 in the chamber this evening, it is my distinct honor and my privilege as vice president of SEIU Local 1000 Bargaining to accept this proclamation on behalf of our dedicated state workers. This proclamation is not just a piece of paper. It is a tangible symbol of the respect, the recognition, and the support that our city, Sacramento, has for each and every state worker. It is a testament to your relentlessness, dedication, your unwavering commitment, and your invaluable contribution to our city. I am filled with immense pride as I stand before you this evening, holding or receiving this proclamation. I firmly believe that this honor will serve to bolster our reserve, excuse me, our resolve, as we navigate the choppy waters of our bargaining with the state in the coming days. Our journey has just begun at the bargaining table. And yes, it's going to be filled with many ups and downs, twists and turns. But we are going to forge ahead with courage and determination. And when the going gets tough, and it's going to get tough, we will look at this proclamation that you have given to us today and remember that Sacramento has our back. So a special word of gratitude to Councilmember Katie Valenzuela. Your steadfast support for our members, your unwavering commitment to our cause, and your tireless efforts in working with Mayor Steinberg to make this proclamation a reality are deeply appreciated by all of us. So I want to say thank you for standing with us. I would also like to recognize Councilmember Eric Rera. Your unwavering support for our members and your continuous advocacy for our cause has not gone unnoticed by any of us. For that, we extend our heartfelt thanks. Now, I want to say thank you, Sacramento, from the bottom of all of our hearts. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. And thank you to all of our members who work tirelessly every day to make our city a better place. We are proud, we are strong, and we are resilient. And we will continue to fight, knowing that Sacramento is with us every step of the way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can we, can I, can I present the proclamation? We got some members who want to speak. Why don't we have Councilmember Valenzuela, Vice Mayor speak? I'm going to go down and we'll get prepared for the picture.
And please stay here because we're going to take a photo. And I really want to see that photo. Thank you so much for those beautiful words and for all of your beautiful faces and bodies for being down here today. I'm just so honored and excited that you're here today. I'm so honored and excited to represent so many Local 1000 members in my district. Your success is our community's success. So I really am rooting for you and everything that you do. And I did want to say, since the mayor got a chance, and I really want to commend our mayor for taking this step tonight and making this proclamation, I also would like to bring an office proclamation on behalf of myself and some of my colleagues. I've talked to Councilmember Talamontes, Councilmember Maple, and Councilmember Vang, less than a brown egg bubble. So I know Councilmember, Vice Mayor's going to want to get in on that. And if other of my colleagues would like to as well, just so we can also uplift what the mayor is doing with his proclamation and add a little boost to that as you're going into your bargaining.
I appreciate that. Thank you all in all.
On behalf of just not only myself, my family, who have been state employees, we remember the days when we got IOUs, that you couldn't cash them. We remember the days where we had to get loans and deferrals. And we know that how many of you work in everything from making sure that housing is getting built at the state level, that the Department of Toxic Control is looking at all the health and safety, that we're making that the Civil Rights Division in our state is getting managed. So we thank you for all that work. And again, same thing, we've got our own different proclamations here. And they're not as fancy as the mayor's. He's got a fancier one. But we're glad to hear the support. So thank you with that in. Thank you for us, Local 1000.
I'll just stand here. Okay, I'm like, hold on, don't move yet. Thank you.
Members, let's begin with the consent calendar. But before we do, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read some of the rules and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the public, this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should come to a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. And each speaker will have two minutes to address the council. So that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules or procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website, the copy is in the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, or displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that the person cease disruptive conduct. And if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. A cordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are also available from the clerk. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Let us now move to the consent calendar, items 1 through 13. Are there items that any member wants to have heard separately or to talk about separately? I know I do have one, and it relates to the city auditor's, the city auditor's item on the consent calendar. I'm not sure what number. Item number 11. Yes, correct. Comment on 12. Let's see. Okay.
Four.
Four. Everyone wants to talk about four. Okay.
11, 12.
Who's 12? Okay. 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 Very good. All right. And I'm going to comment on item, on item 11. Okay. But no separate votes. Okay, then let's start going through. Item number four, Councilmember Maple, Vice Mayor Guetta, Councilmember Valenzuela. Go ahead. Did I, did I miss you? Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem. Go ahead. Mayor, I just, I didn't get you there.
Thank you so much. No worries, Mayor. Just not pulling this item, but really just wanted to say thank you. I think this is a really exciting opportunity. It's the grant agreement for Justice for Neighbors Emergency Home Repair Pilot Program. I just want to take this moment to thank Peter Lemos, Michael, and Leslie Fritchett for really working hard to bring this item to council. Over the past two years, since I've been on the city council, we've received numerous calls, in-person requests, really about any programs the city can provide to help many of our homeowners, our low-income seniors, really repair their homes. And so I'm really excited for this program to roll out. The allocation for this is only $500,000. And my understanding is that this pilot program would allow up to $15,000 per home. And we're anticipating keeping between 50 to 75 properties, homeowners really in their homes. So I'm really excited about that. The only thing I'd like to add to this item and would like to direct the city manager, and I've shared this with Peter as well, and their team is going to do their best to track this. But as we're rolling out this pilot program, I think it's going to be really important to make sure that we track the outcomes, in particular by district, income, and demographics. I believe that the $500,000, wow, it sounds like a lot. It's really not a lot. And I anticipate that the need for this program is going to be much higher. But before city staff brings this back, it's going to be important to make sure that we're tracking outcomes. So if we can do it by district, income, demographics, gender identity expression, that'd be really great. And then in particular also, it's going to be really important how we track these dollars and how much additional outside dollars we're going to actually leverage with Habitat for Humanity. So I think that's important to track when city staff brings that back and wanted to add that direction to this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, who was next on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the comments of Mayor Pro Tem Vang, especially about tracking outcomes. I think that's going to be very important for us to know. Also, really want to thank our code enforcement and community development teams for working together to find a way to keep our elderly and low-income folks in their homes while maintaining that habitability. I think it's really important. Many of these homes are eligible homes are in District 5. And so just thank you for your work on this. I know it didn't happen overnight. So thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, I, you know, one thing that I think folks understand and hope, and I know our code officers do that, is they're trying to help address the quality of life issues. And not only on the housing issue, but sometimes people aren't aware that they have other benefits that the city does have, like some of the free garbage pickup or other issues, or in fact, another consent item here, which is the Leak-Free Sacramento, ways to improve their home. And so this, I think, helps us be able to ensure that we're helping not only with compliance, but improving the home quality and keeping the standard there and finding a better way to make that. Because no one in, folks in their neighborhood don't necessarily want to call code enforcement on their neighbor, but they know that the house is becoming in a terrible situation. This helps us be able to help them stay in their home, but more importantly, improve the quality of life of the overall neighborhood. So I'm excited about this. And it hasn't been moved, but I'll go ahead and move the item with the direction identified by Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
We have the whole consent calendar. Yeah, that's right. Go ahead, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, I just, I want to echo my appreciation for the code and housing teams. I know, Peter, when we had one of our first calls with you and Daniel Foster, who was our housing policy analyst, I expressed an interest in this. Because when I was organizing around housing issues in Oak Park, I was finding these homeowners who were about to lose their homes for things. And I knew how much it killed, and I could see it in your face that day, even on the team's meeting in COVID, of like how much it kills you and your team to say, gosh, there's this safety issue, and we can't just walk away because it's a real issue that could hurt you. But we also know you might not be able to afford to fix it. And so to find this program coming to fruition, I know how long you've wanted to do this because that was two, three years ago that we had that phone call, and here it is. So I just really want to applaud you because I know you were really hustling and looking and scrounging for whatever you could do to make this happen. That this moment is a really, really big moment. And a kudos to you and your team, and obviously the city manager's team for your persistence to finding this funding. So really want to thank you for that. I want to also echo my colleague's interest in seeing how we make this more ongoing, which I know is a constant battle. There's also been instances where I know our building trades have stepped in to help homeowners who've been in trouble. Obviously, it's not something that they can do every time. But I want to just put that out there as one of the options of, you know, potential group of folks who sometimes approach and say, hey, we want to do a volunteer day with our members. What should we do? And these are skilled folks. And I'm thinking, gosh, I wish I had something more than rebuilding the garden at the school in the neighborhood. But I'll find something. But I think there's some more partnerships that as you build success in this program. I just really wanted to just note, I know how much you and your team care about this. And I just want to really thank you for the work you did to make this happen.
Excuse me. Really hard when you're up next on the speaking queue. But I am. And that's item 11. And this is the city auditor's recommendation follow-up report. Mr. Otter, I don't know if you're here, if one of, you are here. Nice to see you. You don't, just wanted to make sure you were here. That's okay. My comments are regarding one of the audits outlined in your follow-up report to the council. That's the November 2021 audit of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. There has been this ongoing issue about staffing of the commission. And you made a number of audit findings on that subject and related subjects. And I'd like to ask if your office would please present the specific audit report on the police commission to our law and ledge committee. And I mentioned this to Chair Valenzuela as well. And ask the chair and the members to take a deeper look at the audit, the 16 recommendations within it, and to please begin putting together some recommendations and potential staffing needs based upon what the city auditor reported out. It's an item of important public interest, but also as we make progress, and I think we are making progress in strides on creating more functionality between and among all of the oversight arms of the city when it comes to the police and fire departments, that we answer some of the questions that you have laid out in the audit. And so if you'd worked together on that, I'd really appreciate it. All right, hearing no objections. It shall be so. Thank you. Okay. There we go. Okay. Item 12, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we are, as a city, entering a unique time. We're currently starting negotiations with nine of our labor partners. And by the end of the year, we'll be negotiating with all. And I think it's important as we enter this, just as you stated, you know, having fair contracts, honest contracts, livable contracts as we enter negotiations with our employee unions, that we don't just call out one, but we support all. Because we, as a city in Sacramento, are built on labor unions. And so this is a resolution expressing support for all employees represented by labor unions, our SAC City Exempt Employees Association, our Stationary Engineers Local 39, our SAC Area Firefighters Local 522, our Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council, our Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 447, our Auto Marine and Specialty Painters Local 1176, our Western Council of Engineers, our International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, our unrepresented employees, and our Sacramento Police Officers Association. Over 85% of our City of Sacramento employees are represented by a labor union, and it could be more, but that's the most recent number. So I grew up in a labor household. So this is important to me that we make sure that as a family, and we're entering into negotiations, that we value all of our employees. And so I am proud that this is on the agenda for council consideration and passage.
And Councilmember Kaplan, let me thank you for, you know, rounding it all out, if you will, and making sure that we recognize all of the labor unions. Laboring is very, very important in this city, representing the collective aspirations, the collective rights of thousands of, tens of thousands of people who work in this city. And so thank you. Okay, we have a consent calendar. We've got, we've heard the public testimony. We know, we have not heard the public testimony. We have five speakers. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have five speakers to speak on this item. I'd like to remind members of the public, if you'd like to speak on an agenda item, when the item begins, if you're in council chambers, fill out a speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, raise your hand. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips. And the raised hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. You'll have two minutes to address the council. So my speakers in chambers are Marbella Sala, Mac Worthy, and Mackenzie.
Good evening. I know it's been a long day for some of you. I'm Marbella.
It's just starting.
Yeah. Oh, it started at two. Anyway, so I'm Marbella. I'm the president of Garneland North Gate Neighborhood Association. I'm speaking on item four. I was so happy to see that because it's something that I would like to see happen in Garneland. We're an old community. And as you all know, very little investment has been given to Garneland. And a pilot project such as this would go really well in Garneland. And I really appreciate, member, Vang, you mentioning the importance of gathering data and ensuring that these pilot programs or this money is equitably going to those neighborhoods that are most in need. And I can tell you that there's some beautiful families and beautiful generational families that live in Garneland that could benefit from resources such as this. And just to, to just highlight, so GNNA and SMUD pilot are in a pilot project with the community. And we're replacing refrigerators, air conditioning, gas heaters, windows, free of charge for that community. And we were able to complete 33 homes. So taking it to the next level would be most beneficial. So thank you. And maybe you need to give it more than $500,000.
Thank you, Marbella.
Our next speaker is Mac Worthy. Following Mr. Worthy is Keon Bliss. Next, Mr. Worthy is speaking on item four.
Good afternoon, people. I speak on this issue because it's the first time I've seen trust fund written in anything in this city. That's my heart trust fund. Understand that, you may make it. But this pilot program, a young lady was in here not long ago. We got to be careful what the inspector's writing upon her. She said they come to her place several times, and the city wanted that piece of property. So we got to be careful and have a little bit of deep in what is the problem at the house. This is the thing about, we got to understand that. I would like to see more literature on this issue. Who are here to give me paperwork on it? I don't want to get on, I don't do nothing on the internet. I want to see it in black and white and analyze some of the stuff there. Because people, when we got nonprofit organizations doing things here, we got some political, and I refer to political as garbage. When we have people saying, well, this city was built off of union, that's a lie. You better do your research. This city was built out of federal government. And when they went, the city fell on its face. That's the reason Bank of America was sued on the escrow money. City, now that man right there was involved. Cabin was involved. But nobody come forward and said, people, we are sorry that we misuse your money. No bank gonna hold no money. When that money lay there, they was doing small contractors. That's the reason there is no competition in contractors. Who contracts here is inside here. So be aware is what you're dealing with. Union money, we want to track it.
Our next speaker is Keon Bliss on item 11, and then Mackenzie on item 13.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Just wanted to show appreciation for moving on the city auditor's report and really taking this up with the Law and Legislation Committee. I think it's obviously a very important issue. And continue to, you know, lift that up from the end of the Police Review Commission and speaking for myself right now tonight. One of the things I wanted to highlight to in, alongside the issue of staffing for the commission, which I know is currently under consideration, I also want to look at the format for, really take a deep look into the format for how our recommendations are presented, as well as the process for that. In case, I know a lot of you are, may not have gotten to see the conversation that happened last August when the new rules and procedures were put out. But there were several recommendations that were jointly signed and supported by at least seven city advisory bodies with a draft, with draft language for the, like, for a with a draft—with draft language for the— for a process for recommendations that could easily be inserted into city ordinance and city code, which would encourage really taking a look at. Because that honestly is one of the key missing components that is missing, not just for our commission, but for all commissions, I believe. And another thing, too, was confusion around the format of how our recommendations are submitted. And speaking for myself, and I'll double-check on this, but I didn't actually— I don't actually recall agreeing to a specific format. I remember previously that we had submitted our recommendations via Word documents, which the previous commissioners before I had done. And then we have since transitioned to spreadsheet format, which we've been using for several years now. But now it's being—I read in the notes tonight that it was— like that it's being switched up again. So I just want to make sure—if we can dive deep into that, too, and make sure that there's a clear format—
Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mackenzie.
Thank you.
Following Mackenzie is Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Hey, y'all. Here for item 13, trying to make Mindy Cuppy the decorum officer. Start by saying that I always think it's a bad idea when we do things that are in favor of squashing dissent because democracy is informed and expanded by dissent. So I give you a small lesson on social change in relation to the polarizing efforts, items like this. Wait, items like this, something, something— Oh, oh, items like this, that are trying to figure out how to keep hungry homeless on the verge of sad or angry, you know, voices out of this space. You see, the efforts to keep people out of this democracy are not isolated to Sacramento. It's actually happening across our country, from voter suppression laws to rules of decorum. This is happening because of the devastation. It's all gotten so bad that these folks, regardless of why they think the devastation is here, are flocking to these spaces. Like, think folks like me to folks like uninformed ones who think that homelessness isn't a systemic crisis and therefore advocate for things like sweeps. You can find moments like this throughout history, under every elite, under every economic system. And because I only have two minutes, I have to wrap up by saying that your efforts to quell dissent are the very things that lead us to our escalated and radicalized action and help us dream of decision-making spaces that look nothing like this. This is a bad idea. Stop using members of our community as tools for white supremacy. And shame on y'all that you're even trying to shut out the voices that are here to fight for their survival in the first place. Have a good one.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi. And then PJ.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name's Dylan. I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm also here to make a comment on item 13 relating to the decorum officer. I—I'm making this comment because, as I'm sure many of you know, last week at the meeting, there was a Sacramento resident who showed up to express their pain and grief because their father was murdered by Sacramento police. They were unceremoniously removed from the meeting by the mayor, who not only removed them from that meeting, but prohibited them from attending for the next two meetings in a row. So the timing of this item to add a decorum officer is interesting to me. And it, to me, it just seems like an act of cowardice of the mayor— on behalf of the mayor, trying to avoid accountability for what I'm sure he assumed was the inevitable backlash for what he did last week. I think it's a huge mistake to have any sort of increase in enforcement of quote-unquote "decorum" in the meetings. To quote former President John F. Kennedy, "Those who make peaceful revolution impossible will make violent revolution inevitable." It's very important that people who have experienced grief and pain have some outlet to vent that grief and pain. If they don't have that, then decorum's going to fall apart. So even if it might make people uncomfortable, allowing people to express their pain is vital to a functional democracy. So I would encourage the Board of Superv— I'm sorry, the City Council to remember that as they continue to go forward and make decisions relating to quote-unquote "decorum." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ, and then Barry Boyd.
Yeah, on item 13, I must have missed the part where you had addressed everything else in the city, and so the only thing left for you to do was tone police people who don't feel heard by you and pawn them off on the bureaucracy, which has shown them disdain. Did you finish it all? Is it done? Can we stop showing up? Do you think any of these people actually want to see your face? Do you think they want to waste their Tuesdays? Do you think they want to waste their Thursdays looking at the agendas to determine how you're going to try and fuck them over? Do you think this is an ideal state for them to exist in? To constantly see how you can harass the poor and arm the rich with your obedience to directing the levers of power in their favor? So I ask again, did you fix everything? Is it all done? Is every problem addressed? Or is this merely a distraction so you can hide from criticism from a public you already hate to even have to listen to? Because we know you. With the Strong Mayor Initiative, you showed your whole ass by lowering the number of days that you would have to engage with the public to— "to," I think it was, in a year? Two days. Lie to me again about how you were a responsive mayor. Who cares about his constituents? Lie to me, but make it sweet, make it soothing, and make it undeniably false like every other one of your words. The First Amendment may not matter to you, but it matters to me. Making my disenfranchisement a part of your bureaucracy is bullshit. Fuck your decorum and fuck you, Daryl.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, Barry Boyd, is our final speaker on the consent calendar.
Thank you and good afternoon. I want to echo the words of the council members and others that have spoken favorably in regards to Agenda Item 4, the Justice for Neighbor Emergency Home Repair Pilot Program. And I would like to thank Code and Housing Enforcement Chief Peter Lemos for bringing this pilot program forward. I do hope that the pilot program transitions into an ongoing program with a greater funding amount. And again, I would like to throw my support behind this item and hope that, again, the—that there is a way that additional fundings can be found after a successful pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more comments on the consent calendar.
All right, thank you. We do have a motion and a second, I believe, on the consent calendar. Second by Councilmember Kaplan. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. The consent calendar passes. And thank you to the members of the public for calling in. We are going to take an item without objection out of order out of respect to the Measure U Committee because they were scheduled for late last week, and we were not able to get to them. So without objection, I'd like to take item 17 first and ask Chair Dickinson to please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Especially thank you for taking us out of order. I had already appreciated that—the mayor and the clerk had gotten this agenda on tonight's— gotten this item on tonight's agenda. And I know it's a full agenda, and I'll try to be quick. I'm here to hope that— urge you to approve the Measure U Community Advisory Committee request for the establishment of a Budget and Policy Subcommittee as forwarded to you by the— your P and PE Committee. I note that this Subcommittee will help us meet the expectations related to budget review and recommendations established by the council in the Powers and Duties section of the ordinance that established the Measure U Community Advisory Committee. In addition, I note that we made a request for two other subcommittees directly related to expectations also established in the powers and duties of the commission that the committee— related to the committee working with city staff on community engagement. Given your robust discussion last week about expanding community involvement in council budget considerations, I hope you will also consider, expeditiously, even tonight if possible, to establish a second Subcommittee that would encompass all of the responsibilities identified for the two remaining subcommittees we recommended, perhaps called a Community Engagement Subcommittee to track with the provisions of the code that established the Measure U Committee. Finally, I note that you are establishing a similar Community Advisory Committee for Measure L and would offer myself and other Measure U community members, current and past, as resources to you, to staff, and to the new Measure L Committee members about lessons learned in the establishment of a new— establishment, launch of a new committee for the city. Happy to answer questions or get more information.
Let's just—I just want to— What specific committee or Subcommittee are we requesting tonight?
Tonight, we are requesting the Budget and Policy Subcommittee.
Okay.
As forwarded to you by the P and PE Committee.
Okay. And you'd like a second committee?
We had originally requested three committees, but we believe we can roll those committees into—
One.
One.
One additional, focused on trying to help us develop a more community-based process for engaging the community in next year's budget.
Right, right.
Okay. Well, I'd certainly be okay with that, but let's hear from the other members. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. At PPNE, Measure U did present all of this information to the committee members. And we know specifically Measure U is about budget and policy and wanted to make sure that those who wanted to have a Subcommittee could have a Subcommittee. We asked and took a pause on approving their community communications as well as their participatory budget implementation. One, needing more information of what was the purpose. Two, transparency, because a lot of what they were working on could have happened with the— with the monthly meetings. And three, we were still open if they brought us new information of why they couldn't accomplish the participatory budgeting and the community communication outside of their normal monthly meeting. So to come back with that information, I don't think we have the ability tonight because council rules require subcommittees to go through PPNE before the council can consider. But I do want to publicly say, we at PPNE are open to it. We just need to understand what can't be done during their monthly meeting.
Fair enough. So you want to approve the first—the recommendation—
The budget one.
Tonight, we'll do that, and then come back to P and PE. And that'll maybe help— maybe you can develop together the process for greater community engagement for the budget. That's fine. That would be fine.
I—yes, thank you. I appreciate that. I just did not want to lose the energy that was created last month in your discussion.
Understood. Councilmember Valenzuela? Did I miss somebody again?
No, it's okay.
No, that was my fault. I took myself off, and it was just an accident. Thank you, Mayor. I'll make it quick. We have a really—really quick, really long meeting. First of all, thank you. I know there's not a lot of work. In fact, I watched—I watched some of your meeting the other night, and I can really sense the energy from everyone on there about engaging in the process. I guess I just have a question, maybe this is the clerk, is how much time does this add on? So if they wanted to create, you know, this community engagement committee, which I am 1,000% in support of, I think that we have a lot of work to do as a city to make our—a lot of our processes more engaging to the public. What—how long would that add on if it has to go back to P and PE? And then does it have to come back to council? And then—
I will defer to Chair Kaplan of the P and PE Committee, but I think—I believe that the committee was directed to come back with their annual work plan, which would include additional subcommittees.
Okay, so it can come back to the next P and P meeting, which is—
I believe they—
Okay.
But remember, if I may—I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're talking about next year's budget. I mean, so there is—there is some time here. Go ahead.
That's it? I just have questions about timeline. Appreciate it.
Okay. I don't—who else was in the queue? I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I think you guys are messing with me a little bit here.
No, no. We're just—it's the Katie and Katie thing. We're just—we're trying to keep you on your toes.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, Chair Dickinson, for coming and for the Measure U Committee. I mean, this is an interesting question because essentially what you're saying is we can do kind of both things under one committee. Because I know part of the consideration is staff capacity, obviously. If we sign up for four—like, if we give 800 Subcommittee requests, then the clerk can't notice that many meetings, and that makes a lot of sense. You know, I was satisfied with the explanation you provided in your original request. So, I mean, for me, we're approving one committee, and it really is a question of, like, what's the scope of that committee? So I guess if that committee wants to keep meeting—I know this was timely because they need to be able to meet before the budget comes back next month. And so there's a certain, like, we need you to be able to do this Subcommittee so you can be ready for your next full commission meeting so you can get us recommendations.
Well, I do want to give a great appreciation to the clerk, but because of the timing, we did have scheduled a special meeting of the full committee for next Monday so that we can get our recommendations done and to budget an audit and then to the council within your discussion window. So this Subcommittee, which I think is really important and needs—you know, needs to kick off in sort of anticipation of next year's budget. And there is a challenge. There is no question. We have this discussion at PPNE, and I know the clerk has been very clear. There is a challenge in having subcommittees and all the attendant requirements for staffing and notice and room availability and all of the—all of the things that go with that. And—but those are the cards that—we were dealt with the establishment of the new policy. And one of the things we did discuss that I forgot to mention at PPNE is the idea of reviewing after a year how this has worked. And I think, how's it work for—the clerk and staff and the committee and the whole nine yards? And so I hope that is encompassed in any approval so that we do have the opportunity, as I guess the first city committee that would have a Subcommittee, have an opportunity to sort of, again, lessons learned for all of us.
So you're still just asking for one committee? It's just what you're talking about is maybe the scope gets a little bit more expanded. Well, you're asking for three.
No. Based on your discussion last week, it seemed like there was such energy behind the idea of involving the public. So the idea is, we really want—the—we really need the Budget and Policy Committee. But the community—the idea of community engagement, which I would argue we can encompass the two other committees that were not approved into one Subcommittee that is broadly community engagement, that would include participatory budgeting as a project and then other ideas for outreach. And I—I understand that maybe that's a discussion for P and PE.
Yeah.
So just as a quick aside, because you are called the Budget and Policy Development, policy development is community engagement, how—whether the policy surrounding community engagement. So there's no reason why one Subcommittee can't have—
A broader purview.
A broader conversation—
There you go.
That—that needs to happen. Because I—I want to be really mindful of staff time and how many boards and commissions we have in that this process. But there's nothing truly limiting when your budget and policy development having those discussions.
I like this, like, vibe we're creating here. Because that's kind of what I was getting at, is I'm like, well, if you have a budget and policy committee approved, and you just keep meeting after the budget's done, and now you're looking towards more policy development, more practice, best practices, reviewing engagement, talking about recommendations for the next round of engagement, which we hope starts much sooner, then like—it sounds like we have found a way to— So essentially, what we're saying is, we're going to give you one committee, but it's going to happen now.
We can try.
And you can still request more committees through P and PE. But we're saying, hey, if you want that broader scope in this one committee—
Yeah. Yeah, tonight, I think the—
We're good.
We're going to—hearing both the council members and all the— that I think we're comfortable tonight with one. And then—but we'll talk about whether we can broaden the scope of that committee. Andrew, you come back for a second?
Yeah.
And it's fine. We're collaboratively together, but let's get started. First Subcommittee?
I'm taking my direction that hopefully you'll approve one Subcommittee called Budget and Policy. And that, as we define what that means, if we go beyond what somebody thinks it means, will—somebody will let us know.
What you're hearing this council say as I move this item is that we're approving the committee, and we're giving you direction to consider expanding the scope of the committee to include these community engagement and—
This is good.
Which should be included in your work plan as it comes to us.
Which is on our June agenda.
Mayor Protam, do you want to add anything?
So that's my—so that's my motion, is that we're approving this Subcommittee and then—
Good.
And giving them the broader scope.
Valenzuela and Kaplan?
So when it comes to agenda planning with the clerk, she knows that they're still within scope.
Excellent.
I will—I will keep this short, Mayor.
Please.
So first, Chair Dickinson, I just want to say thank you so much for your time, for serving as chair. I also want to give a shout out to my Measure U Commissioner, Duke Cooney, as well, who's the vice chair of Measure U. And I know that all of you share—you're sharing your expertise and your wisdom, really with our city and council. And so it's so important that we ensure that actually, as a council, we're not creating more barriers for you, doing the free heartwork, love—labor of love for the community. And so definitely just want to say that. Something that you mentioned—I wasn't going to hit the button, but something that you mentioned that really just spoke to me is really some lessons learned from Measure U. And I think that's going to be really critical as we set up our new commission for the Sacramento Children's Fund. And so if possible, I'd love an opportunity to meet with you and just a few members of the commission to kind of learn about—the lessons learned so that we don't repeat those kind of flaws and challenges. kind of flaws and challenges. But in particular, I actually think that knowledge would be really beneficial, not just for me, but for PNP and also our city clerks, so that we can ensure success as we're onboarding our new commissioners for the Sacramento Children's Fund Oversight Committee. So I'd love an opportunity to meet with y'all. But I do think that PNP, it would be really beneficial for PNP and the city clerk's office so that we could ensure successful implementation of that oversight commission. Again, just want to say thank you so much for your service.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
It's really important. Okay, we got five members of the public that want to testify on this item.
I have three speakers. The first is Marbella Sala, and then we'll go online to call in user one and Jennifer Holden.
Thank you. And I'm here as a Measure U committee member representing District Three and in support of Chair Dickinson. So I'm really pleased that you're approving our request to have a subcommittee for budget and that you're going to broaden our scope for now. And maybe we might need another one, because we're wrapping up in a very fast pace to make our recommendations to you, because we really didn't have the adequate time to do it. But nonetheless, it's going to be done. But a key component of this was being able to get feedback from our community and getting... So we've missed that little piece, and informally, each of us have gotten comments from our community members, but it's informal, and we're bringing it to the table. But being able to formalize it, whether we're doing focus groups where we're out in the community, or we're engaging in the participatory budgeting process all over again, is so important to the work we do. So I appreciate that you're including and broadening our scope of what we're going to be able to do. So, thank you.
Next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Listening to this conversation really just brings deja vu to what many of us on our advisory bodies had warned about last year when Chapter 2.40 was updated. We're right now like seeing in real time a bottleneck where a lot of our boards and commissions, our volunteers, our volunteer community members who are not paid to do all this work are literally being held up from participating and providing you the information that you all need to make informed decisions, especially when it comes to our city budget at $1.5 billion. And I have to really express, I'm sorry, frustration at that, because this is something that could easily be changed here and now. And I really think that it is, you know, this is just one of many examples. We ourselves on the Police Review Commission ran into this very problem earlier this year, which if we hadn't spoken up about this, may have been in the same, like in the very same boat that the Measure U committee is in right now. So I don't know what it's going to take, but like, honest to God, I think it really does require, even if it's during this budget cycle or a minimum over the summer, that this is given a very serious look at to really clear up a lot of these bugs. Because we know that this was supposed to be a new process to standardize that. I'm not going to fault the intention explicitly for trying to consolidate a lot of the rules so that's more clear. But as we can see, there is a problem that the city clerk is struggling to really meet right now that needs council, it needs council direction to really clear up. And I think one of the basic bare minimum things is to allow our boards and commissions, again, to have ad hoc committees, because those are state-approved. Those are allowed under the Brown Act. And there's, I don't, it still doesn't make any sense, legal sense or logical sense, why we have to go through a single standing committee in order to have those when we didn't need...
For your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is calling user one, Jennifer Holden.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert, and I'm calling about Measure U committee, what's being discussed right now. During the participatory budget, let me back up. I attended a lot of Measure U meetings, and shout out to the mayor for his vision to get Measure U through twice. Otherwise, this city would be buried in red at this point, even with cares and all of that. You would be in the red because of that. And as I learned and went there, and I went to many meetings, we should have, our group should have applied, well, we applied, but we should have received funding through Measure U based upon what I voted for. Last summer, when the participatory budgeting came out, I decided to go to every meeting in District Two. Who does that? I do. And I went and I submitted my paperwork, mayor and city council, and Ash Raghani later ruled that they couldn't find the paperwork. You know why? Because I went to four different meetings, and I submitted the same paperwork, and they couldn't find my paperwork. So you have a problem down there. And there also was another group that was caught in an audit advantaging another group. And the auditor can show you that. So Measure U funding was presented one way, and now it's being co-opted through the homeless now. I don't remember hearing the Measure U funding was for homeless. I do not remember that. And they also said you can't be civically engaged after they selected the delegates. It's something peculiar about that.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker on this item is Jennifer Holden.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Holden, and I am a resident in District Five. And I initially raised my hand on this agenda item with some concerns about creating another subcommittee. So I'll throw my name on the stack of people who are concerned. However, the discussion that I heard between raising my hand and taking public comment kind of addressed some of my concerns, and I'm waiting to see how all of this works out over the next couple of months. I can understand that the load has gotten heavy. It is my understanding that the Measure U committee was created to handle the budgeting and the policy for Measure U funds. So to need a subcommittee for budgeting and policy for Measure U funds sounds, you know, to someone who hasn't studied up on this, it sounds a little funny. But I can hear that it's kind of going through a process, that there's a workload, and that we're looking for solutions. So I look forward to watching how all of that works. And then I'm going to make a little aside, since I have a little bit more time. I heard someone talk about a community engagement subcommittee in this discussion, and that perked my ears up quite a bit. I can tell you that as, you know, a member of the public who doesn't sit on city committees or commissions, but who watches a lot, a lot of the residents of Sacramento are wondering where Measure U money is going. There could be a lot of work done on communicating with your average Sacramento on where the Measure U funds are going. We've got a lot of questions about that, and I look forward to seeing how that can be worked to communicate where the Measure U funds are going in a more broad way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, thank you. There has been a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the PNP committee. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Thank you very much, again, Chair Dickinson, members of the committee, and members of the public. Let's now go back to the public hearings. We have three, what I think will be brief, public hearings. Why don't we combine items 14 and 15 together for presentation? We can have them voted on, of course, separately.
So our public hearing, items 14 is housing and dangerous buildings case fees, finding a fact for special assessments. And item 15 is code compliance case fees and penalties, finding a fact for special assessment.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Jose Mendez with Community Development, here to present items 14 and 15. These items are related to fees and penalties for special assessment and personal obligations. The staff report for item 14 reflects an amended total of 46 properties with a total of $96,122 and $23 of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against the properties. The staff report for item 15 reflects an amended total of 131 properties with the sum of $235,344 of unpaid fees scheduled for special assessment and personal obligations. Staff recommends that city council adopt two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessment levies and/or personal obligations upon the properties. That concludes my presentation.
Mayor, I have one speaker on item 15, Renee Noonley.
Ms. Noonley, take your time. Take your time. Don't rush. I see you.
Hello. I'm here for Delinquent Lee. I don't know where to start, and I was happy to hear Eric Greves, District Six, talk about hardship and quality of life and helping. My district, my Vang, I left two messages at her office and never was called back. But I was charged $715. That's what I had to pay to correct of some of the things, which was like two trees and a fence and some weeds. And then my fine is $700 and something, so that's over $1,400, talking about hardship and helping. And then the fence that I paid $65 to have somebody just nail it up to where it was satisfied. When the wind came, it just rattled back down. So that $1,400 that the city wants to make me pay, I could do the fence. Like he said, you know, hardship. My hardship, I'm nervous.
You take your time. It's okay. We're going to let you present.
My hardship hearing went on deaf ears. I tried to explain to them about, they just, and in the paperwork, it said their decision was made on that I had lack of interest of doing something, which wasn't true. And if I could go on and on, I could tell you a little bit of what happened. It was no lack of, because I did everything I could do, and I took care of all the problems.
So can I ask you, just, I'm not, I just want to help here a little bit. Are you asking for a payment plan for the money? Or are you saying that part of or all of it should be waived?
I think it should be waived, because everything that I did, all of it went on deaf ears. Like I said in the letter, they said they didn't even consider my hardship. They said I didn't, a lack of something, which wasn't true. And with the lien, how can I get a loan to fix things at the house? I can't.
Okay, could you, you're being very clear. Let's hear from the staff if there is a response here, and then let's, maybe we can provide some guidance. It's your district. It's my, it's your district, Mike. Go ahead.
Let's have city staff respond first, get her address as well. I do want to apologize. I just followed my staff to make sure if there was any inquiries, and want to make sure that we follow up on that. If her address is on the list, I would like to request to pull that item before we take a vote on this and address the case in particular with the constituent first. But I'll have staff answer that. And if her address is in, if the address is one of the addresses in the report, I would like to pull that item before we take a vote on that, and then we can work with our constituent on that case in particular.
Go ahead.
It's not an address on the report, but we can definitely meet with her and discuss and figure out what's going on, but it's not an item. We've looked through the report in detail, can't find it.
But this is for a vote tonight?
Correct. It's not part of the list. As if our program works great in this instance, Ms. Noonley maybe doesn't know the outcome, but I'll clarify with her. Ms. Noonley went to a hardship hearing in January, and the fees were reduced to zero at that time. There is no money owed to the city, and she...
Why don't you talk directly to her?
Excuse me? We're doing the public's business. Don't interrupt.
I'll meet with her personally right after this to make sure she has all the correct information.
Okay, thank you.
So it may be that it was reduced to zero, is what we just heard tonight, and maybe that's news to you, and good news.
Sounds really good to me. I mean...
Yeah, there was two parts. But it's not on tonight's item. Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't you meet with Mr. Lim, with Mr. Mendez here, and let's get all the information so that they can communicate with you about the exact status, and hopefully it's zero. We hope it is. And if that's the case, great. If not, then we'll work with whoever your councilmember is, your councilmember Vang, Mayor Protam Vang, and we will not bring this back for anything formal, if that's even necessary, until there's been some work through and workout.
Yeah, I've confirmed it.
Okay? Okay, that's excellent. Okay, so thank you for coming to City Hall. Sometimes, sometimes it works. Okay. All right, so now we do then have a motion and a second would be appropriate since this particular case is not... On items 14 and 15? Okay. Second on items 14 and 15?
Yes, second.
Okay, got it. I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor of item 14, please say aye. Opposed, abstained, that passes. All those in favor of item 15? No, we didn't get your speaking card. You can speak on the next item. All those in favor of item 15, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Mr. Worthy, you're out of order.
But you violated my civil rights.
No, no, we haven't. You didn't submit a card. Please, please wait, wait for the next item. Okay. Item 16.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Henry Fuss, a preservation planner with the Community Development Department. I am pleased to present the proposed landmark nomination for 1301 45th Street. Staff recommends this property for listing on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources as landmark under Criterion Three for its architectural significance. Built in 1926, the building is an excellent example of English Tudor and French eclectic architectural style and retains strong integrity in both material and place. The owners, Bay Mirian Catherine Bardis, support this nomination, and staff has received no letters of opposition to the proposed listing. On February 15, 2023, the Preservation Commission reviewed the nomination and unanimously made a recommendation to the city council to list 1301 45th Street as a landmark on the Sacramento Register. This concludes my remarks, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have about the item.
All right, do we have public testimony on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have no speaker slips in chamber, no hands raised online.
Okay, this is...
I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moved in second. Any council comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, that passes.
Thank you.
That's easy. Thank you for the good work here. All right, members, we now move to the budget part of the evening, and I'm going to ask that Mr. City Manager, that we take items 18, 19, 20 together, all on the Fire Department, presented as one chief custom on you. And then we'll take the public's testimony on any or all of those items.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council. I am Chris Costamania, your Fire Chief, and I will be presenting FYI 24 proposed budget. This is my, well, I'll go first by saying this. I've prepared many budgets. This is my first budget presentation to the full council, so you're in for a good surprise. Fire operations is made up of operations, fire training, and special operations. On the suppression side, these are the people who respond to a wide variety of emergencies, from fires to hazardous materials, they do it all, tolling 109,000 calls for service in calendar year 2022. This also includes community emergency response, the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, which is made up of volunteers from the community and managed by the Fire Department. The CERT team is utilized during storms, smoke events, heat events, which we've experienced a lot of recently. They also assist with wildland fires and the evacuation of companion animals. They also assist with wildland fires and the evacuation of companion animals. Community risk reduction is made up of emergency medical services, diversity, outreach and recruitment, or DOR, and fire prevention. The DOR division focuses on our outreach youth, excuse me, on outreach, our youth programs, recruitment, pipeline programs, and our inclusion team. These teams include the Core Equity Team, the AISTIT, or Advisory Council on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Transformation, and the Fire Service Regional Equity Committee, of which I am the chair. Technical service and professional standards is made up of logistics and professional standards. Infrastructure encompasses twenty-four fire stations as well as six other department locations. Fleet is made up of thirty-four engines and trucks and eighteen medic units, along with our ready reserve fleet. Communications is all of our cellular communication, radio communications, and includes our fire dispatch center as well. The Administrative Service Division is made up of fiscal personnel, special projects, and divisions. With our personnel division, the department was successful in hiring the current recruit academy. For each academy, it takes a hundred and twenty interviews, backgrounds, to fill a forty-person academy, which will last up to six months. Currently, personnel's in the process of hiring the EMS student trainees for the DOR program. This program had a hundred and fifty-six applicants in just under nine hours for twenty positions, a highly competitive program. All twenty positions are currently in background. The Office of the Fire Chief, small but mighty, is made up of myself and two administrative staff, Lori Kickinger and the manager for the PIO office, Wendy Aguilar. The Fire Executive Team, which includes three deputy chiefs seated behind me and a fire administrative manager also with us tonight. This office is responsible for policy, compliance, standards, and procedures, and the Public This slide reflects the department's proposed FY twenty-four operating budget and authorized staff. Due to timing and reporting issue, the proposed budget book does not reflect the current FY twenty-three amended budget that includes an increase of six million for a five-two-two contract that was approved by council at the end of last calendar year. The biggest change in staffing is the implementation of the single role program, which was also approved by council at the end of last year. The EMS single role program will allow for the Fire Department to properly, adequately support the operational and administrative and supervisory needs of the EMS delivery. The proposed budget also includes the addition of a behavioral health unit captain, or BHU, and a fire investigator, too. In twenty twenty-two, the BHU captain has provided over fifteen hundred contacts to our fire suppression line staff and over four hundred and thirty contacts for administration and fire prevention staff. Making a note not to put it in a binder next time. Our CIP, we have four point nine million invested in our CIP to ensure funds are available for annual required purchases. Because cost for fire apparatus has increased over thirty percent, item twenty on your agenda, which I will talk about in an upcoming slide, includes an augmentation to the CIP addressing funding shortfalls. Our current grants total one point eight million dollar and are used as detailed in this slide. Items nineteen and twenty included recommendations for adjustments to the department's current year budget. Item nineteen will create a multi-year operating project, or MIOP, and will provide carryover authority for the DOR pipeline programs to ensure the department will fully utilize all funding available to expand our pipeline programs in our continuing effort to diversify the department. Item twenty will recognize fire special district revenue, provide increased authority to the fire fleet apparatus CIP, where we will address shortfalls due to the price increases that I spoke about earlier, and make sure scheduled apparatus purchases happen on This concludes my presentation. I'd like to take a moment to thank my staff behind me, the Budget Office staff that helped develop this, and the City Manager's staff that worked with us. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Chief, and, uh, just wanted to say thank you for your service, and I've got to see your family, the, the three customanhas in the Fire Department. It's a great Sacramento legacy there. Madam Clerk, um, uh, members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
We've taken three items together, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. I do have four speakers on those items. The first is Ryan Henry on item eighteen, Mac Worthy and MVW on nineteen.
Mr. Henry?
On his way down.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Henry, Vice President, Sacramento Area Firefighters Local Five Two Two. With the adoption of tonight's proposed budget, we will begin a historic change in the way Sacramento Fire Department provides ambulance transport service to its citizens. In nineteen ninety-four, Sacramento began providing medical transport services with just four ambulances. We staffed twenty-three fire stations with thirty-one fire companies and responded over fifty-two thousand calls for service. Fast forward nearly thirty years. Today, your Fire Department operates twenty-four fire stations with thirty-four fire companies and eighteen ambulances. In twenty twenty-two, we responded to over a hundred and nine thousand calls for service. Over the last thirty years, we have added ambulances to meet the rising call volume, but we have simply outgrown our system. This new program will provide a more flexible and dynamic service delivery model, reduce mandatory overtime by moving firefighters back to suppression companies, and reduce barriers to entry into employment with the Fire Department. Coupled with our diversity, outreach, and recruitment division and the newly adopted EMS trainee program, we intend to grow our own. These three programs will provide a pathway from high school to a career in EMS and the fire service. The Sacramento Fire Department will become more representative of the community we serve. The City Manager and his team have proposed a budget that shows a strong commitment to the success of this program, and Local Five Two Two is in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Next speaker is Mac Worthy, and then MVW.
This is really not a, a workshop of budget. This is a bullshit workshop of budget. That's all. What you do here and don't bring the general public in, you are ignorant, every one of you. You are ignorant. That's a voter change. People, the Fire Department been misused. I saw a black man become the same position could even read, right here in the city. The city give him, the, anybody put a proposal out, I don't think they should share nothing with this city for no jump lines. My wife fell in my yard. It was fifteen minutes before we got our ambulance. Fifteen minutes. My wife died on the operation table. You know, this man here is one of the best you'll have. But we don't know where you are going. You spent all this time on kids. We know America will give you every dollar that you ask for for a child, but what did you produce as that child? Look at what's going on in your education department with children. You're tampering with four babies. You're gonna come down, you're gonna come down sad here. People sitting right here. We had three black people here in the mayor. What did they bring? Nothing. What did these others bring here? You don't tell people I'm a attorney in this diocese. If you got your lawyers out there, only that woman right there can ask any questions or legal, because you got a degree and it don't say you can owe a damn thing in this diocese. Teach them. Last week, you had somebody on here, but you're gonna train them to be city council. Four districts in here, you pimp the people in those people's district to be city council. You plant them there. Open up that city charter, and you cover a lot of this shit up.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is MVW, and then Lambert Davis.
A black firefighter in twenty twenty-one left the department as he described a culture as hazing, sexism, and racism. He alleged that during a twenty twenty George Floyd protest against police brutality, a fire captain said, "Can't these people stop protesting and go back to shooting each other?" In December, another black firefighter filed a lawsuit alleging white fire officials attempted to set him up to fail a test by giving him old training material and damaged equipment that caused him a physical injury. The lawsuit also alleged white firefighters used profanity and racist language to disperse the Black Lives Matter movement, but they were not disciplined. He also admitted that they answered more passion, compassionately to white nine-one-one callers than to black ones. Another Sacramento firefighter in twenty twenty posted to Facebook that he has killed people by refusing to lift them when they are overweight. He remains a firefighter currently with the Sacramento Fire Department. Timothy John Keys received a five-shift unpaid suspension. His annual compensation is over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I have killed more people in this way than in other ways. The city disciplined Keys with a two-hundred-and-forty-hour suspension, but he was allowed to use half of his vacation time to cover it. He was suspended for only five shifts. They also found other things on his Facebook. He posted an offensive post depicting a female providing first aid to a male that stated, it read CPR instructions. Check to see if nipples are hard. If not, rub head and, rub forehead until proper nipple tension is achieved. Kiss sensually the victim until she is unconscious. That is the type of firefighters you have in your city.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker on this item is Lambert Davis.
Yes, I'm, as a native of Sacramento, I, I appreciate that last speaker, because, shout out to the Sacramento Bee, they cover, they have covered the Sacramento Fire Department in a great way. Recently, there was a nepotism scandal, and it involved someone who hired their brother as an assistant, and, and they leapfrogged over two black qualified firefighters. It's in the Sacramento Bee. And it's, just like this lady just said, there's many racist scandals inside, uh, the Sacramento Fire Department, and where is it located? In the City Manager's office. They have five divisions down there, and he has never fired people caught in scandals. I have never found that, and it's always involving black people. Rarely do you see whites or Asians caught in a scandal in the City Manager's office. Sometimes, uh, Hispanics, but mainly blacks. And I personally think that a lot of people should be terminated in this Sacramento Fire Department, and I believe the mayor and the city council should use a two-thirds vote and terminate the current City Manager, Howard Chan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, uh, first of all, Chief, uh, if you don't mind coming up, and then maybe City Manager, I'm not sure how to, how, who would take this on, but first, uh, I wanna, I want to, glad to see that we have the MIOP here for the diversity and outreach program. That's one of the key things that I want to thank my, uh, council members and previous council members who voted on, on getting this, uh, DOR program, the diversity outreach program going. Obviously, one that, um, since back in twenty sixteen, when we first did the audit on the diversity in our recruitment efforts, um, showed that we've, we've got a long ways to go. In combination with the single role, and, you know, to hear, you know, Mr. Henry talk about, uh, you know, eighteen ambulance to where we are today, and we still aren't meeting the need, I mean, this, I think, helps us get to our issues where making sure we're responding and getting to those calls, um, that I think SacMetro is, is, um, is getting to faster and creating a bit of a, of leakage there. But I guess the question that I have is, in combination with the DOR program, the single role, and then even, you know, I do want to thank, um, the, the, the great efforts on the cadet program that's working with Hiram Johnson, and then, uh, this last month, they had the, um, uh, Young Women's Academy that was recruiting high school, um, uh, women into the field. How can we better stream or pipeline those students in high school with the DOR program, with the single role? How do we make it seamless so that the, for example, Hiram Johnson, which is predominantly Latino, Southeast Asian, and African-American students who are in that program actually get into the paying component of the DOR and single role program? So maybe could talk a little about how, what's your plan to get to that?
I could speak to that for you, yeah. So the youth programs in the high schools is exactly what you're speaking about. Not every high school has one right now. Um, we do have the, um, the weekend youth program that goes for thirty-three weeks, and they're gonna graduate. Um, the sec, second program will graduate, um, this next week, or, excuse me, the twenty-seventh, Memorial Day weekend. So that's a, the first step. And broadening that, um, Health Professions is gonna come online. You mentioned McClatchy High School. As many high schools as we can bring online.
Hiram Johnson, by the way.
I'm sorry. Excuse you, excuse me. I was thinking of like where I drive on the way to work, so. Uh, Hiram Johnson, um, a great school, and, uh, actually, my mom graduated from Hiram Johnson, so.
The Warriors.
Little history there, yeah. Go Warriors. Um, but, back to tonight. Um, it, it's stringing that into the trainee program, the reserve program that's up and running, and has been up and running for a long time. Those are places where our youth get to go make their next step and start getting what we call firefighter one. They have to have firefighter one. Um, it helps them when they go through the academy, they're more successful. All people are more successful when they're exposed over a period of time, um, to a job like the fire service or the police department. Um, so that is how it works right now, and dropping those barriers, too, for entry into the different programs, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. So, Mr. City Manager in chief, I guess what, um, you know, what I'd like to provide some direction here is as we come through the budget and audit and come back to the council, um, if we are truly intending to increase our pool, increase the diversity in our department, I'd like to figure, I'd like to see a very clear pathway of how all of these, all the dots are there, the linkages is where it's needed, and particularly with those high schools that have that diversity and that, uh, and also where, you know, the, the salaries of being in the Fire Department are very high, and what better way to address the income inequality that's happening in, say, South Sacramento, Fruit Ridge area, um, than those careers in public, in the public sector, in the fire academy at the same time? So we can address a very, uh, I think, a critical need, and two critical needs, uh, the, our income gaps here and also our diversity in our department, but I don't see a clear, uh, uh, nexus here. So before we get to the final budget, I'd like to see that come forward either at budget audit, um, to see how we actually make this long-term pipeline with it.
Yeah, absolutely. We could bring something back to BNA before final adoption by this council, but I, I want to speak more broadly about this issue of diversity and equity within our city. Uh, you're right, we can do a lot more to diversify our workforce, so it reflects the diversity in our community, but I've said to this council and previous councils that this is a ten-year plan, uh, and we can only move as fast, and what do, what do we coin the phrase, that this, the speed of attrition? So really, to gauge the, the job that we're doing, you really have to take a look at the composition of the people that we hire, uh, to get a sense of we're heading in the right direction, to look at the raw numbers. It's, it's a ten, ten-year program before you could see us even approaching the diversity in our community. So I, I just wanted to put that out there, because we've talked about this at the Racial Equity Committee, we've talked about it at budget sessions prior, and I just want to make sure that people understand that this is a, a, you know, it didn't happen, what is the saying, didn't happen overnight, we're not gonna be able to fix it overnight.
Oh, I completely agree with your comments, uh, Mr. City Manager, which is exactly why I'm bringing up this high school component, because that's that, that's that pipeline, making sure that that's that pipeline. Uh, with that, let me pass it over to, uh, Councilmember Talemantes and hand the gavel over back to our mayor here. Councilmember Talemantes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I just want to commend you on all the different programs that you currently have in place and getting creative, innovative. I know you've partnered with the Thomas Unified on a few different programs and just continuing that work. I know I'm going to the Girls Camp Academy at the end of the month, Memorial Day weekend, and I'm really looking forward to that. Um, also to your Communications Department for showcasing what the what the life of a firefighter looks like and what you do on a daily basis. And social media really does go a long way, you know, TikTok, Instagram, Facebook, and like showing what you do is so important for everyone to know and to see. And that way, they can like maybe pique interest. I do have a question about the budget, and that'd be, how do we prepare for future growth in Sacramento, you know, both by population and development inside and outside the current limits? Because Councilmember Kaplan and I have the new growth area. And, you know, we're going to be seeing more development north of Elkhorn or, you know, in other places up the boot potentially. There's a lot of development going on in our area. So how do we prepare for that with the budget now?
So we work with economic development, and we look at those areas of development like Delta Shores, MAP, the rail yards. And it's my job and my team's job to plan for that. And we look for grants. And we have a grant that we can, using the fire service, it's a startup grant. It's three years of staffing. So typically, when we open a single company, it takes 16 people to staff a fire engine. So we would reach out for the federal grant three years in advance, and we would have three years of staffing wages. And there's, right now, there's zero city commitment to that grant. So, and that's what we're looking for too. There's also the developer impact fees that help build the stations technically or literally bring them out of the ground. And some of those developer impact fees provide the equipment for the station. It just depends on how the impact fees were designed. So that's what we look at. We also look at the, just the service area that we have and what size, the density of the service area that we have. It was, we were talking about earlier how the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire Department comes into the city of Sacramento. We also go out. And it kind of matches. If you look, it's almost an even match of the times that we go out and service them and they come in and help us. Because we are a regional fire department, fire service in Sacramento County. So and to the south, we have the CSD that comes and helps, and we go down and help them as well. So in all those areas, all those new development areas, we're looking at ways to sustain the fire service and fire protection until we can have property tax come in behind and make a smooth transition.
If I may, Lady Millsdine, Assistant City Manager, I just want to chime in on the property tax. We're modeling with our Public Infrastructure Finance Division. They're just infrastructure finance now. And the Community Development Department has started watching building permits because what we have to make sure is that the property taxes from those new growth areas don't just get subsumed into the budget without accounting for the expenditures that we're going to need to pick up over time in order to staff those stations that are going to be built for us. So what you'll start seeing in out years of our budget projections might hopefully be the opportunity to pick up the first few years with the SAFER grants, as the chief had stated. And then we will buy out that because we have a retention, and that will be how we permanently staff. But it will be with the added property taxes that we see from the development and the turnover of those homes in the new growth areas. So we're watching on the budget side too.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Sorry, somebody unmuted me right when I was unmuting. Thank you for this presentation. I did just want to take an opportunity because I think this is our first budget in person since I've been on this council, right? We weren't meeting in person last year. I was just having that moment right now where I'm like, oh.
That true?
Hello. It is true. We started in August. So hi, everybody. Nice to see you in real life. I wanted to take a moment to just briefly introduce, just because I see her in the audience, and she's probably going to hate me saying this, and I just saw her look up like, uh-oh. Dr. Watson, who's sitting there, will you just wave a hand so people know who you are? Thank you. Because there's a lot of reasons why we don't talk about disciplinary actions up here, why we can't. But I want to make sure everybody knows who Letitia is. The Office of Public Safety and Accountability works for us, not for the city management team, but for the council. They receive any concerns that anybody has from anybody and work with either fire or police to see if there's, do an independent review and see. And if it doesn't, then it eventually gets escalated to us. And so I just want to make sure, because I know Letitia hasn't had the opportunity to meet a lot of the advocates who are also here in this room right now. And so I just want to make sure that people understand that like there is an avenue if you feel concerned about behavior. And so, and that's about the extent of what I think I can say before someone's going to jump up and be like, don't talk about it anymore. So just wanted to say.
Stop chiming in.
I know. Don't worry. Because there's a lot that happens behind the scene that never gets talked about. And I know the city manager and I have talked a lot about that as well. But I do just want to take a moment to commend the fast implementation of the single role that's happening in here. It's really, I don't, and I appreciate Ryan, you being here on behalf of 522 to highlight this transition that's happening here. Like, this is a transformational shift in how we approach ambulance services. It's going to free up firefighters to make sure the firehouses are staffed. And it's going to create a better entry level position for more people to move into a public career where they're going to have a pension and they're going to have a good salary. And it's going to allow those ambulances to roam, which then, you know, gives us the opportunity to talk about someday, I don't know, having like a social worker, mental health worker with like these ambulances. We haven't talked about that quite yet. We're waiting until it gets implemented, and then I'm going to put all of my ideas out there. But like, there's just a lot of potential with this program. And this program pays for itself, which is something that like I didn't know when I came in, that like ambulance services are reimbursable. And so it's, it's just, I saw, you know, I know people see a lot of position changes and a lot of movement, and they're like, what's happening with fire? I just wanted to take a chance to like editorialize it. Like, this seems big because it is big, but in a way, we're setting ourselves up for a much more sustainable fire department and funding, which is just really, really exciting. And I'm excited to hear, whenever I hear that, like, you know, there's folks, like when I did my ride along, you know, you're always seeing the other ambulances, like the private ambulances in the bay when they're at the hospitals and stuff. And you're thinking, like, gosh, those folks are going to be leaving soon. And it makes me excited. Because like they're, like get a better paid job. And I'm sure that they're really excited about this program standing up too. So I just wanted to highlight that and just congratulate you on taking that step. I know when we started talking about it last year, there's a lot of anxiety, like, can we do it? Can we do it? And like, it's happening. And I just want to take a moment to congratulate the city team for getting this program to this point. It's a huge lift. It's been talked about for years and years. And I feel honored that I'm sitting here, seeing the city and the union teams come together and say like, we're ready, we're going. This is a really important moment for this program. And yeah, just wanted to say that.
I just want to piggyback that real quick, because earlier when we had the conversation and Ryan was here, could not have gotten to this point without his partnership and the partnership within the department. Because for a long time, there was some anxiety about what this is and isn't. We're able to work those, through those things pretty quickly with the support of this council. And so really pleased to see this get launched. And you'll see really great results.
Thank you for the shout out, too.
Yep. I'm going to kind of add to it in a minute, but let's go through, let's hear from my other colleagues. Councilmember Maple.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, luckily for you, I will keep it very brief and just say ditto to Councilmember Valenzuela. And I just echo many of her comments that had them written down. And I just want to say, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Also, thank you, Dr. Watson, for being in the audience and for giving that information. Because I think a lot of other people may not realize the role that OPSA has. And that's a place where you can go and share information. And just thankful for this budget. And then my, I wanted to share my experience on my ride along with Station 6. I was incredibly impressed with the professionalism of the entire team with the, and with the relationship with the community. That's the neighborhood I live in. And every single person knew who they were. They were walking up to them. People came up to the firehouse, like came in, said hi. They, everybody knew everybody's name. And that was really impressive to me. And so I just think that really speaks to the team and the hardworking men and women of the department. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to echo my fellow Natomas colleague, Councilmember Telemontes, an urge. If you haven't been out there next to Amazon, Northlake Community is half-built. And on my ride along, a lot of what I learned about is Station 30, Station 43 tend to go out to Amazon a lot. And there is no easy way for them to get out there, which then removes them from a heart of the city. And then all of a sudden, every other fire station is shifting because of how much time is spent out at Amazon. I don't know how that works because it's in the county, how we get reimbursed, but I think that needs to be a conversation. And I would urge the city to start working with the chief on the SAFER grant now, because that fire station needs to get built sooner rather than later based off of all the calls, information, and how much time it takes for our two closest stations to get out to Amazon, thus not getting, being able to service the neighborhoods. Because I can tell you, when I was on the school board, I was getting an email once a day that our ambulances were having to go to our schools. And so now having single role and knowing that we will have the ability to adjust, I just want to echo what fellow councilmember Katie Valenzuela said, because firefighters have mandated overtime. COVID started, we have more calls, we don't have new stations, our firefighters are burning out. And I'm worried about their health and safety as well because of mandated overtime and because they have requirements to meet response times federally. And so I think we, as a city, need to start planning that time ahead, not only for the health of our firefighters, but for response times for our citizens that were mandated for. So I am fully supportive of starting towards the SAFER grant process and getting that station built. And I will give a shout out to the pathways for high school to the fire academy. We have an Endercombe High School, that public safety pathway. And I know we lose some of our students who would love to have that bridge when they go to college or go away. And Natomas Unified is the second most diverse district in the United States. So you want to talk about diversity, start recruiting from many of our high schools that we have these pathways. Specifically, I also saw on my ambulance, on my fire station ride along, and I'd seen it in all my ambulance ride along, sometimes, because when you call 911, firefighters show up, ambulances show up. But the law prevents them, when you have to transport, you can only transport to an emergency room.
That's correct.
You can't go to a health clinic or a temporary aid where it's not an emergency. So the only, if it's not an emergency, you still have to go to the emergency room, correct?
That's correct. I can, I can speak to it a little bit. And what it is, is yes, we have protocols. We have to follow the protocols or make us arrive at the emergency room. What we are working on, I sat on a board to select the Lemsit Director, which is a medical director for Sacramento County. The new director who will start in July believes that there are other ways to provide service, mobile integrated health, diversion to a substance use facility, diversion to a psychiatric facility. And this all means more training for our paramedics and EMTs that are on the medic units, but he's in support of that. It does take time. And it's at the both, the local and state level where we make those changes. And those changes are happening. One of the good changes that we have right now here in Sacramento that started about a week before we went to cap to cap was the TELA 911 ability. And that's literally bringing a doctor into somebody's home on an iPad. And if you just need a prescription, the doctor can fill a prescription in your home and set it up so that it's walking distance away for the person to fill the prescription. The other thing they can do is if a person doesn't want to go to the hospital, they can get on with a medical doctor and they can talk to the person and let them know that you really need to go with the paramedics. They're at your house right now. Please go with the paramedics. And we've seen that occasion over 40 times at the beginning of the week. I know the number's higher now today. But those are just some of the little things that we're starting to make a change on. And I think also working with my partners, you know, I followed Jackie Beecham today, tough person to follow. She's also a partner. She's a department head. And I work with her when we have to evacuate a building. Jackie, Dan Bowers, Kathy Lester, we all call each other. There's no silos. And where I'm going with this is just, we're unsiloing the fire service and our emergency medical services at the same time. So you'll see that.
So thank you, because perfect lead up into, I would love at some point, when you guys get the information, because I knew, I know that TELA 911 has just got implemented. But, you know, what are you seeing? What is the data saying? And how can we, what does that look like? And also, as you look at changes with local and state law, please keep us informed. I'm sure all of us would be happy to make sure that we talk to our state representatives to push things through. But I again want to thank you for also working with 522 and our city manager for implementing single role. And I know budget negotiations and discussions are not always easy, but seeing our labor partners, our city management team, and fire management, you know, in agreement is something to be celebrated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pretten.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I have not done a ride along yet, but it is in the queue. I've done a ride along with our garbage truck drivers, planning one with DCR. I'm really looking forward to doing one with fire. I am a big supporter of the door program. I think it's really incredibly important that we ensure we have firefighters, medics, our workforce. That is reflective of the community we serve. And so just really want to say thank you just for your intentional work on ensuring that we can diversify our workforce. I know we have a long ways to go, City Manager, but I appreciate that we're being intentional about that. I also do want to thank Ryan as well for his leadership on the union side and really supporting the single role movement that to help us as a city be more intentional about our pipeline, and in particular, being really efficient with our budget. And so just really want to give a shout out to our local firefighters as well. Also, really glad to see Dr. Watson in the audience, who is our Director of OPSA. They do a lot of oversight of our complaints related to public safety, employee misconduct. And so really appreciate Councilwoman Valenzuela just flagging that for folks who are watching this. I am in support of the fire budget, but I do want to speak just really on a larger issue around just culture. And I would say not just, it's not just in our fire department, but really throughout our city. It's in police, in all of our departments. And I just want to say, you know, we're going to do our best to really correct what's done historically in the city. And it's going to take all of us. But for us to also acknowledge really a cultural issue, right, that we are not immune to implicit bias in our city, or microaggression, or just direct racist behaviors. And I know as a councilwoman, I won't tolerate that. And I would also say my colleagues on this dais as well. But I know that that work isn't going to happen overnight, and we all have to work collectively. I also want to call out IC D'Angelo in the audience, who is an advocate among so many community members on our Racial Equity Alliance, you know. And when I was hearing the public speaker speak about this, I was really just thinking about culture in our city, not just in fire, but police, but throughout all of our departments. And as we embark on our racial equity work in the city, it's so important, one, as a council, to really just acknowledge the historical harm, but also the current harms that's happening right now in our city and ways in which we can fix it. I know for some of the HR complaint, we can't really speak on it because it's an HR issue. And so we're kind of limited in that. But I do want to share again that we can't fix kind of the racism overnight. But what we can do is be intentional on where we put funding to begin culture change. And door is a program, for example, that I think, that I believe, not think, that I believe that can begin to do that. But culture change is also needed throughout all of departments. For example, a few weeks ago, we passed a mandatory diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging training for this council. But with the desire to ensure, and I'm looking at Coach over here, Councilmember Jennings, that we would ensure that this mandatory training is also for our city staff as well. And I know that this is a bargaining issue as well. And so I want to see a mandatory training be part of the bargaining process as well. And just want to share that with our city manager as well, that as we begin the bargaining process, I believe that our unions also believe that this is important as well. And for us to make this part of the conversation as we go into negotiation, because it's absolutely critical. And why am I bringing this up? Because it is related to budget, right? It's about culture change. So what are we going to do intentionally to really do that? One is the door program. One is negotiating with our labor partners, who I believe that, believes in this work as well. And Mayor, and City Manager, I also just want to add really quick that, you know, recently, we did, a couple years ago, we created the Office of Diversity Equity Office. And I know that this office was housing your department, but now it's housed in HR. I'm not sure when the budget for Office of Diversity and Equity will come to council. I'm not sure if that's in another budget item because we're doing police, fire, YPSI. But I also want to ensure that as we're looking in our budget, that we also set aside funding, sufficient funding to actually do this work, right? Because we could talk a big game about racial equity in the city, but I want to make sure that we have dollars to support it. I know that there's going to be strategic planning process, but this should be embedded in everything we do throughout the city. And so just want to center that, that as we're talking about budget, that we also ensure that the Office of Diversity and Equity has the resources in order to really truly implement our racial equity work, that we have the resources to provide to the Alliance and the council to do this work. Because this is not just about fire, but it's about police. It's about parks. It's about how we do our capital improvement project. And so race and equity should be infused in everything that we do. And so I want to make sure that that is part of the budget. And I haven't seen that part of the budget. I see parts of it, like I see the door program, which is something I support. of it, like I see the DORE program, which is something I support, but I think it needs to be infused throughout all of our departments.
Let me just respond to a couple of things real quick. I'm sorry, I was in a side-broad conversation with the mayor on this. With regard to the Office of Diversity and Equity, it's embedded within HR, and they have all the resources that they need right now. And should they need more, it would be a request that comes forward to the council. And the other piece on the negotiations with the training that we talked about, probably not a good idea to talk about that in open session, because it's, we're in open negotiations with our labor partners right now. So, but I will absolutely bring that back to the council as part of the negotiations discussion into closed session.
Thanks, City Manager. I appreciate that. And if I did mention anything around bargaining, I don't want to, I don't want to do anything that would put the city at, you know, in harms way or whatnot, but I just want to be able to vocalize that on record. And I actually, I actually do believe that our union partners also believe in this as well. They believe in diversity and equity training, and so really hoping that can be part of the conversation. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation today. I want to also thank you for the conversation about single role. We've had this conversation a number of years, and you've finally been able to make it happen. So I think it's a game changer. I think you do as well. So I want to kind of go back to the issue that hits me the hardest right now, and you heard the public talk about it, and you've heard my colleagues talk about it as well. And it's, what you talked about as far as our ability to grow our own. And you also talked about be more representative of the community we serve. Then I heard you say that, based on the way we're doing it now, it's a 10-year plan. So maybe I heard it wrong, and that's why I want to be clear of what I heard.
Councilmember Jennings, that was my comment earlier. I was just saying that it's a longer-term issue to have our workforce reflect the diversity of the community.
I understand that. So I just need to understand is, what way we have it now, going to the high schools and doing the programs like the DORE program, and the cadet program, and the young women's program, is that a longer-term plan, or is that a more immediate, intentional plan?
I think we're seeing, right now with the programs we do have, we're seeing an immediate change. And that's because we're reaching out to more of our community. And I think where it reflects the best right now is the trainee program. We don't have all the stats on the trainees, but we have, I think we have preliminary stats on the people who applied. They applied from the city of Sacramento, and then we can get a breakdown of that group of people. And I think that's going to...
I think that would be very helpful. And for me, having been on this council since 2014, we've been talking about this for a while, not just with your department, but with other departments as well, about being more representative of the community, especially the Black and Brown community, which we know that we've had issues with in the past. I pulled up the statistics on, in the United States. There are 139,000 firefighters employed in the USA. 11.8% of them are women, 15.3% are Hispanic or Latino, and 8.1% are Black or Asian, African American, and 1.8% are Asian. So I just pulled that as a reference for us, to take a look at where do we compare against those kind of numbers. But I also want to be intentional and give you the resources that won't take as long as some of these programs that are serving our high school kids. And so in the past, we have gone to historical Black colleges in order to recruit. I don't know that we're doing that now.
So there's a couple of things, and what you're saying is hitting home for me, and we've talked about it in the Regional Diversity Committee in the fire service. And being intentional about the colleges you go to, the type of people that are interested in the job, and then being there for them and showing them that there's a pathway into this department, into this city. The other place that we've, for a long time, overlooked is our veterans, people getting out of the military with 20 years of service that are familiar with just the chain of command in general. Like, they understand it. And they're people that want a job, they want to work in their hometown, and they're coming back to Sacramento. So that's another place that we have started reaching out to more. And that's just recently, in the last, I've been here eight months and three days, but I'm not counting. And we've started that in my time in this position, and it was being done before me. And I'll say this, all, everything we're talking about tonight was being done before me. And the people in the audience behind me and at the dais in front of me, all are helping me move this forward, and that's just one more way we move it forward.
So I want to be intentional too, and I want to, I want to be one person that helps. I'm sure others will step up as well to be able to help, because I believe that some of the resources we have here in the city of Sacramento can help us to address the issue that we're talking about now. We have one within our own city, the AAELC, that can be very active in helping us. We have the Hispanic and the Black Chamber of Commerce. I've already talked about the historical Black colleges and that strategy as far as being able to connect with them. We have connections to get students into those schools, we have connections to get graduates from those schools. And so I'd like to be intentional. And then just the entire history of the Black firefighter, there are documents that are online that can be read to understand the history of this profession all the way back in the 1800s, as it relates to African Americans, which I think you, we can all understand and learn from. But I want to be intentional, and I think in my meetings with you, as we go forward, I'd like to get regular reports and understand where we are. I want to inspect what I expect. And so I want to just try to understand, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, I want to understand that we're making progress at a faster pace than the longer-term strategies of the high schools. I want to try to see if we can move at a faster pace. So I'm willing to volunteer as much time as necessary in order to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jennings, I just want to follow up on the chief's comments here. Absolutely. So when we come back to BNA, we can provide some data on the recent hires to see what the composition, as I mentioned earlier, just to see the progress that we're making. But the other piece is that all the organizations and the groups that you mentioned, Councilmember, when I took over as City Manager, it was, it's a standard practice now for HR. When we have any openings, we push them out to all those organizations you mentioned, and then some. We're asking for their help to get broader reach. And so it's automatic now. So, but I do appreciate pushing to other opportunity areas where we can get more of a diverse candidate pool, because only then are we going to get more diverse candidates.
There you go. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question, and then I'll make a motion on item 19 here. My understanding, the, and this is to the point that Councilmember Jennings just made, that when we do recruitments for lateral, not people come out of the academy, that, and I remember discussing this two years ago, that we used to go off of a particular pool or a set of candidates, and I thought we kind of, there was a directive to go away from that, because the pool was pretty much closed to diversity, because if other academies weren't producing diverse candidates, then we were recruiting from that.
It had kind of a twofold effect. It was the FCTC list, I think, is what you're talking about.
Yes, there we go.
And when you were looking at just hiring a paramedic, not growing your own from the inside.
Correct.
Paramedic, it limits the pool automatically, because not everybody has the resources available to go to paramedic school. That's what we're changing right now with the trainee program. And we do an upgrade program within our own department as well, so somebody could come in as an EMT and upgrade currently to paramedic. Now, those programs are all programs that we need to continue to look at and continue to look at ways to make them easier for folks, because it takes a lot of time and commitment too, for a family, for someone to go to paramedic school. And that's also the job, single role. Instead of working a 48-hour shift, now they're working 12-hour shifts on a cycle. It's a more livable work life for someone who's just getting started into a really busy system. We talked about it earlier this evening, 109,000 calls. When I started, the department was running 52,000 calls. So it makes it a more workable thing. But that FCTC list and laterals, those are things where we use those to bridge a gap, to try and drive down overtime and mandatories. It's not something we like to do all the time.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. So, you know, Mr. Mayor, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to move item 19, which is a resolution we have to adopt in order to get, to begin the DORE program here for the MYOP. But I'd also like to include there a direction to come back to budget and audit, and if necessary, to this council, with one, you know, some direction of how we, how we make this, these pathways clear on how we can show actual results. We can be aspirational, but I'd like to see that second. You know, I would like to also have a further discussion on the FCTC, you know, list and pool. How do we engage in making sure that those that were leading to other departments, so that that pool itself becomes diverse as well? Because if we're relying on that, on that pool as well, and it's not bringing in a diversity of candidates, then we're moving on those, on those points. When we, I remember when we did our budget and audit in 2021, we had actually regressed in the fire department. So I hope that we're moving in that positive direction. I'd like to see those numbers. I feel very confident that this, this DORE program is going to move us in that direction. And then finally, with the, so again, the clear pipelines, the information on the FCTC list, and then to the point that was brought up, that I brought up before, and thanks, Councilmember Kaplan, for bringing up, how do we maybe just target a few high schools that, you know, we don't have to hit every one, but a few areas where we know we're going to have a diverse set of student population, we have an academy that is, you know, very successful, and how do we make that happen? So I'll move the item with that direction. So on item 19, I think we also have to make a motion on item 20. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
I have one clarifying question on your first direction, and that's to come back with some strategies on how we could be more intentional. But does that, are you speaking of potential bonuses or ways to get people to sign up for the program?
It may be an MOU with the, with the school districts, because we have multiple school districts. I just want some thought process into it.
Sure, okay.
So that's, I mean, if we don't start the conversation, you know, then we're never going to move forward on it, okay?
I think that last suggestion and that last clarification is really important, because I'm struck by several things. Number one, we can control it, we can control, we can't control, we can't control, but what we can control, we have to do better. I think the city manager said it, the number of hires depends upon the attrition. And so I'm accountable for the last six years, as is the manager, but going forward here, the question is, for every opening that we have, are we meeting much more aggressive diversity numbers than the historic performance? That is, we need to hold ourselves to a very high standard there, because that's the only thing that will demonstrate that we understand the imperative and we understand the change. And so it's different from looking at, as the city manager said earlier, the entire, the diversity of the entire department at a point in time. It's the trend now.
Correct.
That really, really matters. But that's, that's a real bar too. And there, and we can speak about the past and others and the way it was, but now, we're on, all of us on...
I think you'll be pleased with the data.
Good.
One last commentary.
Oh, I thought you were done.
Yeah, this is more of a commentary.
Okay.
This is happening through the collective bargaining.
Yeah.
Agreement with, with our single role folks. They, they will, they all, because of the nature of them, they're also in, in the lower income category than, say, a full firefighter or whatnot. But I would hope that we also make it competitive and attractive so that as we're diversifying, we also don't have this perverse nature where also our employees of color are also the lower income.
The lower income, that's right. That's not...
Lower pay performance. So I want to make sure that we're managing this. But again, another.
Yeah, it's, that's a very good point as well, that when we recruit for diversity, especially with, under the single role, there needs to be performance as well, based on merit, when it comes to the numbers and diversity around promotion as well. I think that's a really, that's a fair point.
That's also a conversation we're going to have as part of the class and comp study to be more competitive, so that we can attract people at all levels within the organization.
Okay. Couple, if I may now, are you, okay, just a couple of comments. I just want to, I mean, add the praise on this single role issue, which by the way, is one of the answers, as we've talked about too, the diversity imperative that we have in the city. And again, you know, leadership really matters here, Mr. Henry. It matters. And, you know, it's not healthy to talk about the past, but I'm telling you, the combination that we have here with this management and this union, and you're going to disagree on lots of things, that's the way it's supposed to be, but this single achievement here is really worthy of note, and I'm grateful, City Manager and Fire Chief and 522 for coming together. It has the potential to save money, but more importantly, it creates a better department for all the reasons that, that we have discussed. But I want to take it one step further as my, as the final comment here, and it relates to something that isn't on the agenda tonight, and that is the Department of Community Response. You know, DCR, we have asked them to be a frontline on our homeless outreach, and that's out of necessity in partnership with the county. As that evolves, and as the county continues to take more of the lead, especially in the Health and Human Services side, the original idea of DCR was to provide an alternative 911 response for calls through the system that are handled as a first and last resort too often by our fire department and our police department. And we need to, again, never forget and continue, even as we're working in the present on our crises, that where we want to get to is to free up, and we'll talk about police, the same thing applies to police, but where we free up our firefighters, our paramedics, for the, for the situations that are most serious and for what they're trained for, not to do whatever you call it, wall time at the emergency room on a Friday night because someone has drunk, has had too much to drink, which is what I experienced when I did my ride along several years ago. And, and to not be the first intervention for homeless assistance either, which you are, as is the police department. This is, and so the single role, to me, is really just the beginning of an evolution that defines the duties and roles of firefighters, of paramedics, of police officers in ways that are, that the public expects and demands around genuine public safety, genuine medical emergency, genuine fire, and then have alternatives for some of the stuff that you don't have to do. And frankly, that's frustrating to your members, because that's not what you signed up for. You signed up to save lives. You signed up to, to address the, you know, major fires and things that are threatening to the life of people. It's not that all the other calls are not important, because they are, but they can be handled in an alternative way when we get to that place. So let's not forget that. That's the next step. And the faster we can move, the better our city will be, and the safer our city will be. Thank you. Good. All in favor of Council, of Mayor, Vice Mayor Gettys' motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Thank you. Was that included in your motion, Mayor? No, it was not. So then item 20, Councilmember Kaplan moves that, and Vice Mayor seconds that. We've had the public testimony, so now all in favor of item 20, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Thank you. That gets us a thorough discussion. Thank you very, very much, everybody. We're now going to move to the last set of items for the evening, and we're going to take item 21 and 22 together, the police department items. I'll welcome Chief Lester, and we shall begin.
Okay. Got to switch the whole team here out. Great. All right. Are you guys ready? Perfect. Oh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Kathy Lester, your Chief of Police, and I'm here to present the Police Department's 2324 Proposed Budget and Asset Forfeiture Master Plan. We'll be doing those together. The intent of tonight's presentation... The intent of tonight's presentation is not only to give a financial report, but it's also an opportunity for our team to share metrics in greater detail, which is something I know we always ask for. And as you know, our department really focuses on several core goals: reducing crime, enhancing service and professionalism, engaging our community, and certainly transparency. We have a short video, and we're going to talk about a number of these things that highlights these efforts over the year, although I'm not sure how to play it. Should be queued up. It should have been sent in, and they acknowledged receipt, so.
Staff, will you play the video?
Thank you.
How long is video?
It's like two minutes. It's quick.
Apparently staff says they don't have a video, just the PowerPoint. Let's see what we can find. We sent it to Jacob.
Marty has it.
I also have it.
Back to that technology budget.
Thanks, sorry about that. As they get it loaded up, I'll kind of continue because I know this is going to be a long presentation, and it's a long day for everyone. But just to get started, we'll wait for the video. This year's budget reflects several changes from prior years. The amended FY23 budget was 22, I'm sorry, 224.7 million, and the proposed FY24 budget is $228.2 million, with the transfer of funds into the fleet replacement my app, which is fairly significant. This represents a total change of about 1.55% or $3.5 million added to our budget this year. Most of this is attributed to the addition of professional staff, contractual increases, and the replacement of ARPA funding to continue the work of the Office of Violence Prevention, and also the work of a number of our community-based organizations. There have been some additional changes to our proposed budget, which I will highlight in greater detail later in this presentation. And in summary, we are going to be adding additional officers to our patrol division while we reduce the total number of authorized sworn officers. This will also result in reducing the actual police budget from the current proposed budget throughout the year. Last year, I highlighted a number of efforts that the department was undertaking. These included training improvements, expanded crisis intervention training, less lethal tools and tactics, critical decision-making, peer intervention, and de-escalation, formalizing our partnerships with our community-based organizations and our department to really improve overall public safety. We introduced the 30 by 30 initiative with the goal of increasing the representation of women in our department to 30% by the year 2030. We implemented a cloud-based background management system to improve efficiency with background investigations, and we worked with the city to create promotional exams that are race and gender neutral in alignment with the city's workforce development goals. We continue to build our very robust transparency website, which includes a directory of videos, audio files, and documents that can be easily accessed by the public, and we also grew our use of emerging technologies, such as the police observation devices, also known as PODs. These are our police cameras, and we were able to get a large number of these online through upgrades. In early 2022, 70 of the 119 total PODs were functioning, but we've replaced almost 30 of them. We repaired an additional 20 and have added an additional 25. We now have 144 PODs throughout our city and have 14 additional installs pending. So we will continue to focus our, or prioritize, I'm sorry, our focus on youth and prevention efforts. For example, last year, we had 549 participants in our Criminal Justice Magnet Academy, and we are proud to say we had a 100% graduation rate, and this year we have even more. And really, for the first time, and I'll talk about this in some of our proposed AS, we have done some really targeted recruiting into those academies, and that resulted in over 30 applicants for student training. Mindy, any update on the video?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to just show a quick video because we're going to talk about a lot of this stuff, but I always, I'm just really proud of the team, the work of the department on a number of fronts, so thank you. So as you can see, we're really busy. We do a lot of the core functions that you would see with a law enforcement agency, but we also really work hard on doing community outreach and trying to, you know, make sure that we engage our community in a positive way. So tonight, in conjunction with our Finance Director, Brenda Del Godillo, we will present the proposed budget and will include information on authorized staffing. Then each office chief and our Office of the Chief Captain, Captain Marty Steiger, will make a short presentation on their significant accomplishments and key data points, as has been asked in previous years. Brenda will then present on the proposed operating budget, position changes, and measure U programs. Natalie Weaver, our administrative officer, will present on the capital improvement program and our my ops, and we will end on, with a presentation on the department's asset forfeiture plan. So before we move to each office presentation, I'd like to share a number of achievements that we saw in 2022 and into 2023. I'm really most proud of the very collaborative effort we've made with a lot of our community partners and successfully implemented a very comprehensive violent crime reduction strategy. Highlights include that we've been able to expand our domestic violence unit from two to eight, and we've also maintained a very close relationship with the Sacramento Family Justice Center to ensure ongoing access for victims of domestic violence to a number of resources. As you saw in the video, we have implemented our community gun buybacks. We have one coming up on the 23rd, and we have had over 400 guns turned in by our community to get them off of the street. Importantly, we saw a reduction in the number of shooting victims, and we had fewer homicides last year. Specifically, in 2021, 256 people were shot in Sacramento. In 2022, there were 175 victims of shootings. That's a reduction of almost 32%. In 2021, there were 58 homicides, and in 2022, there were 54. So far, year-to-date, we have had 10 reported homicides at this time versus 22 at the same time last year, and that was as of May 7th. Eight of those homicides have been solved, which is an 80% solve rate. And overall, ShotSpotter activations were reduced almost 30% from 1,109 in 2021 to 782 in 2022. We're also really very successful, I believe, in integrating OVP, the Office of Violence Prevention, into our department. And as of December of '22, as a team, we've identified and referred 33 people to the Violent Offender Referral Program, responded to 38 critical incidents, had 51 unique responses to our disruption response and interruption program. We've convened 93 community intervention discussions, and 705 youth went through GPIT programming and participated in almost 12,000 hours of programming as of December, and that's directly the work of our community partners and our community-based organizations that we've engaged with formally. We're also one of six cities nationally to be awarded the Public Safety Partnership Grant. This is a prestigious technical assistance grant. It's through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and it provides for a number of federally-funded resources, including a strategic site liaison who is assigned to our department for three years. The grant includes technical assistance. For example, we've already connected and formed relationships with Albuquerque, Miami, Tucson, and Omaha on things like alternative response, comstat wellness, and outreach programs and diversions. It also provides for a grant expert, which will help us seek and secure appropriate federal funding for our city. The program will also include two in-depth assessments, department-wide. We've chosen crime analysis to provide improved metrics to help us better understand crime, make operational and financial decisions, and provide additional metrics publicly. And then we've also chosen a technology assessment to ensure that we're making the most out of our existing technology, that we have the right type of technology in place for what we're trying to do internally and externally, and that we are cost-effective in doing this. So the PSP program ensures that our federal agencies are supporting our department to help reduce violent crime in our city. And finally, the program funds a number of peer exchanges so that members of our department and our city can do site visits with other agencies and cities across the country and bring best practices back to Sacramento. Additionally, some projects continuing from last year to our next fiscal year include analyzing our survey data from ISR, which is the partnership that we have with SAC State, looking at our data from our youth listening sessions, and certainly from our door hanger surveys. We're also working to build a violent crime advisory board at the council level and finalizing our strategic plan for the department. We're continuing to do leadership development through a commander exchange program, professional staff development, and department-wide mentoring. We've established a chief's advisory board to help with internal communication, and we've implemented customer service training for all officers. We've also fully implemented the SpiderTech technology that serves as a customer service platform for public safety, helps us to improve communication with our community members, and also track metrics. As an example, based on the first five months of this year, we know that our public gave high ratings for professionalism and response time, and also provide feedback that if they could file a report in any other way, they'd prefer that it be online or by phone. So that's helping us drive our service delivery model into the future as we have a better measurement of what our community needs and what they want. So thank you for allowing me to provide a brief overview. I'll now ask Deputy Chief Green to present on the work from the Office of Operations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Deputy Chief Adam Green, and I oversee the Office of Operations, which consists of the department's patrol division and 911 comm center. This total is almost 600 employees. Our dedicated operations staff includes the dispatchers, community service officers, officers, sergeants, and administrative staff that are the face of our department. These great people are often the first point of law enforcement contact for our over 525,000 residents. These are the people who manage the needs of our city day-to-day and support large events such as community gatherings, special events like playoff games, and significant emergency calls. Because they are the first point of contact for most people in need of police services, I'd like to start by talking about our communications center. Our communications center is led by a police captain, a communications manager, and three supervising dispatchers. Our communications center is comprised of a staff of 68 incredibly hard-working dispatchers who are entrusted with the difficult task of bringing calm to often chaotic situations. Dispatchers oft obtain the necessary information to coordinate and dispatch the proper resources to people experiencing an emergency or need of police or medical assistance. Unfortunately, like many public safety communication centers across the country, we've lost quite a few dispatchers over the past couple of years. This has had a significant impact on staffing at our communications center. Full staffing is 93 employees, but we currently have 25 vacancies, which is a 27% shortage. That being said, we're actively recruiting and have had some recent success as a result of a dispatcher open house. In 2022, our communications center received 648,000 phone calls from the community. Almost half of those were 911 or 10-digit emergency lines, which is 337,000 calls. This is a slight increase from 2021. As an example of what our dispatchers are confronted with during a busy shift, this New Year's Eve, as a result of both the holiday and the storms, our communications staff handled three times the number of 911 calls compared to the prior New Year's Eve. In a six-hour period, our dispatchers handled 1,277 calls just on 911 lines alone. Next, I'd like to talk about our patrol resources. Within patrol, we have four commands, each of which, each of which has a police captain and executive lieutenant and patrol lieutenant watch commanders. These commands are further divided into districts, of which there are six. We began calendar year 2022 with 236 officers in patrol. This is the lowest number of officers we have signed up in patrol in five years. By way of example, in 2021, we signed up 257, and in 2020, we signed up 264. To put this into perspective, in 2007, our population was 64,000 less than it was today, and we had 50 more officers assigned to patrol. We are currently working on our organizational structure to increase the number of officers in patrol. We're fortunate to have about 21 community service officers assigned to patrol. Our CSOs, as many of you know, assist with taking reports, handling collisions, and helping manage scenes of significant incidents. In 2022, our 20 CSOs, 20 or so CSOs completed more than 7,000 reports. These valuable employees are part of the hiring pipeline and will ultimately become police officers with our department. In addition to our handling of many calls for service that come in each day, our patrol officers also participate in community meetings, community events, and they also respond to large incidents such as sideshows, which, as you know, are a concern for our region and have created concern for safety of our residents. Through May 1st of this year, we've received 445 calls of our comm center regarding sideshows. We're a very busy police department and a continuously growing city, and I'd now like to share some statistical data with you that will make clear just how busy we are. In 2022, the calls received by our comm center, as a reminder, that was 648,000 last year. Our officers were dispatched to 233,000 of those. The majority of those calls required two officers to respond, and of those calls, more than 12,000 were mental health-related, 6,200 were for domestic violence, 812 were for child abuse, and 1,300 were for sex assault. In addition, our officers proactively initiated another 70,000 calls, which included traffic stops, on viewing crimes in progress, being waved down by community members, or observing a traffic hazard, just to name a few. In addition, our officers responded to over 782 ShotSpotter activations for a total of almost 2,700 gunshots. The ShotSpotter system covers three small geographical areas of the city totaling 7.84 square miles. These are calls that our officers respond to, knowing the danger of the fact that there is without a doubt a gun involved. Last year alone, our officers and detectives recovered almost 1,400 illegally, illegal or illegally possessed firearms. Of those, 301 were personally manufactured firearms, more commonly known as ghost guns, and 159 were rifles or machine guns. Our officers and CSO spend a lot of time writing reports. For 2022, there was a total of just over 69,000 reports filed. 7,400 of those reports were completed by our records division. Almost 18,000 reports were submitted online for crimes that unfortunately we don't have the capacity to respond to, such as auto burglaries, catalytic converter thefts, shoplifting crimes that have already occurred. In addition to patrol and communications, we also have several specialty teams assigned to our Office of Operations. Our operations specialty teams include the following: our bike unit comprised of 14 officers that work downtown, the downtown corps, and in addition to handling calls for service in the corps, these officers go, are the go-to team for addressing concerns of our businesses and residents in our central city. The violent crime reduction teams comprised of three teams, which total three sergeants and 12 officers, focused primarily on gun and gang-related crimes. Within our VCR teams, there are also 12 ShotSpotter officers whose primary role is responding to and investigating ShotSpotter gunshot detection incidents. These VCR and Shot- These VCR and ShotSpotter teams often encounter some of our city's most violent individuals. Our POP teams are some of our business partners and community groups' favorites. Our problem-oriented policing teams are comprised of three sergeants and fourteen officers who work collaboratively with our other city departments and to address neighborhood complaints and long-term problems. Our operations specialty teams are often the first to get pulled from their regular assignments to work protests and other large-scale events. In two thousand and twenty-two, we staffed seventy-eight protests primarily downtown, and we rely heavily on the flexibility and dedication of these officers. I would like to conclude by saying that, given the challenges we faced with staffing and workload faced by our officers, we've just completed a reorganization project to assure that we're properly allocating our staff. And Chief Lester will discuss some of that in greater detail later in her presentation. I'd now like to enter Deputy Chief Norm Leong.
I'm Deputy Chief Norm Leong, and currently oversee your Office of Specialized Services. There are a total of a hundred and eight officers that comprise of this office, of which also a hundred and sixty-two ancillary-duty officers supplement that group and fourteen professional staff. There are many units that make up the Office of Specialized Services, including explosive ordinance disposal unit, area ops, court liaison, reserve officer and supplemental employment, regional transit, Natomas Unified School Resource Officers, our urban area security initiative grant as well. I'm going to highlight eight other units that weren't listed that I'd like to talk a little bit more in depth about. The first of those units is the SWAT and crisis negotiation team. They utilize specialized training and equipment to help safely resolve incidents. In two thousand and twenty-two, they had a hundred and ninety-nine critical incidents they responded to, of which force was only used three times. They had thirty-four after-hour callouts and have on-call responsibility twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They attended fifty-eight community engagement events, including providing active shooter training for local businesses and nonprofits. Example of some of their work is in October of two thousand and twenty-two, our SWAT officers responded to a shooting near Seventh Avenue and Thirty-Ninth Street. The suspect was alleged to have shot at her husband with a shotgun. The suspect was believed to be intoxicated and distraught over a recent death of their son. SWAT and crisis negotiators responded, utilized an armored vehicle to be able to negotiate with the individual, and ultimately got her to surrender without any use of force. The next unit I'll talk about is our Uncrewed Aerial Systems, also known as our UAS. This unit uses commercially available drones that anyone can buy to reduce the suspect to officer confrontation. They use them during building searches and area searches. The unit is comprised of thirty-six officers, primarily made up of those in our patrol operations. It takes a hundred and twenty hours of training to become certified to fly these devices. The units responded to over three hundred and twenty-seven incidents in two thousand and twenty-two. In an effort to provide more transparency, in two thousand and twenty-two, we also added the flight logs, giving call number, location, and path of flights on our website of every single flight. Example of their work, in October, during the aftershock music festival in Discovery Park, officers were informed of a subject who had fallen down a levee and could not move. Due to the darkness and the crowd size, it was difficult to locate our victim. A UAS was called in and successfully located the victim and guided medics to him. Third unit I would like to talk about is our K-9 unit. The unit provides officers with the safer means to conduct searches for suspects, conduct article searches for evidence, and to conduct bomb sweeps at larger events. In two thousand and twenty-two, our K-9s were deployed two hundred and sixteen times on dangerous situations. Force was not used ninety-four percent of the time. They conducted ninety-four sweeps for explosives, attended thirty-three outreach events, where K-9s are always a popular and favorite entity that arrives. The next unit I want to highlight is our IMPACT officers. They work closely with our department community response and other city departments to collectively address persons experiencing homelessness. Example of some of their work is, in two thousand and twenty-two, our IMPACT officers worked with a homeless individual named Chuck. Chuck's a seventy-one-year-old male who was, had a broken leg from being hit by a car. Our IMPACT officers arranged for a medical appointment, took him to the medical appointment, got him in a wheelchair, and ultimately got him enrolled in the X Street shelter. Another example of their work is there was a high level of community complaints on X Street due to drug activity. Our IMPACT officers worked with our South POP officers, and they conducted month-long enforcement in that area, ultimately resulting in nineteen misdemeanor citations and five felony arrests for drugs. Our Traffic and Major Collision Investigation Unit is the next unit I'd like to talk about. Their task was reducing collisions through traffic education and enforcement and respond to major collision investigations. We currently deploy two motor officers per command. The eight traffic officers conducted almost ninety-five hundred stops, gave sixty percent of those stops citations, and forty percent was given education warnings. The traffic investigators are on-call twenty-four hours a day, year-round, and in two thousand and twenty-two, they responded to over fifty fatal collisions. Traffic complaints continue to be one of the top concerns when officers attend community events. The Marijuana Compliance Team, they conduct investigation follow-ups on potential illegal marijuana grower operations. In two thousand and twenty-two, they sent over ninety-one letters to owners and tenants, making them aware that they were suspected of having illegal marijuana grows. They served sixty-five indoor and outdoor cultivation search warrants, seized ten-thousand pounds of cannabis, made fifty-three arrests, seized twenty-eight guns, and issued five-point-seven million dollars in administrative fines. The seventh unit I'd like to highlight for the Office of Specialized Services is our Community Outreach. They coordinate community outreach events, connect and partner with community-based organizations, and enhance our recruiting efforts for hiring. The unit drives many of our outreach programs, such as peace walks in Oak Park, facilitate the academy experience for community members, participate and arrange for the Cops and Kids Summer Camp for youth ages eight to fourteen, adopt a classroom program, pedals program, which gives away bicycles and helmets to over a hundred and fifty kids, shop with a cop during Christmas program, outreach with our Sacramento Youth Commission and Summer at City Hall program, participate in the Lex SAC State program, which is a hiring pipeline for those college students that want to get into law enforcement, EPIC, which is a ten-week program at Los Rios geared towards learning about our organization and law enforcement in general, SHOCK Youth Diversion, serving youth ages twelve to sixteen, and our SAC PAL program, which includes rugby, ski, skiing, and snowboarding in a youth leadership camp. Two other programs I'd like to highlight that our Outreach Division handles is our, they also serve as our pipeline hiring, which is our Criminal Justice Magnet Academy. Those officers are certified teachers. They are headquartered out of Hiram Johnson, McClellan, Grant, Kennedy, and Intercom High School. They mentored and impacted over five hundred and sixty-four kids in two thousand and twenty-two. The second program I would like to highlight is our SAC PD Cadet Program with sixteen participants focused on youth ages fourteen to twenty years old. In two thousand and twenty-two, the division also took on the task of coordinating and staffing the gun buyback programs. They posted two events in two thousand and twenty-two, resulting in four hundred and fourteen guns seized, including from one mother who found an assault rifle under her child's bed and turned that in. The division also has been integral in obtaining community input for our violence crime reduction efforts by assisting and arranging for four community listening sessions, passing out almost nineteen thousand door hangers in our focus areas to obtain surveys from residents to see how they would like to see police respond to violent crime in their areas. We did that in partnership with SAC State's Institute of Social Research. In response, we got seventeen hundred community members who responded back to those surveys. Being over a hundred positions sworn and positions down, the recruiting unit has increased our social media presence, tried advertising jobs on Hulu, YouTube Live, iHeartRadio ads, Instagram, and have increased our recruiting efforts with military personnel at local colleges and with our most diverse high schools through the magnet program. We also created a program encouraging our employees to refer potential candidates into our organization. New this year is our SAC PAL boxing, which used to be a thing, and then we're bringing it back. In addition, we're working with Natomas Unified School District to start a drone program in the school. The final and newest unit I'd like to highlight is our Office of Violence Prevention, overseen by Dr. Nicole Clavvo. She manages five grants and maintains partnership with our community-based organizations to disrupt, respond, intervene, and prevent individuals from committing violent crimes. In two thousand and twenty-two, OVP moved from DCR to the police department. We developed a one-million-dollar grant, partnering with eight CBOs for a more cohesive partnership to address violent crime that entailed more information sharing, proactive deployments in problematic locations, response to chaotic critical incidents, and a referral process by the police department to CBOs for mentorship and other resources. The eight CBOs include Voices of Youth, Self-Awareness and Recovery, Brother to Brother, Helping Our People Eat, Neighborhood Wellness Foundation, Rose Family Center, IMPACT SAC, and City of Refuge. OVP has continued to manage the GPIT grant and are working to close out the three other grants that they've managed. In sum, the grants have helped over thirteen hundred kids and young adults a year. I'd like to now turn the presentation over to Deputy Chief Olivera.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Deputy Chief Steve Olivera, and I oversee the Office of Investigations, which has a staff of over two hundred and forty employees. The Office of Investigations is comprised of three sections: the Detective Division, the Training, Research, and Development Division, and the Personnel Division. This summary will not encompass every responsibility completed by our office, but it will provide an idea of some of our duties. So I'll start with our Detective Division. It's comprised of the many specialty investigative units and includes our forensics and CSI units, records division, and the Evidence and Property Section. Some of the specialty investigative units within our Detective Division include neighborhood crimes units, which investigate robberies and burglaries and other property crimes, homicide, felony assaults, missing persons, gang investigations, family abuse, our career criminal apprehension team, digital forensics unit, human trafficking, and sex assaults and child abuse unit. Our Detective Division also works closely with community organizations such as CASH, which is the Community Against Sexual Harm, and My Sister's House. We also have a social worker that is assigned to, in our family abuse unit, that works hand-in-hand with our detectives. Another aspect of our Detective Division is our partnership with federal agencies. We currently have six detectives assigned to federal task forces with the FBI, ATF, DEA, and the US Marshal Service. These partnerships help strengthen our ability to address violent crime. For example, ATF provides technical investigative resources focusing on the illegal possession, sale, manufacturing, and trafficking of firearms. Working together with ATF and federal prosecutors, we are taking a proactive approach to remove the illegal guns from the hands of criminals. The Detective Division is also managing the Public Safety Partnership Grant that Chief Lester mentioned earlier. In two thousand and twenty-two, our Detective Division assigned two thousand nine hundred and eighty-three cases to be investigated. Our detectives, who have on-call responsibilities, responded to a hundred and eighteen callouts, many of which occurred after hours. These were investigations that required the immediate response of detectives. We investigated a hundred and eight separate human trafficking cases and a total of fifty-four homicides. Through May seventh of this year, as you've heard before, our homicide detectives have investigated ten homicides so far, and our clearance rate for those is eighty percent. That's average clearance rate, the average clearance rate for four of our comparable cities is fifty-eight percent compared to our eighty percent. Next, I would like to talk about our Personnel Services Division. Personnel Services Division is responsible for all backgrounds, hiring, all human resources-related matters, and oversight of our student trainee program. With regard to hiring and backgrounds in two thousand and twenty-two, eight hundred and eighty-seven people completed applications through the city for the position of police officer. Of those, five hundred and twenty-two met the minimum qualifications and were referred to the police department by the city. Throughout two thousand and twenty-two, our background investigators conducted seventeen oral interview and physical assessment test days for candidates. As a result of the candidates competing, completing, and passing the testing process, our investigators completed a hundred and eighty-two backgrounds, each of which take about fifty hours of work to put together. In the end, in two thousand and twenty-two, we graduated forty-four new Sacramento police officers, which is approximately eight percent of the applicants who met the minimum qualifications. We are currently completing the hiring process for our July Academy, and we're slated for twenty-three police officer recruits and fifteen community service officer recruits. Currently, we have twenty-nine in the academy that we hope to graduate at the end of June. As part of our hiring pipeline, SPD employs student trainees, as you've heard. These positions are held by college students attending school and working towards their degrees. These positions allow young people to maintain part-time employment, gain valuable knowledge, and experience within the police department. We currently employ sixteen students throughout the department and are working on a partnership with SAC State Crime and Intelligence Analysis Program to create positions specific to our crime analysis unit. In April two thousand and twenty-three, the Recruiting Division increased efforts in magnet school programs, encouraging high school students to apply for the student trainee position. Due to their diligence and an extended application timeline, the department has received an additional twenty-four applicants who are currently in backgrounds for the student trainee position. The applicants who pass a background will be given applicable on-the-job training to prepare them for full-time employment with the Sacramento Police Department. And finally, our Training Division. The Sacramento Police Department's Training Division is responsible for continuing professional development of our current police officers, the initial entry training of new officers from across the region, and the research of best practices and law enforcement techniques in order to provide our officers with the most current know-how and cutting-edge tools with which best to serve our community. The Training Division provides both in-house instruction, but they also facilitate outside educational training and career development opportunities for our professional staff as well as our sworn members. The Training Division uses the most modern technology and training techniques such as virtual reality simulators, reality-based scenarios, and the state-of-the-art tactical village, the range, and EVOC facilities. That's our driving courses. Our Police Academy is comprised of a staff of nine law enforcement trainers who run two six-month police academies twice as, twice a year, as well as a ten-week community service officer academy during the summer. In addition to the academies, our trainers provide both pre- and post-academy training to our new recruits in order to ensure they have all the tools necessary to do their jobs as Sacramento police officers and community service officers. Sacramento Police Department is trusted by as many as twenty other law enforcement agencies in the region to provide basic academy training to their new officers. So following the academy and post-academy training, graduates enter the field training program, where they participate in six to eight months of supervised job training where they learn to apply skills developed in the police academy. In total, our Training Division provides approximately twenty-three hundred hours of training for every new police officer before they work on their own in the field. Also within our Training Division is our Research and Development Unit. The Research and Development Unit is primarily responsible for identifying and developing contemporary training for our in-service employees. The goal of this unit is to ensure that our officers are equipped with the most relevant effective knowledge and skills to assure for the safety of our community. Some examples of recent contemporary in-service training include innovative customer service training, which models customer service techniques of successful companies from across different industries, strategic communications to better enhance de-escalation, employee health and wellness, and recognition response to rapidly evolving events in the field, using such tools as a critical decision-making model. In compliance with SB nine seventy-eight, all of our training curriculum is posted on our department's transparency webpage. And that concludes my presentation, and I would like to turn it over to Captain Marnie Steigerts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Captain Marnie Steigerts of the Office of the Chief, and I'll be presenting regarding the Administrative Services and Specialized Services Divisions. Specialized Services is comprised of Internal Affairs, the Public Information Office, and Media Services, Criminal Intelligence Unit, and the Chief's Office Professional Staff. Administrative Services is comprised, or excuse me, comprised of the Transparency Team, Policy Team, Force Investigation Team, Inspections and Standards, the Government Affairs Unit, Employee Wellness, and Public Safety Information Technology. Internal Affairs is currently staffed with one lieutenant, five sergeants, three officers, and two professional staff. We are planning to add to our staff to increase our capability for transparency and investigations. For two thousand and twenty-two, there were thirty-eight internal and two hundred and sixty-eight external complaints that were investigated. Two hundred and fifty-eight of those were handled at the division level. Forty-four were investigated formally, and four were received as supervisor messages from the field. From January one of twenty-two through May second of twenty-two, compared with the same dates in two thousand and twenty-three, there have been forty-six percent fewer internal and sixty-six percent fewer external complaints. From May of two thousand and twenty-two to May of two thousand and twenty-three, in conjunction with the PIO and Media Services, the Transparency Team has compiled and facilitated the release of eight hundred and eleven media files on the department's YouTube page pertaining to twenty-eight different critical incidents. All pertinent audio and video were released within thirty days of an officer-involved shooting or other significant public interest event, in compliance with the Council's expedited transparency policy and per Senate Bill fourteen twenty-one and Senate transparency policy and per Senate Bill 1421 and Senate Bill 16. Our Government Affairs Unit handles California Public Records Act requests for PRAs for the Police Department not related to SB 1421 or 16. The professional staff of four handled 1,153 PRA requests in '22. There are currently 59 open requests for data including statistics, arrests, crime information, pod footage, various communication documentation, among other requests. So far this year, they have received 386 requests and handle an average of 200 contracts, council reports, and city attorney consultations per year. Our Policy Team is comprised of one sergeant, two officers, and three professional staff as well as four innuents. The staff is also instrumental in creating, revising, and publishing all general orders, manuals, roll call training bulletins, legislative updates, and ensuring employee acknowledgement compliance. Beginning in January 1 of '22 through May 9 of '23, the Policy Team has issued 24 general order policies or updates, 21 roll call training bulletins, four reference manuals, and all 27 communication directives have been updated. Some of the policies and manuals include interactions with transgender and gender-diverse people, media relations, the military equipment use policy, facial recognition, and foot pursuits general orders, the First Amendment Assembly Manual, Internal Investigations Manual, and the Field Training Program Manual. There are an additional 58 general orders, four roll call training bulletins, six referent manuals, and six operations orders, as well as two department memos that are currently being updated or pending final review at this time. Our Force Investigation Team is comprised of one sergeant, two officers, and six ancillary investigators. FIT responds to all critical incidents, including officer-involved shootings and death in custody's, as well as all serious bodily injuries associated with a use-of-force incident. From January 1 of '22 through May 9 of '23, FIT has responded to six officer-involved shootings and 19 significant bodily injury incidents. Additionally, they act as a liaison with risk management and are a primary point of contact for research on best practices and coordinating with the Department of Training. The Inspections and Standards Team is made up of one sergeant, one administrative technician, and one innuent. IST conducts monthly audits of injury and property settlements involving police employees and biweekly audits of department compliance of the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, or RIPA. IST is also responsible for tracking, auditing, inspecting departments' military equipment, which includes proposed procurement requests, physical inventory inspections, identifying any potential unauthorized use, and compiling the department's annual report and policy. The Use of Force Review Board was created to evaluate officer or authorized, non-sworn-uniformed department personnel use-of-force incidents to ensure that force is used lawfully, appropriately, and is consistent with training and policy. There is a parallel Training Review Board that independently reviews cases as assigned to ensure there is compliance with current training and policy as well. All Level 1 or 2 uses of force incidents, not including those resulting in death involving discharge of a firearm at a person, are reviewed at the board. From January 1 of '22 through May 11 of '23, the board has reviewed 174 individual uses of force. Lieutenant Jeff Sharashi is the supervisor of our Policy, Force Investigation, Inspections and Standards Teams, and our liaison between the Community Police Review Commission and the Assistant City Manager. He attends monthly commission meetings, chair meetings, and facilitates research for the current work plan. Some of the current projects being worked on with the Commission are organizing response to the Commission recommendations and coordinating community input meetings for the upcoming annual military equipment use report and policy. Our Employee Services Unit has recently accepted a grant from the state of California to grow our Peer Support Unit and improve employee wellness. We'll be using those funds over the next two and a half years through the end of 2025 to add to the number of ancillary peer support officers we have across the department and create a wellness benchmark and evaluation process for all officers. We will continue to provide health equipment and opportunities for officers to ensure they are at their peak, both physically and mentally. We are currently in the process of updating our portion of the city and department website, including the recruiting website, and highlighting our transparency page listing all educational and training materials, innovation, transformation, and best practices, use-of-force information and statistics, and the Military Equipment Use Report in General Order. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention. I will now turn it over to Brenda Delgado, who will present on the operating budget. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Council, and City Manager Chan. I am Brenda Delgado, Public Safety Administrative Manager for the Police Department. The Police Department's fiscal year '24 proposed operating budget totals $228.2 million. This represents an increase of approximately $8.5 million from the department's fiscal year '23 amended budget, or $3.5 million over the fiscal year '23 approved budget. To have an apples-to-apples comparison, we have added back the fiscal year '23 fleet replacement budget of $5 million to the fiscal year '23 amended budget, as this budget is transferred at the start of the fiscal year to a MIOP managed by City Fleet. By adding this back in, it shows the true change in the Police Department budget, which is $3.5 million, or about 1.55%. $2.2 million of the increase comes from Employee Services or Labor. It is attributable to a net $5.2 FTE, additional professional staff positions, programmed contract increases, and miscellaneous increases in the Position Budget Report. The new professional staff account for about $915,000 of the increase. $915,000 of the increase. The additional net $5.2 FTER, one administrative analyst for the Alarms Unit, one administrative analyst for the Crime Analysis Unit, two dispatcher threes, and one supervising dispatcher for the Communications Center, one administrative analyst for the Professional Standards Unit, one administrative technician funded by Measure U for the Office of Violence Prevention, and then we have two ad deletes. The first ad delete will delete 2.8 FT security officer positions and add one program specialist position for the Crime Analysis Unit. The other ad delete will delete an administrative assistant position and add an administrative technician position for the Community Advancement Unit. These additional positions will be discussed in greater detail as part of a future slide. $714,000 of the $2.2 million comes from miscellaneous Position Budget Report increases, and so this represents increases in salary and percentage-based benefits, as well as any changes in medical benefits across all police positions. There's also about $528,000 of previously programmed contract increases. It should be noted that labor costs account for approximately 90% of PD's total operating budget. There's also an $86,000 increase in services and supplies. The majority of it comes from one-time and ongoing services and supplies budget for the new positions, and that's about $67,000. And the balance of $19,000 is from miscellaneous increases and decrease, but mainly from the fuel budget. And so fuel and vehicle repair and maintenance budgets are centrally budgeted by City Fleet and based on the fleet size and previous expenditures and usage while factoring in anticipated expense rates or rates and increases. The increase in our multi-year operating projects are attributable to, $1 million is for replacement of one-time ARPA funding that was used for the Office of Violence Prevention DRIP program, and this was previously described a little bit by DC Leong. And another $200,000 is attributable to the annual fleet replacement MIOP. The fiscal year '24 replacement budget reflects an increase of $200,000 over the current year. General Fund Fleet Replacement Budget is based on the number of vehicles in the fleet and their point score, making the budget among General Fund Fleet assets proportional among departments. And so that $200,000 is just based on, out of the 10.3, 5.2 of that is for fleet replacement. And so if you take away the $5 million from this current year, that's where the $200,000 comes from. There was a small decrease in reimbursements of $47,000, and that change is just attributable to a different mix of employees on grants and a decrease in anticipated grant reimbursements. The proposed budget staffing number shows sworn staffing remains unchanged and a professional staff increase of 5.2 FTE. However, the department will request sworn staffing budget reductions and professional staff changes for inclusion in the adopted budget. These changes will be addressed by Chief Lester. The staffing increase will also be increased or explained as part of the next slide. We currently have 769 authorized sworn positions, and as of May 5, we had 101 sworn vacancies. There are 29 recruits currently in the academy, four community service officer twos who can be upgraded to police officers, and four additional recruits that are already hired for the July 2023 Police Officer Academy. It should be noted that the department is not funded for academy recruit positions and uses salary savings to pay for the majority of this expense. The department is currently working on finalizing the hiring for this summer CSO and Police Officer Academies. We also have 93 professional staff or non-sworn vacancies out of the currently authorized positions. These positions provide critical support department-wide. Most of these vacancies are in the Records Division, the 911 Call Center, and part of the Hiring Pipeline. The Hiring Pipeline positions are developmental in nature, with our goal being to help them transition to full-time positions. So our FY '24 budget and position changes include both General Fund and Measure U changes, the first being for the Alarms Billing Unit, where we will be adding an administrative analyst, but it will be fully offset by permit and false alarm revenue. There's currently only one position in the Alarms Unit, and the additional position will support increased workload as alarms technology has become more accessible. In the Communications Center, we will be adding two dispatcher threes and one supervising dispatcher at a cost of $423,000. These three positions will support city auditor staffing recommendations and help ensure the city has adequate resources to meet emergency needs of our growing population. In the Community Advancement Unit, we will process one of the ad deletes and will delete an administrative assistant position and add an administrative technician position. This change is cost-neutral. The position change is necessary to align the job classification to the duties to be performed, which are administrative in nature, in support of the Community Advancement Unit. In the Crime Analysis Unit, we'll be adding one administrative analyst at a cost of $132,000. This position will support increased workload in the unit, which is tasked with providing strategic analysis of data created by the department. This unit is also tasked with the development and implementation of the new database policing and investigations model being used by the department's violent crime reduction strategy. Also in the Crime Analysis Unit will be the other ad delete, will be deleting 2.8 security officer positions and adding one program specialist. This is also a cost-neutral change. This position change adds a necessary supervisor for the unit. Historically, the supervisor of this unit has been sworn. However, the sergeant was redeployed to patrol. Having a professional staff supervisor provides more consistent direction, as this person will not be regularly rotated to a different assignment. We'll also be adding one administrative analyst to the Professional Standards Unit at a cost of $132,000. This position will help ensure the department is compliant with AB 481, requiring law enforcement to create, maintain, track, and report on the purchase and use of military equipment. This position will complete reporting beyond what is required by the state as was requested by Council. There's also an augmentation of $120,000 annually for the Safety Equipment CIP. This augmentation will provide sufficient funding every five years to replace the protective plates. And as part of Measure U, we have two changes to our Office of Violence Prevention, with the first being the addition of an administrative technician at $105,000, and this admin tech will be added to provide daily administrative support and help with the various reporting requirements of this office. The proposed budget also includes $1 million in ARPA replacement for DRIP funding, and DRIP stands for Disruption Response Intervention and Prevention, as described by DC Leong. Next, I wanted to provide some updates on the Measure U operating budget. The fiscal year '24 PD Measure U budget totals $9.9 million, and it supports 66.5 FTE in the Hiring Pipeline Program and the Office of Violence Prevention. So the Hiring Pipeline Program is funded at $5.8 million and supports 63.5 FTE, and includes the Student Trainee Positions and Community Service Officer Positions. However, the department will request a cost-neutral change to increase the number of student trainees for inclusion in the adopted budget. These changes will also be addressed by Chief Lester. Also funded is about $335,000 for miscellaneous services and supplies and equipment for these 63.5 positions. The program has been successful in recruiting and retaining diverse candidates and preparing them for careers in law enforcement and professional staff positions. Currently, the incumbents in the Student Trainee Classification are about 78% diverse, and the last Community Service Officer Academy was 75% diverse, and the current Police Officer Academy was 71% diverse on day one of the academy. The Office of Violence Prevention will be funded by $4.1 million. So this will fund three FTE, with one being new for FY '24. The funding also supports three MIOPS. $1.3 million for the youth pop-ups administered with the Office of Youth Development, $1.4 million for the Gang Prevention and Intervention Task Force, and again, $1 million for the ARPA replacement for DRIP, the Disruption Response Intervention and Prevention Program. Next, Natalie will describe the department's CIPs and MIOPS.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Weaver, administrative officer in the Police Department's Fiscal Operations Division. Tonight, I will be going over the department's capital improvement program and multi-year operating projects. The FY '23-24 CIP is approximately $4.25 million in general fund resources to support long-term investments in technology, infrastructure, and equipment. Our Body-Worn Camera and Conductive Electrical Device CIP is to support our body-worn camera and CED costs, which include equipment, accessories, media management software, data storage, licensing, and periodic device upgrades. BWC technology investments are a critical element of the department's transparency efforts and enhance the department's ability to comply with video release policies and legislation. CED investments are critical to the department's commitment to using less-than-lethal force options. Next, we have our IT Infrastructure CIP to support mission-critical technology, including data storage, network infrastructure, software, county-compliant electronic citation platforms, and backup solutions. We also have our Fleet Technology and Equipment CIP to maintain, replace, and upgrade mobile data computers, in-car cameras, and protective door panels in patrol vehicles. These funds are critical to keeping the public safety fleet operational. Finally, we have our Safety Equipment CIP for the purchase of personal protective equipment, portable radios, and less-lethal training equipment and supplies. Next, I'll go over our multi-year operating projects, which total $10.3 million in combined general fund and Measure U resources. The first is our MIOP for the Impact Team, and that's to continue its services seven days a week. Next, we have our IT Infrastructure for increased costs of software, licensing, and maintenance needs. Brenda also shared with you earlier our GPIT funding, which is approximately $1.4 million for the Office of Violence Prevention, along with its DRIP funding. That is the $1 million that we are using from Measure U to replace what we previously supported with ARPA resources. We have the Fleet Replacement MIOP. It's the $5.2 million that will be transferred to a Public Works MIOP later in the year, a MIOP for our police observation devices, which is to pay for ongoing cellular connectivity for our pods. We have the ShotSpotter MIOP, which is to support the ShotSpotter platforms in North Sacramento and Oak Park. And finally, we have the Family and Youth Investments MIOP, $1.3 million, which is administered in partnership with the Office of Youth Development to provide youth pop-up events. Thank you for this time this evening. I'll now return the presentation to Chief Kathy Lester.
So in this year's budget, as Brenda has detailed, we're requesting some additional professional staff positions, but due to the continued But due to the continued challenges with staffing and really providing core services to our city, we have reorganized our department to really better serve our whole city. So, as I mentioned briefly at the beginning of our presentation, there are some recent changes from the proposed budget that I will discuss here. You know, the key mission, I believe, of any public safety agency should be really to provide those core public safety services, and in order to do that effectively, we need to staff appropriately. So, currently, as you've heard, we have 101 sworn officer vacancies out of our authorized staffing of 769 officers. And to put that into perspective, if you go back to 2008, our authorized staffing was about 804 officers. At that time, our city had 64,000 less residents, and we didn't have things like the build-out of Natomas, Delta Shores, or certainly not the downtown core. We have different demands and expectations of our frontline employees, and in recent years, we have really focused extensively on crisis intervention, de-escalation, and accountability. There's increased reporting and documentation required by all of our members, and certainly a much greater expectation to perform according to best practices and standards. So, we know that our patrol force is not adequately staffed. We signed up 264 officers for patrol in 2021, 257 for last year, and we're down to 236 for this current year. It's about 30 less officers in the past two years. It's also about 50 less officers in patrol than at other times in the past decade. So, currently, we have to rely a lot on backfill overtime just to reach minimum staffing standards, and at times, it's really just difficult to staff special events as well as critical public safe needs like sideshows and First Amendment events. And I'll give you an example just from this past Saturday. We received information that there was going to be a sideshow that ultimately numbered over 500 vehicles. It was also the inaugural Second Saturday event in Midtown. That same night, we had a shooting with multiple victims and a fatal collision that required a call-out from our traffic teams. In order to provide adequate officers, day shift was mandatorily held over for four hours, graveyard was called in early, and many swing-shift officers were diverted from their patrol duties, their core function, to help address the sideshow, which ultimately was almost eight hours long. It occurred at seven locations throughout our city, resulting in 12 toes, 13 sites, and four pursuits. All of this was handled by an emergency contention of 21 officers. So, knowing that adequate patrol staffing has been a challenge, our command staff has been really working for months on a department-wide reorganization plan, which will increase patrol staffing next year by over 25 officers. It will also create a Seventh Patrol District, which will add sergeants to patrol. We are going to be asking to expand our pipeline hiring program because I really believe that's where we need to go into the future. You know, we've been really, I think, very blessed here at our agency and that we're kind of maintaining the status quo. Unfortunately, you know, we haven't been able to fill all of our vacancies, but you know, we're basically kind of about the same that we have been over the last couple of years. And I think having a pipeline hiring program, which has been proven to be very successful, you help grow your own, you're able to develop young men and women to be successful in this profession. We will also formalize a dedicated lieutenant to oversee special events. That's something that we, it's a position that we've pulled out of patrol for almost two years to manage many of our special events, and we are going to add four additional sworn into our Internal Affairs Division. With these changes, we expect to see reduced call-response times, a reduced use of backfill overtime, certainly improved officer wellness and retention, a quicker resolution of citizen concerns, and enhanced service through smaller geographic responsibilities, and overall, I believe, a better service product to our community. So, in order to do that, we had to make some very significant and difficult decisions. These included consolidation of a number of units, elimination or reduction of contractual officers, and the deletion of some positions so we can add positions to help support this plan. So, first, we are ending the hospital contracts with Sutter and Kaiser. This will result in a reduction of six sworn FTE in the next fiscal year, and will put six officers back into patrol immediately. The duties that are currently being handled by the hospital officers will be reabsorbed into the patrol division. Additionally, we are requesting the elimination of a longstanding unfilled vacancy for a DMV-funded auto-theft detective. We're also requesting that we eliminate an ABC grant position as we did not seek grant funding for this current fiscal year, the upcoming fiscal year. Finally, we're requesting the approval to reduce five FTE police officer positions to create lieutenant position to oversee all of our special and First Amendment events, and to add a patrol sergeant and a sergeant to Internal Affairs. So, the total reduction of sworn FTE in the upcoming fiscal year will be 14 effective July 1, and that will reduce our authorized sworn staffing from 769 to 755. Then, throughout the year, we also intend to reduce the regional transit contract by eight officers at the end of the calendar year. This will put an additional eight officers into patrol in January and further reduce our authorized sworn FTE to 747. So, these reductions will reduce our overall budget by about $1.05 million. Additionally, we are requesting an add-delete to expand the number of student trainee positions. This will be accomplished by deleting seven CSO-1 positions and will ultimately add 36 part-time student trainees into our hiring pipeline. And then, in order to keep the Office of Violence Prevention-funded, community-based organizations running through the summer, I see a number of them here in the audience with me, the department is requesting authority to amend and extend the selected contracts from the approved Measure U funding as part of GPIT and the DRIP programs. And then, we will issue a new RFP, but that will continue, well, at least will allow us to continue programming through the summer. Next slide. So, in this upcoming year, we're continuing to focus on our department objectives, as you can see here. To expand community engagement and transparency, we are growing our crime analysis unit and continuing the neighbors' transition. We're also exploring reporting options for citizens to really improve their experience. We are piloting a mobile police station. This is similar to the mobile library program, which will bring police services directly to our neighborhoods. And we are also going to take the survey data that we've worked on for the past year and really work with you to stand up the city-level Violence Advisory Board and then help, you know, make decisions on what we can do as a city to, you know, improve conditions and reduce violence. To reduce violent crime, one of the most important changes I believe we can make is this reorg, which will make officers more readily available to respond to calls from our community. I'm also happy to share that we saw fewer homicides and victims of shootings in the past year. We also saw some decreases in crime when compared to our five-year average. However, since 2021, we have seen increases in other crimes. The current quarter of '23 is trending down when compared to the first quarter of 2022, but we do know that every crime matters. We are going to conduct a number of peer exchanges through the PSP partnership, conduct our two in-depth assessments, develop crime dashboards, and continue to grow efforts like the FBI Violent Crime Reduction Intelligence Initiative, which is a collaborative effort between 12 agencies in our region to share information and reduce crime. And we're going to continue our efforts in partnering with our community-based organizations to meet the needs of our members of our community, including those most at risk of being a victim or being involved in violence. Finally, we're going to continue our efforts to enhance service and professionalism by really realigning the complaint process, continuing department-wide customer service training and measurement, and working with the police commission to support their efforts and community outreach for the military equipment use policy, as well as partnering with them to address outstanding commission recommendations. We'll also continue our targeting recruiting efforts, and as we presented in this budget, expand our pipeline hiring program, which has been shown to be over 70% diverse and certainly accounts for a large percentage of our police academy recruits. At this time, we will complete our presentation with the Asset Forfeiture Master Plan, and I'll turn that over to Natalie to present, and then we'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
So, to kick off this asset forfeiture presentation, I want to go over a couple of things. Resolution 2019-0199 requires that the Sacramento Police Department present an annual asset forfeiture master plan to the City Council. What is asset forfeiture? Asset forfeiture is a non-criminal court proceeding that determines whether money and/or property seized during a criminal investigation are the profits or tools of illegal activities or if they are used in support of illegal activities. Under state law, when a court determines that seized property is subject to forfeiture, the funds are first dispersed to innocent property owners and victims, then to reimburse state and local entities for the cost incurred to process, secure, preserve, maintain, and/or sell the property. The balance of the forfeited property is then distributed as follows: 65% to the seizing law enforcement agencies, 15% of which must be set aside specifically for anti-drug and anti-gang programs. Use of this 15% allocation must be agreed upon by a panel consisting of the sheriff, the district attorney, the chief probation officer, and the chief of police. Then, 10% goes to the prosecutorial agency that affected the forfeiture, in this case, the district attorney's office, 24% goes to the state general fund, and 1% goes to the state environmental enforcement and training account. State and federal guidelines prohibit agencies from budgeting or planning future earnings. In addition, guidelines state that earnings must be used for law enforcement purposes only and cannot replace or otherwise supplant existing resources. The master plan summarizes new revenues received since last year's presentation and details how the department intends to use those resources in accordance with the allowable uses contained in Resolution 2019-0199. Both state and federal program requirements mandate that state asset forfeiture earnings must be maintained and accounted for separately from other resources. The FY2324 Asset Forfeiture Master Plan totals $609,987. $460,000 comes from state asset forfeiture, $83,000 is earmarked for the anti-drug and anti-gang programs, $57,000 comes from the U.S. Department of Treasury, and $3,000 comes from the U.S. Department of Justice. As defined in our asset forfeiture policy, revenue may be used for any of the following activities: supportive operations and investigations, training and education, service contracts, public safety facilities, equipment, prevention and awareness programs, and supportive community-based organizations. As I mentioned before, under state law, 15% of what we receive must be earmarked for these programs. The U.S. Department of Justice allows $25,000 annually to support community-based organizations. However, the U.S. Department of Treasury does not allow the use of its funds to support these types of organizations. Let's see. These funds are in addition to what is presented in the 2324 operating budget for Measure U and Measure L. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. This final slide lists the organizations and programs that have benefited from asset forfeiture. These programs focus on at-risk youth, drug intervention diversion, and anti-gang activity education, and have a proven track record of success. Also, the funded programs have been collaborative and involve partnerships with educators, parents, sworn law enforcement officers, community-based organizations, and local businesses. Our past partnerships include the Police Foundation, which runs our magnet and cadet program, as well as the Sacramento Police Activities League, Cops and Kids, Neighborhood Wellness Foundation, and Brother to Brother. This concludes the presentation, and I will now return the podium to Chief Lester. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we turn it over to the public for public comment, I just want to, excuse me, I just want to go to the 30,000-foot level here and understand the basics because I think it's really important, kind of the headline here. You're adding how many officers to patrol?
Right now, we should be adding between 25 and 30, and then we'll also have the probationary officers that'll be coming out of training at that time as well.
Okay. And you're doing so without adding significantly to the police budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're doing it, as I want to summarize it and tell me if I'm correct or correct me, please, chief. First of all, by cutting the healthcare contracts, you are, that costs us money because we're getting money from the systems and regional transit, but we're freeing up people, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. By eliminating the vacancies and reducing the overall number of authorized positions, we're saving significant amount of money.
It's actually kind of cost-neutral because we do have a revenue offset, which Brenda is much better at explaining than I am. It'll look like, certainly, like the savings in our budget, but we will not have the accompanying revenue. So, it's really cost-neutral on those positions.
But I'm just trying to understand for the public to understand the sort of, it's a little, you know, magic in a positive way here, how you're adding, you're adding 25 patrol positions with minimal increase, if any increase at all, in the budget. We're losing money by eliminating the contracts with the private entities, and then, so how are we coming up with the money then to pay for the additional patrol officers?
So, essentially, we'll be eliminating vacancies. We've had a large number of vacancies for a number of years, and, you know, I would love to fill them, but in light of the fact that that isn't going to happen immediately, I think this is a much more prudent and efficient way.
So, that's, okay, so, the savings really is from the elimination of the vacancies that going in to paying patrol officers, we're getting the officers because we're shifting them from these contracted positions.
Absolutely. It's really a reallocation of those officers.
A reallocation. Okay, I just think that was important to summarize in terms of how this proceeded. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's hear from the public, and then we'll open it up to members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 25 speakers. The first is Ryan Masano, then Mac Worthy, then Mac.
That government governs least or governs best, which governs least. It is irrational to believe that raising taxes and throwing more money at the problems of crime, homelessness, and a dysfunctional education system will fix those problems. No society in human history ever taxed its way to prosperity. Of course, 1913 was the worst year in American history as we were enslaved with the income tax, direct election of senators, and the Federal Reserve. And if you say who runs the Federal Reserve, you are anti-Semitic, a word which, along with Nazi and racist, was created by these bankers to protect them from criticism. They cry out in pain as they strike you. Police generally do a good job, though, as happened in Russia in 1917 and China in 1948 with their communist revolutions. The media inflamed popular hatred of police so that police would be helpless when communist mobs began murdering the enemies of the bankers, and you are an anti-Semite if you say who they are. Until union control of police and all other professions is ended, they will not be truly accountable to the people they serve. Unions profess to give fair wages and benefits, but in reality, it is about absolute control from the top of the unions. If white supremacists hate bigotry, sexism, and racism from whites was a problem in Sacramento, then why isn't the entire Sacramento City Council made up of straight whites? So, we see you are deceiving when you speak about the problems of racism, white supremacy, Nazis, and hate. Just because you hate the truth does not make a white person who tells it hateful. Anti-Semitism used to mean someone who hates all Jews. Now, it means someone who is hated by Jew bankers. 90% of-
See you later, pal. We don't want to hear any more from you.
Okay, I have the First Amendment. I have the First Amendment. This is a violation of my First Amendment rights.
We don't want to hear any more of your shit.
This is a violation of my First Amendment rights, and I have the First Amendment. You need to listen to that, and you need to get your audience in control, too. I have 30 seconds left on my clock. You have no right to take away my time.
Will you pause for a moment? Will you pause for a moment? I'd like to remember, remind members of the audience that please don't shout out from the audience. You will have your opportunity to speak. Thank you. Would you put 30 seconds back on the clock? You'll have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please don't shout out from the audience.
You'll get your time.
Thank you. So, if people disagree with what I say, they have the ability to come up here and speak their disagreement. But the problem is, you have people who feel that they are going to shout down the opposition, and so what they do is, by doing this, they're ensuring their own First Amendment rights are going to come under attack. So, at the end of the day, we have a brainwashed population that is incapable of critical thought. They think, they have never been disciplined as kids, so they march up here and they think that they're-
Your time is up. Sit down.
Thank you.
Sit down. Get out. We don't want you. Go, your time, his time's up. Get out. Next. Next.
Our next, I'd like to remind members of the audience, please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting.
You know what?
Because he was interrupted, he got additional time.
You know what? You know what? I agree.
Your mayor interrupted me. Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, and then Mac, and then Sacramento Community. Mac Worthy, then Mac, and then Sacramento Community.
You know, it's sad to see what's going on. Mayor, you're showing your, you're showing your ignorance. You're showing, you can't take it when the truths come out. We need people that can be truthful here and work with the fullness of our- We need people that can be truthful here and work with the police department. You got stuff going on here with the police department that shouldn't be going on. You are pimping the police department. You can't train the police. You are pushing them out there into a jungle they're going to get their hell shot out of. I want to tell you now. I try to show them that people...police department got to be a septic entity. You see what's happening with the FBI. You got some stuff here within you all that messing these guys up. You messing these guys up, because you got some stuff in your thing that you should throw out and listen to these guys. Not in two minutes for each person. You should be in a workshop that can raise the issue for they dealing with their money instead of them showing you what they do on duty. You supposed to already know that. We not supposed to be...how many they arrested? Those statistics are out there. That ain't how they get their budget. They get their budget, and you are pimping them by using your strength against them. It gonna hurt. Mayor, it's time for you to go. All those people...because those people coming here is a yes vote for you. Go back to corners, to five. Three districts here, you choose the people who be elected in those districts. Open up the charter. I want to know when the schedule of the charter in there, and we want to see if we have to get a lawyer. I got a little money coming too, that we want to see what you've been doing by hiding...
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Mac, and then Sacramento Community. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mac.
How is Mac?
Mac McKenzie, and then Sacramento Community is following McKenzie.
I think I want to begin by expressing how insulted I was to hear about the questions of like where all the people that like care about the budget are at a 10:00 a.m. Law and Ledge meeting. It like speaks to the arrogance and the ignorance, to the inaccessibility of your processes, meetings, or even access to the information or the agenda that only comes out a few days before the meeting. We'll know that this budget will be deeply analyzed and with it weaponized against y'all as we teach our community about the austerity and poverty that this budget causes them, and causes the things like crime and harm, and causes the crisis that we are...that we have in our community, and the things that we see on a daily basis, whether that's off or on the street corners. There are groups, like the People's Budget Sacramento and the Community Care First Sacramento Coalition, that are way less ignorant to these things and are already talking to a lot of Sacramentoans. Thousands have already taken their surveys, and they found that this year, 40% of the budget goes to law enforcement. Out of the general fund goes to law enforcement. Over almost 30% goes to a pretty racist and culturally incompetent fire department. You know, I want to just add that, because that previous speaker was hella on point. Even the way that they interact with unhoused folks and drug users is terrific. Your fire department and law enforcement are a hot mess out here, y'all, and only adding to the trauma...and only adding to the trauma to us by your austerity budgets. Instead, these numbers should be reduced and reinvest in the proven preventions of crime and harm. The things that are study after study have said over and over again, make our communities healthier, happier, more educated, and therefore freer, and in less need of police and emergency services. Socially and publicly owned housing, food and water, access to mental health and substance use services, violence prevention programs, workforce development, education, after-school community, all of these things, y'all. And what's happening, I see my time's up, is that y'all gutted DCR 10 million dollars and gave it to law enforcement, and you only give 16 million dollars...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Sacramento Community, then DeAngelo Mac.
They're getting $28 million every year.
Who filled out Sacramento Community? Thank you. Sacramento Community, then DeAngelo Mac.
The current budget is another in a long, long time of status quo budgets that prioritize law enforcement over basic human needs, health, and community services. This budget does not align with the values and priorities of Sacramento Community, not the people who are paid here and getting overtime to be here to speak on these budgets, but the people who are actually affected by what you guys are voting on. There's a lot I could say, but the bottom line is, the Sacramento Police Department is routinely violating the rights of California's protesting against racism, white supremacy, police violence in Sacramento. So why is the city continuing to increase their budget without stopping the police from engaging in the same behaviors? There's a lot we can say about the police, about the history of policing, about what this board has said that they would do, but none of it has been done. People who work in mental health, people who work in unhoused services, if you speak to them, you know, they don't always have the time to come here, because they have families, they have lives. And on a Tuesday night at 8:30, not everybody can come in, but believe me, more people than not oppose this budget, oppose the police increase. Believe me, the people are on our side. They might not be here in this chamber right now with me, but they're at home, and they're feeding their kids, and they're getting ready for school tomorrow. They don't have time to be here all night where you guys are paid while they're all paid to be here. We're not paid to be here. Newsflash, I'm not paid to be here. But I'm here because I'm upset, because the police, for hundreds of years, have done nothing but oppress and strip the resources that we need to grow and survive. It does not provide adequate reduction of crime or prevention of crime. The statistics speak of itself. All she talked about was response time. That doesn't reduce crime or stop crime. Mental health services, housing, behavior, that's what stops crime, not this crap.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is DeAngelo Mac, and then Maron Demice.
I wish I would have filled out two forms to talk as myself. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's DeAngelo Mac. I'm a resident of District 7, and the Director of Equity Justice for Public Health Advocates. Public Health Advocates is a local nonprofit organization that engages in community-driven local and state policy change. We focus on improving the health outcomes of the most marginalized communities through advocacy and research. PHA's First Response Transformation Campaign uses both advocacy and research to focus on improving public safety by champion systemic...systematic changes and makes emergency response systems more responsive to community needs and less costly. We are before you today to talk about the proposed budget for SACPD and share research that can be used by the council and the city department to determine investments in first response systems that, one, align with the community's needs, two, addresses challenges in recent years of unfilled first response positions and the reliance in overtime. Our research shows that after examining 911 call data throughout several cities within the state and cultivate...and conducting a public opinion poll of registered voters locally and statewide, that the greater community wants better options for emergency response and better use and transparency of their tax dollars. An example of this collective desire is the Sacramento City Council and the community passing the first-of-its-kind public safety resolution, which offers us an alternative to this historical approach. We have researched partnerships with local research institutions that can conduct unbiased and rigorous analyses with de-identified data. We are asking you to partner with...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Maron Demice, Christina Gilardi. So Maron, Christina, and then Ryan McClinton.
Hello, I'm Maron Demice. I am a resident of District 4. I'm an administrative specialist with Public Health Advocates on the First Response Transformation Campaign. Building on DeAngelo's comments, I'm here to highlight the importance of further research to better understand the needs for the first response services in Sacramento. In particular, 911 data...analyzing 911 data is important, because it reveals how well the needs of Sacramento's residents align with current responses. Current analyses from over 350,000...3,500...wait, 350,000 documented 911 calls in 2019 showed that the top three call descriptions accounted for about 40% of the calls. These were call descriptions for disturbance, suspicious intent...excuse me, suspicious incident, and traffic stop. Analyses also examined in-process, as well as after-the-fact type of calls. 89% of the calls are labeled as after-the-fact. So this could be a person comes home to find out their home has been broken into, or a report needs to be taken at an incident that's already happened. This is just a peek into some of the insights that research can provide. We have research partnerships with local research institutions that can conduct unbiased and rigorous analyses with de-identified data. This is why I'm asking you to partner with us in analyzing 911 data call to further understand the needs of the community and department, and we can do this free of charge.
Next speaker is Christina Gilardi, then Ryan McClinton.
My name is Dr. Christina Gilardi, and I'm a resident of District 4, the Director of Research and Learning at Public Health Advocates, and provide research support to the First Response Transformation Campaign. I'm going to build on DeAngelo and Maron's comments. So I'm here to talk to you about how we can use 911 call data to better inform your budget decisions, and by understanding the first response landscape here. That includes community needs, types of calls law enforcement are needed at, and how best to align those needs with services in transparent ways. It's important, because for years, there have been concerns of unfilled positions and overtime by the police department, and there are community concerns about which calls law enforcement respond to and how they show up. We think these analyses can help to begin a conversation about how solutions driven by call data might be able to address all of these concerns, including your concerns, Mayor Steinberg, about making sure that police, fire, and EMS are responding to calls that align with their training. We began our analyses to better understand the number percentage of calls for potential harm to individuals through physical or interpersonal harm. So this is usually directed at someone in immediate risk of harm. What we found from publicly available data is that 11% of calls that police responded to in 2019 were...had clear potential threat. 47% had no potential for harm, and 20 were very vaguely labeled as unspecified disturbance or suspicion. Of the 911 calls, 94% of the calls had no potential for harm in progress, other than calls currently underway with potential for harm directed at a person. We need to ask if law enforcement are the right responders. Our ask for you today is to partner with us to conduct the analyses of your 911 data for free. We have grant funding to do this, and we have research partners who are willing to do this. They are independent, unbiased, and can take de-identified data to do this.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Ryan McClinton, and then O.
My name is Ryan McClinton. I'm a Program Manager at Public Health Advocates over our First Response Transformation Campaign. I want to continue to build on the comments from DeAngelo, Maron, and Christina. I wanted to talk to you about the limitations we have acknowledged in the data that you've just heard, about as well as the remaining questions that we have left to answer together. When you look at the limitations, we have to acknowledge that the publicly available data is limited in its content. There's a lot of data fields that we actually need to be able to draw a complete conclusion of what's happened on some of the calls, what's happening within the time of those calls, and who's responding. Categorizations are based on what we can ascertain from the call descriptions that are available in that dataset itself, and there are a lot of unclear outcomes of what happened on the calls that I just mentioned. One note is that some of the data that you've heard is from 2019, because that's what we've had originally did the analysis on, but we can do it updated to 22, 23, and so on and so forth. There's still remaining questions. One of the questions that remain that we think we can help to answer is, to what extent do Sacramento's investments in current first response services align with the community's needs? It's important, because given the budgets conversation that we're currently having and the investments that we're making to public safety, not just law enforcement, but fire, EMS, and the like, they should reflect the diversity in needs and response of our community. That's not just a badge in the gun. It also means mental health providers, social workers, those who respond to quality of life calls on a daily basis. An example of that would be what we're doing again with the Department of Community Response. That department can be staffed, but so many mental health and quality of life employees who are uniquely skilled and trained in those areas to respond to so many of the calls that we heard law enforcement having to spend valuable resources responding to tonight, right? We want our law enforcement being able to respond to those most violent and dangerous calls that we've heard the stats about tonight. In conclusion, we're asking that you partner with some of our research partners, who, again, are unbiased and can provide de-identified data for our 911 analysis, not only for law enforcement, but for fire and EMS alike, and we hope that we can do this collaboratively.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is O, then Samuel.
You, as leaders of this city, have a choice to make, and you have a duty to ensure the safety and security of all of the people you represent in your districts. No matter how convincing the lies are that you've told yourselves to justify voting to approve SACPD's proposed budget, it won't erase the fact that you will be blatantly ignoring what your most vulnerable marginalized communities really need. Coming in here today for our 12th week, unfortunately, we already know how you're going to vote. It's not surprising that I have no faith in this council, but I'm going to make it very clear. A vote for the police is a vote against black and brown communities, a vote against black and brown youth in this city. It's a vote to continue to fund a system of harm and white supremacy. It's a vote that says that the people in this city don't deserve better, that they don't deserve 8.5 million for housing, food security, education, after-school programs, and spaces where at-risk youth can go to be safe. There are, right now as I speak, thousands of people, including babies, children, elders, and disabled folks, living on the streets in your districts. Crazy how it's hot as hell outside, but there's still not a single cooling center in sight. Just this past Saturday, four people were shot, including a one-year-old, 10-year-old, on Del Paso Boulevard. I saw the video, and the shooters looked like kids themselves. As someone who has worked as a youth advocate for years in this city, and as a brown girl who grew up in the hood in North SAC, I know that as the weather gets even more hot, more shootings will come, and more of our youth and community members will die. And as the cost of living increases, more crime will happen. But these crimes are only symptoms of what happens when you make decisions like giving 8.5 million more to SACPD when they already get the majority of the city's budget. The answer is not to flood our black and brown neighborhoods that are already being disproportionately targeted and profiled with militarized police. We need to reimagine public safety for the future of our youth, for the future of struggling families and communities in this city, and know that when, not if, but when SACPD murders someone else, their blood will also be on your hands.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Samuel, and then MVW. Samuel, MVW, then Brooke.
My name is Samuel. My pronouns are they/them. I'm here today to oppose Item 21. It's week 12 of community members coming into these chambers, three months of demanding our local governing body to listen to your most marginalized community members. And our list of demands, demands that will significantly reduce the harm, violence, murder of black and brown lives in Sacramento. One, we demand a moratorium on all military equipment purchases. Two, we demand City Council approve all SPC...SPRC recommendations on military equipment use. Three, we demand a real-time data transparency ordinance for Sacramento City. Four, we demand an end to SACPD's use of pretextual traffic stops. Five, we demand an end to SACPD's use of unmarked cars and plainclothes police officers. Six, we demand SACPD dissolve its gang enforcement and problem-oriented policing teams. Seven, we demand a moratorium on all encampment sweeps by SACPD. Eight, we demand an end to SACPD's traffic enforcement. Nine, we demand an end to SACPD's answering to all mental health calls. This is...are the names and list of black and brown individuals who were murdered by SACPD in your city. Their lives will never come back. Also, I'm just like...I'm literally flabbergasted that you would allow someone to spew hatred and violence in your city to get more time. That's absolutely fucking ridiculous.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is MVW, then Brooke. Our next speaker is MVW, then Brooke.
I really quickly just want to give a shout out to all the Black and Brown people in the room right now who feel uncomfortable with this many police. You are loved, you are worthy, and do not let these pigs in blue get you down. Jordan Neely in New York, New York, Breonna Taylor in Lewisville, Kentucky, Sandra Bland in Waller County, Texas, Jalen Walker in Akron, Ohio, Tortuguita in Atlanta, Georgia, Tyree Nichols in Memphis, Tennessee, Oscar Grant in Oakland, California, Miles Hall in Walnut Grove, California, Stephon Clark in Sacramento, California, Emmett Teal in Drew, Mississippi. Since Emmett Teal, we say names. We say these names because, as an African proverb, we believe that when we say the name out loud, their story never truly dies. For the past 12 weeks, we have lifted names up with the knowledge that the epidemic of state sanctioned violence will take another soul soon. Every day, Black and Brown mothers wake up with the terror of asking, is today the day? Sacramento Police Chief Catherine Lester is asking for a proposed 3.5 million more to the fiscal budget with a total of 228.5 million. Are you all too weak, too scared, or too deep in the pockets of the police to imagine a world where care comes before cops? Stop using domestic violence victims as your crutch when over 80% don't feel comfortable with cops being there or even calling the cops. What is your actual response? All of these souls, I said, deserved a system designed by compassion, not to be killed by state violence. No more deaths. Say no to police. When we say no to police, we say yes to real mental health programs for all ages with a culture of no enforcement, stable housing regardless of income, food security with fresh food directly from farmers, better parks and healthier trees, public restrooms open 24/7 with easy accessible harm reduction products.
Our next speaker is Brooke.
Free and potholes.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Services for the elderly like arts, universal healthcare, and equal wage income for all. Free childcare.
MVW, please take your seat.
DMT programs outside of the fire department.
MVW, please take your seat. You're speaking out of turn.
Immediate crisis support by nurses, psychiatrists, and local healers.
Brooke, will you please approach the podium?
Millie electric stop managed by the people for the people. Expending for all crimes. 24 hours, 365 days warming and heat centers open.
MVW, you've exceeded your speaking time. Please stop speaking and take your seat.
Without police.
We appreciate your comments, but please take your seat.
Community centers with sports centers, such as light rail.
MVW, by continuing to speak, you are disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. You're in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure.
Hiding under the guise.
MVW, please take your seat, or I ask that you leave the chambers.
Leave the chambers, but you let Nazis.
MVW.
That was what I did in the car on the way here.
MVW, please take your seat, or I ask that you leave the meeting.
Look at your phones and you refuse to do so. Do better.
Our next speaker is Brooke. Following Brooke is Freddie Dearborn Jr., and then Jerome Andria. Brooke?
Cool. Hello, my name is Brooke, and I've been a resident of Sacramento all my life, and I'm here tonight in solidarity with the People's Budget Sacramento. I believe that we, in this city and in this country, need a cultural shift. I believe our community would flourish if we moved away from our individualistic values and into a more collective-minded one. And I know that's kind of idealistic and broad, but I believe that this cultural shift could be sparked right here with our local government. You have the opportunity to quantitatively shift us from punitive systems to systems of care, and to do that, you need to reject this police budget proposal. The police get so much money already, the largest single allocation in our city budget, actually. If we took that money, at least 50 million of it, and invested it into creating systems that take care of us, it would make our community so much safer. We need to divest significantly from the police budget and invest in things like libraries, job training programs, workforce development programs, community-based services, weather respite programs, mental health services, community outreach, education, food banks, medical services, elderly and disabled services. And I can think of so many more things that our community money can be spent on than to expand a violent and broken punitive system. And maybe once you choose to use our community's money in a creative, radical, and loving way, we could begin to make a cultural shift and learn to radically love one another. Sorry. I know it's idealistic, again, to preach love, but shouldn't we aim for our ideals? And obviously, it won't be perfect all the time because we're human and we're messy, and this would be so new, but what we've got is really not working, and we're living in a system so far from our ideals. But if you could legislate in a direction of our ideals, we would be that much closer to them. And who knows? Maybe when you make the choice to create systems of care, and then years down the line, when we all have these cool new systems in place and work out all the kinks and start doing really well as a city.
Thank you for your comments.
We'll see what we're doing, and then we'll follow.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Freddie Dearborn, then Jamie Jerome Anderson.
Universal healthcare or something like, that would be so cool, right?
Thank you for your comments, Brooke. Please take your seat.
What you choose to do tonight has ripple effects.
Thank you for your comments. Please take your seat.
And don't you want to create a ripple on the right side of history?
Our next speaker is Freddie Dearborn Jr.
Human care, human rights instead of fascism. Come on. That's right.
Freddie Dearborn Jr. Our next speaker is Freddie Dearborn Jr., Jerome Anderson. Is that you, Freddie? Thank you. Following Freddie is Jerome Anderson, then Mervyn Brookings.
My spiel tonight is, and I hear everybody, and everybody has a valid point to their opinion, the kids on the street, the youth, I'm here to speak on their behalf. I'm part of one of those ACBOs, and I've been doing this work for about 15 years, and what I know for a fact in them streets, when we were dealing with these kids and this youth, you gotta excuse me, I get emotional, I talk about this because I was that kid. We need more positive mentors, we need the people that we got on the ground, but on the back end of that comes funding. We need the funding, there's just no if, where, is, and buts about it. I did it without funding before, and I've done it with funding, and I see the shift, I see the change, I see what works. So one of the things is, when we get this funding, sometimes it's like for right here, here goes some money to do this for right here, but that's not enough time, and it's not enough funding. We need longer, more, we need longer funding, we need more time to get these kids to make a shift. I'm more, I'm just, I'm more on dealing with the kids on the streets and the youth. Like I said, I'm not trying to knock what nobody said, but the issue I do have is a lot of people just talking and bumping their gums, and ain't nobody doing nothing. They get up here and they want to talk about if we do this and what this, though, but I'm out here in these streets every day dealing with these kids and the trauma that they go through, and when I look around, I'm like by myself, or some of my colleagues that I work with right now, like, there's nobody out here. Like, there's nobody in the streets. They talk about it, but there's nobody really out here. I'm out here every day, and I see it. I see the trauma, and I see the pain, I see the hurt, what these kids are going through, and we need help with the funding, we need long-term funding. We don't need the short stuff isn't working. We need stuff for longer term so we can make it happen, because it don't happen overnight, and the kids are dealing with trust issues and stuff like that, growing up with nobody to be there for them positively. So that's what I'm asking for, is more long-term funding, something that we could have, and we could see the change.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jerome Anderson, then Mervyn Brookings.
Good evening. Thank you. First, Mayor Steinberg, and to the City Council members, my name is Jerome Alvin Anderson, and I represent SARS Self-护者 Recovery. You know, it's my pleasure to attend this meeting tonight with the council, and I'm just respectfully requesting that you consider the approval for additional funding to continue, to approve the city's request for additional EBCD bids and other public safety program funds. See, these funds will support continued collaborative efforts with the city, local law enforcement, and community-based organizations such as ours and others around us, and as well as enhance public safety. You know, through our various initiatives and programs, we have witnessed the transformative power of collaboration between community organizations, law enforcement agencies, local government, in creating safer neighborhoods, enhancing the well-being of our citizens. You know, with the additional funding, I firmly believe we can continue to enhance our existing programs that have already yielded significant positive outcomes. We believe that by working together with the city and local law enforcement, we can build upon the success that we have achieved and make even greater strides in public safety. You know, we talk about cultural change, we talk about progress at a faster pace. You know, we have lived experience, so we're able to go in there and strengthen community and police relationships, shatter the antagonistic ideologies about community members and law enforcement, bring understanding, mutual trust, respect, but ultimately, results. Proactive crime prevention. You know, we're able to treat the trauma, the contributing cognitive factors that stem from criminality, you know, the emotional connection to ignorance. We're able to treat that, give them provided tools and resources to help assist them. In closing.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mervyn Brookings, and then Keon Bliss. Mervyn Brookings, then Keon Bliss.
Good afternoon, Mayor, distinguished City Council, and everybody. I'm a big fan of history, so, and I'm gonna try to be really brief, but I think it's really important as we talk about extending EVids and the violence interruption that we acknowledge, several years ago, our Councilman Rick Jennings had a vision about gang intervention and prevention, and from that, from that vision evolved what we're doing now. And Councilman, I really want you to know, you know I'm in the trenches, you know I'm out there in Del Paso Heights, brother, you have saved hundreds of lives because of your vision, literally. And I think law enforcement and community members that are at the grassroots will tell you that because of that vision years ago, you've saved lives. And bringing it forward, Chief Han and our current Chief Lester have built on that vision. We have a strategic plan now in place that's working. We have a collaboration of community members from Oak Park to Del Paso Heights that are out there and getting the job done together. And aside from the eight organizations that were mentioned earlier, make no mistake, there's another 20 that are out there doing the work and deserve funding and deserve recognition and deserve respect. There's no big I's and little u's in this field. It's about, as Brother said, it's about saving lives, saving our youth lives, and collaboratively, we're doing it, we're doing it with law enforcement. They are doing their part. I'm not taking 115 guns off the street, and I know in my community the results, what happens when those guns are not removed, because like he said, some of us are there to see that, that real-life moment when you see those wounds and you see those mothers crying. So because of your vision and because of the current work, we're getting it done, and we just ask the continued support from this council.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Keon Bliss. And Mayor of I may, our Council Rules of Procedure of Chapter 8, E4, say that if we're going to continue meeting past 9:30 PM, I need a majority vote of the members present. Someone want to make a motion to do that?
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, aros.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bliss?
So, I want to, I want to lift up a lot of the comments that many community members have made in that Sacramento Police Department's budget is unequivocally the largest expenditure of the city's total funds. It's the largest department comprising currently about 37% of the general fund, and now they're asking for their sixth consecutive budget increase to bring it to an all-time high of 228 million. Despite this, the police department really does not provide any meaningful transparency in how it prepares or calculates its budget. In fact, it's sharing less measurable data in its publicly available documents than it did last year. And it also cannot provide a total cost breakdown of their budgeted programs and services that they showed you in that video earlier, because the department has admitted it does not track the total cost of each program and service it provides. So what do we actually get for all these funds? Well, according to publicly available data and including some of the data that was presented in that video, we get about responses to 233,000 out of the 648,000 calls that they received, which is a response rate of about 35%. And they also seized about 67 firearms and made 58 arrests through a three-year average of ShotSpotter, which brings to a resulting efficiency during this period of about an average cost of $22,000 per firearm seized and $26,000 per arrest. And we also get a clearance rate of about 2,395 out of 19,000 or so crimes in 2021, which is about a little less, a little over 12%. Either way, residents deserve full transparency about the budgeting process, which is why our Sacramento Community Police Review Commission made several recommendations to improve budget transparency, which includes adopting a clear-standing policy detailing the department's annual budgeting process, creating a standalone budget transparency webpage and open data portal, just like other jurisdictions in San Francisco and Oakland, and also requiring SPD to track and report the vacancy rates for all budgeted positions and present those publicly at every time.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. We have six more speakers online. The next is PJ. Next speaker is PJ.
Yes, Sacramento City Police do not prevent crime. No police prevent crime. Crime has a perfectly reasonable cause, the lack of investment in communities, especially those that due to systemic and historic racism and defunding have a need that surpasses any other. We've given police several hundred years to end crime, but the best they can do is show up after the fact and arrest people, and their clearance rates show that they're not even good at that. And that doesn't even mean the person charged is actually even guilty. And none of that gets to the root cause of crime, one which increases for every dollar directed towards punitive measures over restorative ones. Police depend on fear of lawlessness to drive the white suburbs into a frenzy. Police depend on the threat of their union inciting that fear and the union's bribing of most of you to ensure their members get kept in place, harming communities, not preventing crime, and continuing to siphon money that could otherwise be used to lift communities up. And you buy into it out of fear, possibly ignorance of reality and science, possibly your desire to keep the existing system in place because you believe what the cops will trot out in front of you. While the Sacramento City Open Data Portal provides the data, and in all areas, crime rates are flat. The same with violent crime, if not actually going down. No better, no worse. They'll claim it's worse because even if that were true, the indictment of their failure never comes back to haunt them. We just keep shoveling money at them because of white suburban fear. But even though it's flat, that isn't better. That means that it is costing us more every year to maintain, and eventually, their budget will take over the entire budget. What then? As crime continues to increase at that point, given a complete divestment from community, will you ever admit your failure, or will you shovel bucket loads of cash to them and continue to point at the poor or minorities? Your ignorance is gross. Your failure to hold them accountable with the same type of metrics you demand from your grant recipients is gross, and all it does is continue to harm those same communities year after year because of cowardice to do different. And it's kind of showing the activists you despise are the ones to defend you against antisemitism. Remember that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Cool. My name's Dylan. I'm a Sacramento resident, and I, you know, there's a lot to say about the police and their budget. Unfortunately, the city of Sacramento thinks that my time's only worth about another one and three-quarter minutes, so I won't be able to say everything I want to say. I'll just say that I think it's pretty, it's honestly unthinkable that you would consider passing this budget as is. This is an increase from last year, which was an increase from the previous year, which was an increase from the previous year, and so on and so on. You see the pattern. The cops don't need more money, they're not doing anything good with it. Shout out to Keon for doing all that math to highlight exactly how inefficient they are with the money you're giving them. But the bigger issue is this, a lot of people up there on the council have talked time and again about all these important priorities that they want to spend money on. One in particular, housing and homelessness. These are consistently the most important issues among Sacramento residents anytime they're asked. They're something that we do not spend enough money on currently, and they're something that we need to be spending more money on, and that many of you agree with that we need to spend more money on. But if you are not willing to make significant cuts to the police budget, you are not serious about improving our housing and homelessness policies. You will not be able to fund affordable housing, you will not be able to fund programs for the homeless if you do not cut the police budget. So if you are serious about doing any of those other things, you need to get serious about slashing police budgets and slashing them big. And finally, I'd just like to conclude by saying that I think tonight, when that... And finally, I'd just like to conclude by saying that I think tonight, when that Nazi was speaking his gross racist trash earlier, we saw a really excellent example of how decorum is a tool of white supremacy, because not only was he not kicked out of the meeting, he was given 30 extra seconds because he was being booed by people in the audience. That's fucking disgusting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Courtney.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm here to urge you to reject the proposed budget for the Sacramento Police Department and cut the police budget by 50 million in order to invest in a budget that reflects the values, voices, and priorities of all city residents, especially our most under-invested neighbors. We need to prioritize care of people and fund housing, mental health, and climate change. SACPD's budget takes up 37% of the city's general fund, and we have not seen public safety improve. In fact, SACPD has cost the city millions of dollars in police misconduct settlements. SACPD continues to show a long pattern of discourtesy and racial bias in every outcome of its practices and procedures. There have been three separate studies over the last 20 years reflecting this. For example, the use of force against black people is over four times as often as white people, which was twice the national average in some years. And at least $30 million in overtime costs has exceeded the budget every year since 2019. I urge you to consider to divest up to $50 million from law enforcement to reinvest in the following budget priorities. Housing as a human right, reimagining public safety, which, you know, includes mental health crisis response programs, 24-hour resource centers, restoring and reinvesting in public services like libraries, job training, workforce development programs, and food banks, and just more transparency and accountability overall, including appointing the Sacramento Police Review Commission as a civilian-led oversight authority and making sure that there's more accountability in the city budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have three more speakers. The next is Jennifer Holden.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Jennifer Holden. I'm a resident of B5. And I, I'm kind of of two minds on the budget, so I'm, for the SACPD, it has a lot of good elements in it that I am, you know, I think need to be reinforced. The high cost does bother me. The getting data from the system and how it's changed due to federal systems and expectations in the last year, that also worries me as well. On the other hand, I live in a neighborhood that is only 20% white. That makes us a black and brown neighborhood. We make a lot of calls for service from a variety of city agencies, because we have, we, we need people to come and help us out. I have found SACPD and its officers to be responsive, considerate, professional. And if my neighbors complain about anything, it's that they're, they don't, there aren't enough of them to show up, and response times can be slow. So in general, we are, you know, reliant on the services that they provide. I find it a little offensive when we talk about homelessness like it is a crime and homeless people are criminals. I think we've got enough housed criminals that we need help with to justify keeping SACPD staffed at current levels. And actually, I'd like to see it staffed at a higher level than it is right now. We're, we're staffed at the very low ratio for the size of our city. So I'm glad staffing's staying the same. I would love to see more traffic patrol in order to help with sideshows. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Molly Chabnikow.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Dr. Molly Chabnikow. I have a PhD in urban planning, and I'm also a survivor of a violent crime. And I share this because it's provided me a unique lens to understand public safety and truly what that means. So I'm here today to stand in solidarity with the recommendations of the People's Budget of Sacramento to reject this police budget as it is, as is a status quo budget to continue to prioritize law enforcement over basic human needs. We need to invest into systems of care. For 37% of the SAC budget to be allocated to the SACPD is a travesty. We need to reimagine public safety. And this looks like divesting from law enforcement and showing our commitment towards keep the people and towards systems of care and away from punishment and away from systemic violence and systemic racism. If you truly care about safety, then the budget needs to reflect this by investing into housing, into healthcare, including community-based mental health care, into food security, and into education. You need to reject this budget and instead reduce it by 50 million and take this money and invest it directly into the communities that need it the most. We need to dismantle systemic racism and invest into community-led prevention, into care services, and opportunities for inclusive economic development. This is the kind of action we need from you, our Sacramento City Council. We need you to reject this budget as the first step. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mike Snell is our final speaker on this item.
Dave, the best of laughs. I love it. Greetings, Council. Greetings, Mayor. It's one of those nights, I'm feeling, I'm feeling emotions, but hey, it's okay. This much engagement highlights what areas are most significant to these communities, right? Shout out to Keon for dropping numbers. I hope we go back and revise those numbers just to, you know, make sure they're accurate, but I'm sure he's not off. And just touching on, on those numbers, again, we're, we're going to ramp up the budget and, you know, enforcement on sideshows, which I know we have, you know, town halls and other things coming up to, to speak on, you know, outlets for the sideshows that can be more beneficial than just cracking down and not giving the outlet for these people that are in the auto, auto world. So I hope we do find a solution and make it attractive. Why not? Let's make it attractive. Let's not just make it something that's not even appealing, like otherwise, you're not really creating a solution there. And you know, my, my thing with law enforcement is, it's just, you know, granted, they get this training, right? But who was that person before they got behind that badge? And do we expect just these hours of training to, to change that, who that was? So I mean, if they come from, if they, if they favor environments that is, you know, complete opposite of what they're patrolling, to me, that's just a recipe for disaster. And we're not, and that's, that, that shows how are we recruiting and why are we not attractive to the communities where we can find recruits to patrol the same areas and communities that they're from? So then, you know, there, we don't have those uncomfortable engagements. And people aren't, you know, being more assertive or aggressive than EV just because they're uncomfortable. And then, just like today, this whole day, everybody's just passing on pain. Everybody's just passing on pain. We need to find solutions, man, where it's beneficial, so it, it works for everyone, because that's why we're having these issues. We need more, more, more assistance.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, thank you. Thank you to the members of the public for weighing in tonight. Let me turn it over to the City Council, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everybody who called in, and thank you, Chief Lester and your team for that presentation. We've been on quite a journey since the last budget with data and spreadsheets and more information. I do have a couple of quick questions for you, if that's okay. First, I just want to say that there's a lot of information that was verbally delivered tonight, and I'm a much more visual person, so I hope maybe next time we can put more on the slides. But in the interim, would it be possible to get the scripts that were read tonight sent to us, just so save me some time to have to go back in the videos and listen? I would really appreciate that. So the reorg that you're proposing here, I just want to make sure I'm super clear. The seven full-time CSO positions that you're eliminating to create the student positions, is that a revenue-neutral change? Or I see, I saw like a 9,000 number in parentheses, so we're saving a little bit of money, but mostly it's neutral.
Correct. It's revenue-neutral, and I can have Brenda speak to the specifics. Brenda's nodding, yeah. Because it's a flex position, we have ones and twos, and so it's your academy time, and then we move you into a two-position.
Okay. I just wanted to make super sure that I was reading that correctly, because you see 11 FTE, everybody, it's like, oh, and then it's like, oh, no, it's just, that's the halftime positions. So the four metro officers that I think from your presentation are cannabis positions.
Cannabis positions, yes.
And then the auto theft position that got eliminated, it says, it's about $1 million between the two. I know the hospital positions and the other positions are contracts, and so we're not getting that money. Where did the money go, though, for the auto theft and the cannabis positions? Is that just other?
Two separate things, and my team will correct me if I, if I don't give the right answer here. So the auto theft was grant-funded, but it's a vacancy that we haven't filled. So we don't get the money if we don't fill it, but we don't have the staff to fill it. So we're forfeiting that position because we're not going to fill it. Same with the ABC, which was the other grant position. The cannabis positions have been historically funded through the city of Sacramento, and we started a number of years ago with a much bigger team. But really, I have to give a shout to the city attorney's office and how admin penalties are handled and that we're seeing greater compliance. And so when we had to make cuts, we're taking those officers really off of those positions. The funding is still there, so we'll continue to do some of the work, but we're freeing up the positions to do that.
Okay, so the funding is just going to go towards?
Well, it's the city's funding, so.
So it's not under PD funding, so it's under the cannabis program?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then there was a part in the presentation, and I'm sorry, I can't remember who said it, where it was mentioned that recruitment or training is paid for by labor savings?
Brenda, did you want to speak to that? Because we're not budgeted for that portion of it, and that was Brenda's.
And part of why I'm asking that question, because you know that I've been asking a lot of questions about where labor savings go. And when I got the chart from you all, it didn't have any line items for budget training, and so I'm trying to figure out, like, make sure I understand where that.
Sure, and I can tell you that labor is over 90% of our budget. So Brenda?
So we have, we use what's called non-budgeted positions, so we'll add the police recruit positions, but they're non-budgeted. So it, they don't show up in our budget, and so we do use the, if we have a police officer vacancy, I mean, we'll hire into a recruit position, and we use the savings to pay for that.
Okay, so on the chart, it would just show up as salary? It wouldn't show up as a vacancy? That's why I'm not seeing the line item there?
It, line item where? Sorry.
Oh, on the chart you all sent me with the savings information? Because I remember I asked for where the budget goes for positions that are budgeted but aren't vacant. I was asking where that money went, and you all sent me this nice chart, but I didn't see anything on there about.
Yeah, I believe it's going to show as, because I got to see the chart too. It is just a labor cost, so it showed in the straight labor costs is where those, and/or if you're using, if they're using any type of overtime, it'll show as an OT cost.
Okay, okay, so it's just not separated?
The one from January?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Those were, I think, for my technical request, I have some requests, some data requests, though, because I guess, I think, you know, when I get back to the conversation we had at the 2:00 PM meeting about what our goal is, I think we'd all agree that the goal is reduce crimes per capita, right? So obviously, since the 2019-2020 budget, our crimes per capita in the chart that's in our budget has changed, has changed quite a bit. You know, when you look at the 2019-2020 data, we're just under 40 per 1,000 people, and when you look at this year's data, it's estimated to be 47. And so it seems like we're trending in an off direction. But I've also noticed that the charts below that, on page 18, haven't been updated for the last two budgets, that the data that shows what other cities are doing and where their rates are. So I went and looked, I couldn't find all the data, and I'd actually love to get that updated data at some point, because I was kind of searching for it. And I see city of San Diego, for instance, has a rate that's half ours per 1,000 people. And so I'm trying to figure out where we stand compared to other.
It's the NiBRS transition, and I'll have Natalie.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's the NiBRS transition. So we have that footnoted at the bottom of those tables, but I think you guys probably heard last fall that we made a big announcement that we transitioned from, to the new FBI NiBRS system. And that's what we use as FBI UCR data in those tables. But because we didn't transition until last year, FBI wasn't, doesn't aggregate or collect the data that we were providing under the old methodologies. So now that we are online with NiBRS, by next year, we'll be able to get updated tables, and it'll be a more, yeah, accurate comparison, contemporary comparison for you.
Okay, that would be fantastic, because I think, like, when you think about evidence practices, and I see a city that has less officers per capita than we do actually, and like half of the rate per capita that we do, I'm like, okay, I want to understand what's different there, you know? Like what programs they might have, what other services they might have, like, how do we analyze what's working maybe better in other cities so that we can steal their ideas, for lack of a better word, to see how we could do that here?
And that's across the board. When we ran just state law enforcement agencies for California, I think there were only 10 or 15 that actually had NiBRS data for the last calendar year. So it's, it's a statewide effort, and we're all, you know, working towards meeting that requirement.
Okay, that's awesome. Yeah, and I mean, you're probably catching on the trend here that I'm like, I'm a very data person. I like looking at evidence, I like looking at data. And so I really want to thank the Public Health Advocates Team for doing this report today, and I'm sure that folks are going to want to see this, so I hope they'll post it somewhere on their website. But I also want to, I want to appreciate them for noting the limitations in the data that they were able to analyze. It's kind of like, here's the numbers we think are happening, but we're really not sure if these are the actual numbers, because we need better data. And there's this list of data that they attached here, and I would really love to hear from the city manager in chief about getting them that data. I mean, I know, obviously, what's the phrase that they use? De-identified data, so that maybe we could have an outside independent institution, if they have the funding. It feels like it's a great opportunity for us to get that perspective on, like, what's going on with our calls and how we could better invest to address them.
Yeah, as you know, I'm a big data person, too, and that's why we had about 16 different federally funded assessments and crime analysis was one of the, like, the top one, because that's all of our data crunching, as well as the request for the administrative assistant to provide more demographic data, use-of-force data, all the things that we do want to produce. So I absolutely agree.
Yeah, so do we think we can work with this, this team to get them the data so that they can help us do some more analysis?
Well, so I'm going to talk with the chief about what this looks like, because if we're going to go forth and have like a consulting group come in and take a look at our data, I think it warrants a conversation about what that looks like.
Yeah. Yeah, and obviously, I mean, like, I know there's best practices and research institutions for how to do this.
Absolutely.
And like de-identifying the data, you know, IMUs, whatever that looks like to make sure that, like, we're obviously not disclosing, like, personal information that would be really harmful to people. So I would love to see us explore this, because it feels like it's an opportunity and an important conversation. And I know we've been talking about call data for a while, but like, that whole idea of what are they responding to? And like, I don't want a law enforcement officer to have to handle someone who's in the middle of the street in a mental health crisis, because that's not what they're trained for, you know? And, and so I could hear from my constituents all the time that are like, well, I don't really want to call 911, because this doesn't feel like a 911-type call. I don't want law enforcement to come, but like, who else do I call? And it feels like knowing how frequently that happens will help us think about what we do.
So, so maybe you can clarify the ask. What's, what is the request?
The request is for this list of data that they've attached to this, I think you got a copy as well.
I did get a copy, but what is it that, what is it that you're trying to get to? What, what information are you trying to get to, other than?
A more nuanced call analysis of what calls that we're getting and responding to, so we can understand, you know, what, what's happening in the field?
We can respond to that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. That would be great. So, and I'd love to hear from my colleagues if they're interested in that as well. So I'm really happy to see the $1 million for violence prevention. I think the advocates who were here tonight really spoke to the lives they have saved. And I want to echo my thanks to Councilmember Jennings, who I know before I was on this council was holding a flame and really pushing for that funding for those groups, because I know he understands from his work how important that is. And I do think they've saved hundreds of lives. I think every dollar we give them comes back like 10 times because of the impact they're having in the community. I would love to see that funding expanded, and I would love to see the echo for long-term. And I know we're changing them to a MIOP, so it can be multi-year, and I know the chief, you and I talked about trying to make it more multi-year, but $1 million just doesn't feel like enough, so I guess it's more of an editorial comment from my side of, like, I would love to think about what expanding that looks like, because I think, as we heard, we've unfortunately had more incidents just in recent days, and it would make a lot of sense to me if we were really funding it at the scale at which they felt like they could handle and they felt like the need existed in the community. And so I'd love to try to figure that out. And so I was trying to figure out, like, well, gosh, where would that money come from? So we have, as was stated, 101 vacancies in the department right now. And like, my information from hearing and seeing all the different budgets, that's like about $200,000 a position, which is probably pretty rough and not accurate, but like, you know, I'm just going to use that for the sake. know, I'm just gonna use that for the sake. So like, if we assume that that was the sake, then we'd assume that 101 positions is about $20 million of budgeted positions that are currently not filled. And maybe that's wrong. I know last year it was $17 million from vacant positions that weren't filled. Obviously now that number might have been higher, because if we were filling some of those positions with other things, then I'm not sure. But that sounds like maybe the ballpark of 101 positions, what that would add up to be?
I think officers are probably about, I think they're like 140-something thousand.
Okay.
And professional staff positions are obviously at less.
Okay. So these are sworn vacancies though, right? 101?
101, yes.
So that would be officers.
Officers.
Okay, awesome. So I know that we're, we have folks in the academy and I heard those numbers loud and clear in terms of how many people were coming in. But I also know that we lose officers every year as well. And so like, what I'm seeing, when I've been talking to the Police Officer Association over these last few years, like, it seems like the vacancy numbers aren't going down. They're really going up every year. It's like, it was 92, 1.95, and now we're hearing 101. So I guess I'm curious, is it realistic to expect that we would fill 100 positions this year? And if it's not realistic to expect that we'd fill the 100 positions this year, is it reasonable, given the constraints on our budget, to budget for 100 positions that we're not likely to fill?
Probably not. I mean, my opinion would be that we still have the work there, so we don't have the positions, right? We don't have the people in the positions, but the work still has to get done. And so that's the challenge, because it creates a number of issues. One, we're paying, you know, overtime when we could pay straight time. Two, it's an extreme burden on our officers. And I know that the union has talked extensively, but when you talk about wellness and you talk about longevity and you talk about retention of your talent in our agency, that's a problem for us. Because, I mean, people leave the agency and we pull them, a lot of what they say it's the pace. So think about, you know, like our Saturday, think about our comm center, you know, where we had a lot of challenges with that. And unfortunately, as you create more vacancies, you can, you have more problems. That was one of the big reasons behind trying to reorg and try and put more people back into patrol to balance that workload, to minimize that. So yes, we have the vacancies, but unfortunately, that work still has to be done. You know, we're barely meeting minimum staffing and certainly not giving the level of service that I believe that we should provide.
No, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the efforts you're making to try to reorg to address the need. But this gets back to the call data question. Because if officers on the street are responding to a bunch of calls that they don't need to be responding to, if we could be paying other people to take those calls and reducing the amount of calls they need to respond to, does that create the balance that we're looking for here? And that's sort of, and that's not really a question so much for you, chief. It's really more just a comment for the council. Like, there is a question here of like, you know, we hire, you know, we hire 10 mental health professionals for the cost of eight officers and they're out there responding to other calls. Now it's not getting to a crisis point, hopefully, because there's other people responding earlier before a crime is committed, hopefully. And now that's the reduced hours down the line for filling out the report and booking someone in the jail and doing all the things that I know are also sucking up officer time. And you and I talked a lot about overtime on our last call and how much time just alone that they're spending waiting at the county jail, right? And that's a huge issue and that's a whole separate bundle of sticks entirely. But it's like, it feels like if we could reduce the amount of time that officers are ending up having to book somebody at the jail, then the ripple effects downstream by having somebody else potentially respond to some of these calls that they're not needed at, could potentially, and I guess that's more of the conversation for the council. And I'm not expecting us obviously to settle this tonight, because it's like, it's a question. It's like, well, yes, you're using that money right now for overtime. That's clearly shown in the charts. And I know the auditor is gonna be looking at some of the practices and decisions and how do we determine what appropriate staffing is on any shift? Those are real questions that I'd love to keep talking about. But it's a question that I want to ask, because I think, I was also bothered when I heard, I know one of the public commenters noted that the Department of Community Response budget's gone down by about $8 million. And that does bother me. Not because I see the two budgets as related per se, but because when I hear from my constituents and even from officers and from businesses, like, the absolute number one thing they're telling me is like, oh my gosh, do something about this crisis. And so it's like, you know, we're reducing money over here and we're adding, it's just...
I'm gonna interrupt you here for a second, because I don't think that's correct. I'm not sure where those numbers come from.
From the city budget document?
But we've not reduced their budget.
Okay.
So, Laney, do you want, do we have anybody from budget that can respond to DCR?
It's in the MYOP line item, so it's not general fund reductions, it's in MYOP reductions. And so I'm not sure where those came from, because they're not.
But to your point though, it is gonna be about alternative response. This is what I've been talking to the council about, that we have to get back to the reason the Department of Community Response was created. And we got sidetracked here with homeless response. And we're working with the county to kind of realign those services so that the county can take care of the mental health piece and we could take care of the alternative response. But be real clear, it will not happen this budget go around.
Of course.
And so.
And I mean, I'm not, I don't think anything I'm talking, like, some of what I'm talking about, I don't think will happen tomorrow, right? Like, I'm not unrealistic that like, when we're talking about shifting a system.
Correct.
That there has to be an on-ramp and off-ramp, right? Like, that there's a process to say, okay, we're not gonna say tomorrow, now there's 100 people moving in a different way. I'm just saying like, for me, that logic behind like, well, if the calls, and that's why for me, I'm so interested in this call analysis, because maybe it's 10% of the calls that are mental health related and we're like, all right, it's really not that much. But like, what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing and hearing from businesses and hearing from residents is that I think it'll be a lot higher. And I think when I talk to officers in my district, they say, yeah, it's a lot of our calls, it's homelessness and substance abuse and things happening from people who are in crisis. So it does lend the question of, you know, at what point do we stop replicating the cycle expecting a different result?
I think that's fair. I think that's fair. But we also are gonna have a conversation with, as part of the priority setting, because we can't just send somebody in DCR to a potentially dangerous call.
Of course.
They have to be accompanied by a police officer.
Of course, and I mean, I know.
And probably for the foreseeable future, until we can figure out what that call looks like.
Well, and I just want to say that like, I wasn't really looking for a debate with you right now, Howard.
I mean, I just want to set the record straight, because you're saying some things here that I want to make real clear and transparent. We're not talking about this budget cycle to shift DCR.
Well, I think that's a decision of the council in the end.
Well, I think practically, it can't happen.
Yeah. I think, I think this is a good, actually a really important discussion. And please finish your point. Please finish your point.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I mean, I guess I have a couple additional requests for, to have a presentation on the Department of Community Response budget, maybe when we talk about the partnership agreement and the other criteria, because it's not agendized right now and I'd love to just hear more about some of the changes that are being made. Maybe it's grants that are expiring, I don't know. It doesn't really explain it in the, it just says MYOP and then there's a reduction. And I'd love to just understand where that reduction is coming from.
That is what you and I talked about, we're shifting that feedback from the 23rd to the 30th. And so that's gonna come back as part of the whole Measure O.
Oh, so the Department of Community Response is included in that with their budget?
Yeah, well, sort of. Because we're gonna have to talk about what that looks like going forward in terms of the response we're gonna have in conjunction with the county, Measure O, and the partnership agreement. So it's all intertwined.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't want to, it's not my intent to be argumentative as well, but I just want to be real clear about where, you know, the struggles, the challenges are for us at times. It's been really hard to hear the, the public comments and the comments from some on the council about our police department, because we could always do better. We could absolutely do better. But it's act, it's not fair, because we have our.
Can't shut out. You cannot shut out, you cannot shut out. Stop.
Because the very people on this dais here have called me and asked for help with the police department. And so I would just like some balance here. So it's not so one-sided.
There is.
So.
Please read out. Last time, last time.
So I'll make clear that I completely have balance. And I know what you're saying, which is that like, I had a crisis last year where I had a violent situation happening and I needed the police to help me with somebody. I mean, I'm not.
I don't want to bring that up, because that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking in general, every single day, I get calls, text messages about help with the police department. And we're constantly responding to those, but I just, I just don't think it's fair that we're not having those conversations publicly and transparently, as opposed to behind the scenes, calling me.
Well, and those texts and calls aren't coming from me, so I can't really answer those.
From your office as well.
Okay, for constituent and groups.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So I guess I just, I didn't intend for this back and forth to be happening right now. I guess I'm just trying to say that nobody is not saying that emergency response is necessary, period. Nobody says that. And I mean, I know that the officers, and I talk a lot to the captain in my central city area and we do a lot of work, and I understand and appreciate an essential function for emergency response. Crimes committed, things happen, we need that. All I'm saying is that I actually don't think it's fair that we're holding police accountable for outcome data that they cannot control. And so when we talk about crime, we always look at the police department and say, why is the crime going, changing? Why did this happen? Why did that happen? When sometimes it's something that they do not have the resources or skillset to address. You know, when I get a business owner that's screaming at me, it's usually not that, gee, the police didn't come. It's like, why did this happen again? And I know they scream at the officers too. And that's not fair, because we don't have the full toolset available. All we're using is one of the tools largely. And then they're being held accountable for this outcome and they're trying to solve problems that they're not equipped to solve, because that's not what they do. And so that's what I'm saying, is like, for me, looking at the 911 call data and what PD is responding to is super important. Because if they're responding to calls that is outside of their area, then we should be resourcing or figuring out a strategy for those calls.
I agree. I think over time, we do need to shift some of those calls to alternative response. My point is just that it's not gonna happen overnight and probably not with this budget cycle.
I don't think anyone, anyone expects that.
Nobody's expecting that, so thank you, Mayor.
But it's whether or not we can attain the data that allows us to move in that direction faster than not. That's all that's being discussed.
So thank you, Mayor. Those were the, for my comments, I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilmember Maple.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I just have a, I know I emailed you earlier about this, but I wanted to just ask a couple questions regarding ShotSpotter to start. I have a couple of questions, a few comments, and then maybe a little direction at the end. So one of the things that I read as I went through the ShotSpotter data from 2019 until today, or it was until May of 2022, and then I think you gave me the rest of it, is, you know, if we look at outcomes, right, based on what, to me that means arrests and firearms actually confiscated or materials. You know, what I'm seeing based on this chart that you sent is that in 2021, you know, that resulted in basically 4.2% in arrests and 5.7% in actual firearm seized. And the reason why I'm, you know, I'm kind of asking this is, you know, is this the best method to, you know, get guns off the streets or to actually address, you know, gun violence in the communities, in one of which I represent in Oak Park? And I know there's been some controversy at a national level around ShotSpotter as an organization and whether or not, you know, the data's accurate, especially around, around false positives. So I just wanted to ask, do we collect that data? Like, if there are, you know, false positives, like, basically they're saying that there were shots fired and then there actually wasn't, or we didn't recover anything?
We have data, and I know I only, because it was kind of a last minute request, I was only able to get you the January through May of 2022 data. So Deputy Chief Olivera is following up on the full data. So if I could, maybe we could do it as a supplemental request and I could provide a longer-term report about the effectiveness for a conversation. I can tell you, one of the biggest challenges that we have is the community calling in. And you'll see from the ShotSpotter data, that in a lot of cases, there is not a call for service entered. Nobody calls in on these shots being fired. And we've got teams that are able to follow up and do some effective work on it. But it, as far as the measure of that effectiveness, certainly a conversation we could have. I'd just like to have the data in front of me before we do it.
And is that the, it was mentioned in an earlier presentation that there's 12 ShotSpotter officers, are those people who are responding?
Yes, there's 12 shot, well, I'm not, they respond, but then it's also a patrol function, because they're not on 24/7. So it's handled by both patrol and also by ShotSpotter dedicated officers.
If I'm on patrol and I, you know, ShotSpotter notification comes in and I'm nearby, then I will go over there.
Yeah, it can kind of depend, but all officers have access to ShotSpotter data and patrol typically will handle those calls when ShotSpotter officers are not available.
Got it. Thank you. I would be really interested just in a more general conversation moving forward about whether or not ShotSpotter is a very effective tool. And maybe this conversation has been had before I got here, but I'd really love to revisit it if it has been, because based on the data that I'm seeing, it's not, if our outcomes that we're looking toward is getting guns off the street or arresting people that are shooting at other people or into the air, whatever it might be, that it doesn't seem to be really effective. But I'm also not a police officer. So I just would be interested in having that conversation and seeing whether this is a good use of our funds, especially as we have conversations about, you know, tight budgets and what comes next. And so, thank you for that. And then, the other question I had was also something that I, you know, brought up to you earlier, which is around our total spend for kind of that violence prevention, including investment into, you know, families and youth and diversion. And I know that that's the Measure U funding. Is, are there any other, you know, pots of funding in the budget besides the Measure U funds that go towards any of those types of activities?
Well, we do have the Police Foundation. We also talked about the asset forfeiture money that supports a number of our programs. Then we have the whole Community Advancement Unit. And they do obviously a ton of community outreach, especially with youth. And we also have our school programs that are in a TOMAS SRO program. So we can pull that data certainly and give you costing on it. But I would like to say that it's an expectation of all of our officers. And so if your program, if your program code, if, you know, how you record your time is that I'm a North Area Patrol Officer, you may do things with youth, but it's not captured in how we can report it. So I'm just hesitant to make sure that, you know, we're aware that because of how we report, how our budgeting system works, it's sometimes hard to put like, really the quantitative amount on that. And so we can certainly provide you like, the bigger numbers, the bigger programs, but just know that that work is, it goes on throughout the department at every level.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I know, you know, I'm also a numbers person. And I, for me, I'm like, I want to be able to see, you know, how much money are we spending? What is the line item for this program? And, you know, how are we able to actually measure the efficacy of these programs and, you know, whether or not they're working in the community, if we can't even line item them out and know what we're spending? So I'm really interested in that, and just kind of that general sense in the budget moving forward, too, because I think it'll help all of us understand.
I could just, uh, every year, as part of, after the budget is approved, all departments are required to do, complete the POD, the Program Oriented Development, and that is published every year somewhere on the budget website. And that's, because we are a large department, it's not as easy, like, you know, you can't split up an officer's time. We kind of do it by depth ID, it's a cost center. And so, I can't, we can't go through and say, oh, Officer, Officer Smith spends 20% of his time on youth, 20% on, you know, whatever, whatever, 20% on this, 20% on that. It, it just, I'd still be doing it. It'd never get done.
I understand that, and I'm, that's also true of every other department, you know, like, we're, we're not necessarily looking at every single employee in every department and wondering how much of their time they're spending specifically on, we're looking at, generally speaking, how much are we spending on youth programming in these different departments?
Part of the POD, part of it is, there is a youth component to it. So at least for the last fiscal year, it's already there. It's on the budget website, correct, Laney?
Awesome.
But to your point, metrics are really important, so like, for the Magnet School Academy, obviously, we track a lot of things like graduation rate, certainly with our community-based organizations, they're doing a ton of work with youth. I know Dr. Clavo is here as well, and we track that, track everything through SCOE, so we can have those metrics for, you know, see how effective we are being and whether programs are really working.
Awesome. Great, okay, those are my questions. I just have a few comments and then maybe, maybe a little direction. So, just generally speaking, I think that, you know, I, this has been said in, in the audience, it's been said by my colleagues before, that, you know, budgets are really a reflection of our priorities. And I represent a lot of the neighborhoods that suffer from high rates of gun violence and violent crime in general. I heard loud and clear on the campaign trail that our resident, residents only want to feel safe, and some of them called in, too. But it's also really vitally important to address the root causes of crime in our city. And that's something that, you know, I said over and over again on the campaign trail, is something I believe in my heart. We know that our federal research shows us that the economic conditions, including median income, our poverty levels, and job availability are some of the biggest factors affecting our crime rates. So to me, this means our level of investment in our neighborhoods and our residents. And so, you know, just kind of on the back of my napkin, which I'm not very good at math, so please, you know, people can correct me, but, you know, through our Measure U funds in the budget, it looks like we're allocating around 2% or less of our total budget towards, you know, these really specific line item, you know, violence prevention efforts, investments into youth and families, and our community-based organizations. And I actually wanted to call out a couple of people that I see in the audience. I see Barry Axios, Voices of Youth, over here, see Danielle Silva, Self-Awareness Recovery, and many others that are literally doing this work on the ground every single day. And they, they have said to us, you know, you know, for years now, that they need ongoing funding to be able to continue this work, because this is the work that's actually reducing violence. And I've seen it, I got to see the work that you're doing, and it's, it's important, but they can't continue on without, without that. And so, you know, this is no knock on any individual, there's so many, you know, hardworking people in our police department that are, that show up every day. I recently went on ride-along because I wanted to make sure that I knew what it was, I do that with all of our departments. But the reality is that our budget has increased significantly year over year over year. And then our city continues to struggle, struggle with violence. And so, you know, we spend this incredible amount of money, and, you know, the reality is, is that we respond it, we spend it responding to crime, which is the job, that's the job that you do, and you do it well. But what I'm thinking of in my mind is, what if we invested, invested more in actual prevention? And, you know, considering the vacancies that exist over time, and whether, it's, it's already been said that we may not be able to even fill those over the next year, is what if we did something different? And so, you know, I believe that we're only going to really start to see that change when our budget is aligned with the root causes of poverty and our housing crisis. And I just want to acknowledge that we are doing those investments in other departments. Like, I'm not saying that we're not doing it in PD, I'm not saying that we're not doing it in all of our other departments, so many of our staff throughout the city are, are doing this hard work. But I'm very interested in having a more global conversation with our colleagues about what does this look like? If we, you know, like, take this moment, right? We know we've got all these vacancies, we know they've happened persistent over time, and that, you know, we may not be able to fill them in the near, near term, what would it look like if we did something different? And so, those are just my, my overarching comments, and that, you know, I would definitely support, you know, a greater proportion of this budget being put towards violence prevention in general. I know we have the Office of Violence Prevention, seeing what that looked like, and especially in our under-resourced communities and with youth violence diversion. So with that, I'll just pause and say, say thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor. I should be quicker at hitting my button, because I feel like Councilwoman Maple and Valenzuela touched some of my points, but I think I'll reiterate some of it and then also seek some clarity on some few items. First, I do, it is 10:15, 10:16 PM. So first, I do want to thank everyone who called in, whether you support or oppose or propose police budget tonight. I want to share with all of you that your voices absolutely does matter, and I really want to say thank you for staying with us this late at night. And then secondly, you know, I want to thank Chief Lester and our entire city staff, just for your presentation as well. And I just want to say thank you to our officers for your service in the community. You know, public safety and keeping our community safe, keeping our neighborhood safe is one of all of our top priority here in the city of Sacramento. And it's so important to ensure that we invest these dollars efficiently to prevent crimes, to improve emergency response time, and really ensure that our, our neighborhoods are safe. But with that said, though, it is also really important that we also invest in strategies that actually work. And I say that with, I say that saying also that I understand the importance of our emergency response, that is absolutely important, but it does take a comprehensive approach. I do see efforts happening in PD. I want to just give a shout out to Dr. Clavo and all our CBOs, Mervin, Freddie in the audience, and Barry as well, just thank you so much for directly working with our youth day in, day out, and being on the street to really prevent the crime before it happens. Dr. Clavo, I really appreciate your leadership and your energy to really ensure that there's synergy, synergy across the entire city, so thank you for that. But as I've shared, and you've heard from two of my former colleagues, is that it's really important that we have a comprehensive approach. We've heard it over and over from communities that have called in, in public meetings, in a one-on-one, at events. And so, I'm, I'm just going to keep saying this again, I said this during our 2:00 PM meeting, I said this during budget audit, but I want to remind folks that this council did pass a resolution again to redefine public safety, to move beyond traditional services. And so, that means, you know, we've already defined and broadened the delivery of public services, of public safety services, to include not only police, but ensuring that we offer prevent, prevention services with our city departments, but in particular, working with our CBOs. And we know that, because when you think about the pandemic, it's not a coincidence, coincidence that we allocated a lot of those dollars to CBOs, because we know that as city jurisdiction, we weren't able to do the work, just like RealTalk. And so, it was so important to make sure that we allocated those dollars to community-based organization on the ground, working with communities closest to the pain. There's a reason why we did that, because we couldn't do that work as a city. Even if our staff was hustling and they were doing their very best, we have blind spot as a city, and so that's why those community partnerships are so important. With that, though, I do have a question around the percentage in our, in the budget in particular. With summer coming up, we heard it from the community, from speakers tonight, we know that sermon time is a really active time for our young people, and if we don't have programs, our impactful programs that can keep them safe, we know that crime will most likely go up. And so I just wanted to know, based on the budget, I know there was so much that was shared with us today, but I was like, with the 200-plus million-dollar budget that we have with PD, what percentage of a budget is dedicated to, like, prevention program? Just, I just want that number.
I don't have that number, but I can work on getting a, a number, if we're talking about youth prevention, if we're talking about prevention overall, you know, and see, you know, what we can provide for that, certainly. And certainly, it's easy to see, like, the numbers when you look at the Measure U funding that goes to fund our CBOs, but even that's broken down, they've done a fantastic job, and we ask a lot of them, you know, whether it's prevention efforts, whether it's doing referrals, whether it's responding to critical incidents to help with our neighborhoods and our communities and families. So there's a lot of work that goes into that. So maybe we could break down all the different types of programming that we do, and then try and associate some type of cost to it.
Yeah, that would be great, Chief. I think a breakdown of just preventative programs, whether that's with the youth and families, just great for us to see that as well. And then, Councilwoman Valenzuela and Maple kind of touched upon, upon this, but, and I know that the mayor, when he, after you present, he also kind of was trying, trying to seek clarity, and so I just want to, I don't have clarity on it, so I'm just going to ask this again, so I, so that I have a better, better understanding of the 101 sworn vacancy. And so, given the 101 vacancy, and then the mayor asked about this, is that you're directing some of those dollars for patrol, how much funding is on that table with those vacancy? I know we were trying to do math, but just like, do we have a ballpark of, like, what that dollar amount for vacancy is?
I, I don't have the dollar amount, and if Brenda can, she, it was 134, yeah, I'm sorry, 140-ish thousand per officer?
About 45 per officer. However, we do have to pay, we do pay for our police recruits from that money, because we don't get funding for those. And so, I'd have to try to calc, I'd have to go back and calculate.
I would love that number, so minus that part that you just mentioned, but would love to know what that number is. So what's, what's the dollar amount on the table with the vacancy, minus some of that require, some of the, the program that you just mentioned that you need that funding for?
We also use some of that money to, to pay for the overtime, do you want us to take that into account?
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about that really quick, but I would love to see that breakdown of that vacancy number, just so that I have a, a good understanding of it as we go into June to adopt this budget. So, and I'm, and-
Councilmember, if I may, when we did this analysis, and when we did it for Councilmember Valenzuela in January, based on actuals, there are no dollars on the table, because the department has mandatory staffing requirements in order to have folks on the street who can respond to calls, and that's done through mandatory overtime. So they use the value of those vacancies to pay for academies, to pay for mandatory overtime, and to pay for other unfunded requirements, court time, there's a whole laundry list of things, and we can provide that analysis for you. So vacancies in the police department, like vacancies in the fire department, do not create funding that's available to be swept, because they are used in order to provide the staffing to address the workload that our community is demanding.
Okay.
Sorry, Laney, could I ask a quick clarifying question, because that's not how I remember the conversation that we had? Because I asked a little bit about how we determine overtime and staffing, and it was very much at the discretion of, like, the, the people in charge of the shift to say, I need more here or less here. I didn't, there was no mention of mandatory, could you provide any citation for that?
There's not, there's some discretion, but to be clear, we do have minimum staffing levels that, you know, and there can be discretion to go under, but certainly, you know, there are times, like, Saturday night was a perfect example, you know, when we are trying to manage competing public safety events and interests. We can't just say, hey, our staffing tonight is this, and so we'll see what happens. We need to staff those, we need to address them, we need to make sure that those multiple events are, you know, appropriately staffed. And we do mandatorily, you know, we held day shift for four hours, we brought people in, and that's the, kind of the nature of the business, you know? You know, if we had dozens of more officers, then that would certainly make that probably less costly as opposed to overtime, but it's not that that work goes away. And to Laney's point, it's not like there's a pot of money that, like, we can choose to use on overtime, or we can spend it on other things. And so I think that's kind of the challenge. We have an immense amount of work to do, a lot of asks, you know, from the city, and we have to, you know, really answer that call.
Mayor Protem has the floor here, please.
So, this is the, this is where I'm, I'm just trying to understand, so I could better articulate this to the community, because Chief Lester, I think I heard you earlier when you presented, that through the vacancies, you were able to increase patrol?
Not entirely. So what we're, just to be clear on it, so we have some vacancies, and what we're asking to do is, one, we're going to reduce some of our authorized staffing by eliminating the contractual positions. We need to come back to council, we need to eliminate those positions. We add them when we get grants, we take them away when we complete grants, so that's a portion of it. We are asking for an elimination of five sworn officers, but that will create two sergeants and a lieutenant. One of those sergeants will go to Internal Affairs, one of the sergeants will be assigned to the east area that we're splitting out for a number of reasons. And then lieutenant is one that we have really, we've pulled out of patrol to handle all of the events that we manage citywide, and to make sure that those are handled consistently. What that creates is a vacancy in patrol, where we need to put, you know, a sergeant and elevate that person to an acting position. So, we're not really, we're not creating additional positions.
You're just, you're like shifting.
Yeah, I guess that's me. By, we're not creating additional positions by creating vacancies. I have no idea what the squeak is. It's not me.
It's somebody else.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, I mean, if you could forward that, the, just the vacancy, how we've used that of last year budget, I think that would be good for me to have a better understanding how that vacancy was allocated. So, yeah, that's, that's one of my requests, and then-
And maybe we can, maybe not pull up the slide, but make sure the slide deck is available, that had that chart that showed you how the ins and outs of the vacancies?
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. I'll be sure I provide that.
And then Captain Green, I also want to say thank you for your presentation as well. I know most of the presentation was done verbally, but earlier, I know you shared the calls for service, and just would love a, a breakdown of that via email or PowerPoint or the script that Councilmember Valenzuela requested for that. I know you mentioned DV incident, property crime, sideshow was, which is a huge, a huge issue in my district in particular. I know this, and I want to speak on that, because, you know, it's been brought up several times, I know that this has been a citywide issue, especially on the south side, and we're going to have a town hall scheduled coming up to really discuss comprehensive solution to address the sideshow. And so I do also want to take this moment to thank Captain Monk, who is in the audience as well, really for his leadership in the south area and working closely with our staff. But just on sideshow, I also just want to share that increasing officer is only one tool, but it actually doesn't solve the root cause, again, even in discussion that I've had with community and PD, right, because it's actually really dangerous for our officers to be out there when the donuts are happening, and I don't want to put them at harm. So while people may say increasing officers is one way, it's, it is one tool, but it doesn't solve the root issue, so I just wanted to share that. It goes back, again, to the comprehensive strategy that needs to happen in order to address sideshows or other crimes happening in the city. And then, my comments at the end, my last comment, it's really, it's really for my colleague, it's for the public, but it's really for my colleagues, to really think about funding throughout our city. I just want to remind folks that earlier at 2:00 PM, we had our presentation from our Parks Department, and our YPSD Department's budget is 63 million. That's four times less than the police department. And I definitely heard from my colleagues up here, just the need to really hire more park rangers, right, to support our youth workforce and community programs. And while Dr. Clavo's office is now under PD, she does incredible work, and she should be receiving more funding in that, in that department to do this work as well, right? And so, what I do want to share is that this item tonight is a receive and file, it's not the final vote for the police budget, and so there is still time until we adopt the budget in June. And so what I want to share with my colleagues and also to the public is that, here's really our opportunity to really, really analyze the entire budget, but in particular, department budget that makes up a large percentage of our city. And I know that we, we can't move contractual things like jobs, whatnot, I'm not asking to move current officers, because I know that's tied to unit contracts. I think for me in particular, I'm simply asking if we can move the allocation of some of our vacancy to really address the root causes of violence, right? Investing in youth, workforce pipeline programs, and community programs that we've heard over and over again. And so, you know, I would urge my colleagues to think about this, even perhaps, I don't want to create more work for the city manager, but perhaps submit our own proposal and debate how we can use some of that vacancy that we know won't be filled. And so, you know, that's just really, you know, my comment to the councils, to my colleagues here. And then lastly, just to the mayor and, and our city manager, I just also want to echo the requests from Councilmember Valenzuela, that we also partner with public health advocates to analyze our data, because I, I just think we shouldn't shy away from this, right? Like, sunshine is our best friend, it's really about continuous improvement, especially if there is grant funding for this, so it wouldn't cost us anything. I'm always open to opening up our books. Obviously, the scope of work matters, right, being intentional about why we're doing it matters as well. But I do think it's a great opportunity to have another entity work closely with PD as well, right? Because we want to have continuous improvement, and that's important for our police department and just for our city overall. So that would be my request, too, as well, if we could team up with public health advocates on that. Thank you.
Okay, we got other members here, let's see if we can move through. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll try my best to be brief, brief. It is late, and we've had a good day, and I appreciate the presentation from you and your entire staff. I think if I have any feedback to give you, other than the fact that some of those slides, for us visual learners, we need to have them in our hand, but that's not my real feedback right now. My real feedback is, I don't know that we tell the story of what we do and how we do it, and the great work that takes place every single day. I don't know that we talk about 144 pods throughout the city with 14 pending, 564 students in criminal justice programs, the, the seizing of 1,400 firearms. And if any of my numbers are wrong, please tell me, because I was trying to write them down as fast as you said them. Officers responding to 233,000 calls, community buyback program, 32% reduction of shooting victims, 93 community intervention programs, public safety awareness grant that we got, and then the youth listening sessions. And I could go on and on and on and on and on, and I, I just don't think we tell the story, because it's not just the officers that are doing that work, it's, it's really a partnership, and I think it's a model that probably is one that could be shown in the state as a partnership that works with our Sacramento Police Department and our community-based organization in order to get to the preventive work and also deal with the crime that's already happening. And, and I mean, we do it as well as anybody. Dr. Clavo is, I mean, she's taken that program and taken it to a whole nother level, right? But I don't, I don't know that the world knows about it, I don't think we know about that. And if somehow or another, we could go on a ride-along and, and see the work that's being done, and Jerome said it earlier, right? He talked about it, you know, Merv talked about it, they're out on the street every single day doing this work, and they're seeing lives changed because of the community-based organizations. And the people in the community trust those who are in the community-based organizations, and when they in fact meet law enforcement, they start to trust them as well. And it changes the whole, whole, it changes the whole dynamic. And so, I, I just got to figure out how we can tell the story a lot better than we're doing it, because we said earlier, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I don't think we're broke. I think, I don't think it's a either/or, I think it's a and. We continue to work in partnership, and when I look up the word partnership, or when I look up the word collaboration, it tells me community partnerships, it tells me collaboration, partnerships, team effort, joint effort, working together, teamwork. I mean, it, it tells us everything that we want. I think that's why y'all call me coach, because I'm, I'm about focusing on together, everyone achieves more, and that's what we're doing. That's what, that's exact, we have a model here that I don't think a lot of people know about, and I don't know that we tell our story as well as we should, we just do the work, we just keep pounding the work and doing the work. And as our city has grown significantly since 2010, from 466,000 to 528,000, you're, you're not asking for a whole lot more today than what you got last year, and yet our city has grown. So, you know, I just want to be, I want to be an advocate that tells the story. I want to be a proud Sacramentoan that says, we have a police force that is working with us, and it's not only just them, but they're working with community leaders who are making a difference, and, and we're making a difference together. And so, I, you know, I just gotta, I gotta help to tell the story.
Thank you.
And I think we got to find a way. So if there's a video for next year, I want that video showing all of our community partners and us working together, and I want those kids talking about the impact that these programs have made in their lives, and how they've changed the direction that they're going because of their interaction with law, with law enforcement and/or with community agents. That's, that's the story we have to tell, because it's not being told. And so therefore, we're looking for something else, and we already got it. We've got it, right here in Sacramento. We've got a model that everybody else should be immolating. So I just say, hey, good job, keep doing what you're doing.
Council, who was next here, Councilmember? Who's get us, sorry, Chris, go ahead, Jerry.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. I, I have an opportunity to, to check this, to see this again through budget, so I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to keep it very direct here, and, and hopefully during budget, if we can, you know, dive in deeper here. First, I do support the splitting of the East Command, it's just, it's too large of a territory, whenever we need any kind of response time. I mean, we had the incident today of a hostile situation over at the childcare center, I mean, of the, of the child court, and that's, that's at the edge of the, that's at, at the edge of the, the city limits there, and in the industrial area. So first, and then second, you know, I want to bring up, you know, a, a major concern and then second, you know, I want to bring up, you know, a major concern that I have, because I have a lot of folks who not only live but work in my district here, but that's with the dispatchers. And at least it's my understanding that the dispatchers have to be in mandatory overtime, whenever there's a shortage. And we've had it, we've had a shortage of dispatchers, and because of the mandatory overtime, they're working longer hours, longer stress time, which some have decided to leave the profession because of that, creating even more mandatory overtime. I mean, is that still the case in this, in this scenario?
We really saw that. It wasn't just us, actually. It was nationwide, call centers and, you know, records professionals. Throughout, really, the pandemic, we saw a lot of agencies that saw significant reductions from people leaving that. And so I think we've addressed it fairly well. Adam, I don't know if you want to come up here and talk about the, kind of, the programs that we've initiated to help alleviate that, because the problem is it becomes a snowball effect, you know?
Yes.
You end up losing employees, forcing overtime. That causes more people to leave, and now there's more overtime, and you lose more. But we've done a few things, so I'll have Adam talk about it.
Yeah, what you're saying is absolutely true. The shortages in our comm center are resulting in mandatory overtime for our comm center staff, which, as you can imagine, is incredibly hard and taxing for our staff. And it, like you said, it's a self-perpetuating problem or a building problem, in that as people are more fatigued, we see more people who want to leave. As more people leave, we demand more of the people that stay, and they become more and more tired, and that cycle continues. Over the past, probably about three months now, I don't remember when we started, first did the open house, but we had some of our dispatch staff who came up with the idea internally to run a dispatch open house just a few months ago, that resulted in about, I believe, don't quote me on this, but I think about 30 people who completed applications. We have a number of people in the application process now as a result of that effort. It was heavily, we invited the media and tried to share it in every possible way. We used social media to advertise. We just did another similar, slightly smaller event just a couple weeks ago. We invited some of our Spanish-speaking media and really tailored it to try and attract some, some of our bilingual communities. And that has had some success too. It wasn't as large as our prior event. We didn't get this large of response, but we really are trying to do everything we can to improve staffing in our comm center, because, A, for public safety, it's critically important, and also for the well-being and mental health of our staff, it is also incredibly important.
So I guess, I want to, I want to dive deeper in that once we get to budget and audit, because I, that when, when, what I've had concerns from constituents is that they're calling, and they feel that they're either not getting through, or, and I don't know if that may have been in a peak situation or what, but, and then I heard it directly from some of the dispatchers a few months back about, you know, the concerns about just how much stress there is. I mean, if you can imagine being this tired tonight, and I've done the sit-along, you know, so I encourage anyone to do a sit-along and see what it's like in an evening. I'm concerned about that. And so to the city manager, I guess on this too, I mean, we're going through this whole process, but I want to make sure we're also not losing dispatchers to other jurisdictions as well as we're, as we're moving through this process. Because that'll add to the exacerbation, I think, of, you know, again, that self-fulfilling prophecy. The second piece that I, you know, I understand how you're shifting officers and to get more on patrol, and then splitting East Command so that we can have faster response time. But I'm still very concerned about our traffic safety, where we are. When I started on the council, we only had four traffic motor units. Now, I think we're up to nine for the entire city. And we have more and more speeders, people running red lights, the vehicle-to-bicycle fatalities are not acceptable. We're trying to do engineering on our streets to look, to make our roadway safer, but if we also don't have the enforcement side of that, we're not going to change the character. And, you know, this is May is Bike Month. We're trying to get people to ride their bikes, but they don't feel safe. So on that aspect of it, I want to know what we're really doing to address traffic safety. And then with that, you know, yes, we don't, we're never going to send one officer in a 500-vehicle sideshow, but we need to figure out a way to address that, because this is happening in residential communities. We have people, you know, spinning donuts, running into other parked cars, into people's, you know, property, into their yards. That, that's just unacceptable.
I agree.
Families are getting hurt. So on, on addressing that aspect, I want to know from the budget side, and again, if you don't have the answer today, I want a more thoughtful discussion when we get to budget and audit committee. But at least on this, on this motors, on this, on the motor unit, is it, are we not attracting the people, folks into that area, or is that...
I'm going to ask, you flagged a really appropriate issue, really important issue. If we are going to get to budget and audit committee for further discussion on the police budget, is that what's...
Yeah, then, then let's...
Why don't we have that discussion then?
Let's bring it there.
Instead of 2211 tonight?
I'll come back to it. Yep.
Perfect. I want to, I want to move there. And then lastly, I want to go back to this pipeline program, and I'm going to hit it again on the last piece. Just like I did with the fire department, I appreciate the work that's happening here with the cadets, with the academies at Hiram Johnson, for example, the Lex program. But there needs to be, I think, a better, cleaner pathway here on how all these things are linking together. If not, if this, if this is a siloed approach, because I do believe that we can address some of our vacancy challenges by creating stronger pathways from our kids here, folks who are going to our own high schools, and that see this as a very well-paid, you know, career that services their community, hiring from our own neighborhoods. I think we're going to have a better ability to, to keep folks in the long run. So I want to, I want to hear that from the city manager, a better path. This goes wide, my Office of Youth Development, to me, is concerning that it, that it get, it doesn't get lost. These things on workforce development have to work together. So again, it's late at night, so please come back and a thoughtful discussion on that point. Now to the voting aspect of what we have to vote on tonight, which is the asset forfeiture. Chief, I just want to hear publicly, I've always had an issue with asset forfeiture, because if it had, if it, if it results in a city using it to pay personnel and creating this almost perverse need to backfill, you know, staff, that, there's, there's bad history in other jurisdictions on this. So are we, or are we not funding full-time FTEs with this forfeiture?
We don't fund, actually, Natalie, you want to come up and she can give a list of what we do actually fund with it. We've got a description, but no, it doesn't, it's not, one, it can't supplant your operating budget, and it's not guaranteed funding source. Every year, it varies. Natalie?
And just to add to that, in the, in the state statutes, it's expressly prohibited, prohibited that any prosecutor's salary, any law enforcement officer's salary, anyone involved in this civil forfeiture process, absolutely prohibited that their salaries rely upon those revenues.
That's good, because the second largest allocation's for operation and investigation.
Yes.
And I get that they can be used for, say, for someone, when someone reports a crime, and if it leads to a, to, to an arrest, it's an award, a reward, or a way to encourage people to participate in getting information. Those can lead to rewards. So I wanted to make sure that's the case. The last question I have with this asset forfeiture is, when I looked at last year's, and I just pulled it up here, last year's budget that we voted on, it included all these great organizations that are here today, but it also included the City of Refuge, but I don't see it in this year's asset forfeiture. So is, am I missing something, or would they, is there not consideration? What's the, what, where's the, why are we not continuing that support for City of Refuge?
There's going to be an RFP to come out. We're working on an RFP so that all of our CBOs have a bite at the apple. So, and I, I think that was just an accidental omission, because, yeah, they've gotten considered, they've gotten funding, I think, two years running. So, yeah, they would be, I mean, they can apply to the RFP, and, yeah.
And that's part of why we're extending the RFP period.
Examples.
Yeah, those are, those aren't allocations or any, no, the decisions haven't been made yet. Those are just some of the groups that we've worked with in the past.
Perfect. Okay, great. So then, so to that point, you know, again, I wanted to highlight that, because I didn't see it in the staff report. We have to vote on this, we're voting on this tonight, and so I wanted to make sure that was clear, because that, that organization services, you know, you know, my area, the south area here. And while the other organizations are doing great work up in the north area, but this is, this is an area that, that I want to include that. With all these organizations that, when they get into the RFP that are funded through this forfeiture, again, I'm going to bring, like I said, bring this back to this pipeline issue. When we're talking to youth and some who are engaged in this, I just know from my experience from those who I grew up with, all of a sudden, they found out that they wanted to pursue, and I would have never thought they would have pursued, but they wanted to pursue a career in, in law enforcement, I want to make sure that we're using also those funds to bring and recruit our own local kids and encourage them to see how their, that the, the public service sector of it. So having had that, both of those answered, questions answered, I'll, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the item on our annual allocation for asset forfeiture, item number, I think it's 22 here, and with the direction that, as well, I want to, I want to see a better connected dots pipeline on the youth part.
Okay. Some of those motions are second.
Second by Councilmember Jennings. Let's hear from the remaining members. Councilmember
Talamontes.
It's Councilmember Lilly first.
Lowy, sorry.
Thank you, everyone. Chief, thank you so much for that presentation. And, you know, my gratitude to, to all the officers that really are committed to provide the safety that our city needs.
Thank you.
But with that said, I think one of the things that, and I completely agree with my colleague Councilmember Jennings, we have to be able to be more transparent and tell a full story to people, because I hear the frustration, and for very valid reasons at the same time. But the CBOs that we're working with out there, initially when I was campaigning, I was very kind of so-so on them, because the way I saw it was, Police Department, we need them to stop the crime. But the more I got working with, you know, Brother to Brother, or the Wellness Foundation, I realized that they do play a very important role.
They do.
Especially in communities that I represent, because born, raised, they know everybody. So it'd be great to increase that budget. I mean, I'm not talking about this one, maybe, but we have to think about that going forward. Regarding mental wellness, that is a big issue that we're dealing with right now. And I think we also have to be very transparent, that unless we have the facilities, it's very hard to really tackle this. And I'm hoping that this partnership that we have with the county, that we'd be able to fulfill that need as well in the communities, because that's well-needed. I mean, we had two years of shutdown. You know, we have individuals that are unhoused, that, you know, at least PTSD is guaranteed that's there. And it's not going to be an overnight fix. So I do agree with our city manager that if we start planning something now, that we hope that we have a five-year milestone and a 10-year milestone. But at the same time, the mental health variable, I don't think we can get it done without the help of the county.
Agreed.
So with, you know, those are the things that I wanted to hit. I, I know that, you know, on a night like this, you know, emotions are high, and we like to beat up on a particular department. But the fact remains that, you know, I represent a district that has the highest crime rate. And when I talk to my constituents, they're not talking about cutting back on police. They just want to make sure that they have the right police officers out there.
Right.
Going, going to those calls. In fact, ironically, you know, I have, you know, a great site in my district with some wonderful individuals that are residing there. They had incidences where they called me to say, can you call the police? Couple of weeks ago, they actually called the police directly, because there was an issue. So we know how important you guys are. But being also transparent and kind of share everything with everybody, I think that's very important. And utilizing the CBOs out there that are actually doing the work. I mean, that's a key thing also, I think, colleagues, that we have a lot of CBOs out there. But who's doing the work, and who's just submitting paperwork that they've done, that done the work? That's a big thing. And that's not, you know, that shouldn't fall on your shoulders. That's something that we need to really sit back and investigate. And, and actually, you know, have the CBOs then come and explain why is it that they're going to get $200,000 this year. I'm very grateful to Dr. Klavoe, because I've talked to her, and she runs a pretty tight ship. I mean, when she was telling me about how she goes through and picks the CBOs, I had to tell her, wow, you know, that's pretty stringent, you know, requirements that you're going through. So as, as my colleague stated, I think we have, we have a system here that we just need to make it more organic and develop it more. And it's not going to happen this year. It's not going to happen next year. That's why I think it's important. The one thing that this council can do is to have those milestones of five years, and let's pass, you know, the guidelines that we can reach that. DCR, I don't know if Nick is here or not. I mean, I'm grateful to that department. And Nick Golling, Mario, you're here, so please relay this message to you. He's a champ. I mean, this Saturday, we had an issue. I received a call. I sent him an email, and within minutes, he, you know, he sends me an email back going, hey, it's resolved, you know? So I think we have all the right components. It's kind of bringing them together. So residents that called in, residents that are here, that are frustrated, that they see that. It's not just the police. There's, there's a whole aspects of different organizations that we're trying to work together to make sure our city is safe. Crime is going up, because, I mean, look at some of our sister, you know, cities, San Francisco, they just called National Guards to come in and help them out, you know, Portland, same issues. It's changing. The environment is changing, right? When I can go online and order pieces of gun, and they would deliver it to my house, and I put them together, and I'm ready to go, it's, it's a wild west out there. And we need to acknowledge that, that, that's what's happening right now. So, but I am truly grateful to you and your department and all the officers that, you know, put on that uniform every day to, and come out to make sure that they protect our city and all the residents. So thank you so much for that presentation. And, you know, I'm definitely supportive of this budget, but we have to start thinking today for next year's budget and the following year, that yes, Dr. Klavoe does need more funding, so we can bring those CBOs to work with you, so hopefully we can lower the crime. As far as the sideshows, I think the caller had a, one of the last caller made a great point, that the sideshows, it seems like it's today's extreme sport that we had, you know, maybe 10 years ago. So maybe we can create a facility that, you know, they can go and do their thing, have a great time where it's safe, and they enjoy themselves. I mean, you know, Mayor Protam, I know you're working on that wonderful sports complex in your district. Maybe we can build a little, you know, sideshow arena for, for these cars in the same vicinity, so they can go there and pay $20 for every car that enters and has, has a great time. But I don't think that's something we can stop by just having more officers on the forward. Something that we got to think about. But again, I just want to thank you and the rest of the officers that are here tonight for the great work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if that, that's the case, that I would like to talk to you about that, or maybe we can get it out.
Okay. Councilmember Talamontes.
An elected official saying they're going to keep it short is probably the biggest lie I've ever...
Was that more than two minutes?
No, for all of us. And this applies to all of us, all the time. So I'm just putting it out there. No, 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 I agree. I agree, I agree, I agree. No, I agree. It applies to all of us. But, okay, two sentences, two sentences, real quick. One, I agree with my colleagues that we need more in long-term funding to make a bigger impact on prevention. So Dr. Klavoe's department and all the different organizations that she works with had an opportunity to go grant high school and witnessed it myself. So kudos, keep up the good work. And then my second one is, you know, our legislature passes a lot of bills all the time that impact our local government. So I, it may times unfunded. So I'd be curious to see what dollar amount is spent here at the city to make sure that we're in compliance with the state. And I think that's like a large portion of our budget, and a lot of the office work that goes behind that, which is all good work, but like, let's get that dollar amount.
Yeah, we've had to add some significant staff from existing staff to support those unfunded mandates, but even, you know, council thankfully has approved some positions solely to support that. So we can come back over the last few years and show how many positions go to support that work and what we need to do.
Okay, perfect. And then, like a lot of my colleagues said, let's just work on the overtime issue and how we can solve that. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to truly thank Coach, Councilmember Jennings. I think you summed up a lot of where I stand and what I believe in. So if you took notes on Coach's comments, me too.
You know, got it.
And, and then listening to several of my other colleagues trying to sum up, I think we're all really supportive of what Dr. Klavoe is doing. What I think we're missing is a little bit of, as she started, and this is a year in, where's the data? Because we need the transparency, because we know when data shows our community-based organizations work. And so in order to continue this, it is that balance and seeing that data. But I also want to hear us as a council saying is, we need to work on a long-range plan for funding. So I think we need to have come back a very strategic plan that looks at data, our community-based organizations, because then it starts getting to, while I wasn't on the council, the rest... organizations, because then it starts getting to, while I wasn't on the council, the resolution Mayor Protam, my bank talked about, of how do we balance out where it's not just a police approach, but a public safety, community health engagement approach? And that's the data transparency, because I think what our offices are doing is you are doing the work, but I think there's a balance, just as much as we've talked about, is you're not trained to handle some items, but I think we also need to look at it as it's not just a SAC PD long-range plan. I think it needs to encompass like the mental health, domestic violence, homelessness, Department of Community Response and our CBOs, because that together may address a lot of the things we're facing in the community. So we're not just hodgepodge picking from just some, but kind of a big hug in the, in looking at what's a long range that addresses a lot of the mental health, public safety, and where is all the funding and how do we address that? And in a quick shout out to our Deputy Chief, Norm Leong, thank you. I love hearing about the new drone program at Endercombe and the Public Safety Academy. So I love your innovation in that. I might be slightly biased, but thank you for your work and for the long night, but I want to hear coming back that long-range plan.
And if I could just address that, we, and thank you to Mayor and council for approving our pilot project. When we, you know, pitched this June of last year, you know, we've done a lot of work. Nicole's done a great job of leading our team. You know, we, our plan was, if the funding was available, to do an RFP. That's why we're asking for a short extension so that we can do that. And I figured at that point, I would be coming back in front of you and giving you a year's worth of data, talking about what worked, some changes that, you know, we could look at, you know, potentially making to see if it worked. And I think that it's showing, you know, an incredible amount of promise. And so I would like to come back at a future time when, you know, we issue that RFP and give you some more data.
Okay. City Manager, and then I'm going to close.
Very, very quickly, I'll be concise. So I hear what's been said here tonight, too, and so we're going to come back to budget and audit in response to that. I think Councilmember Valenzuela has said it best, there's this, there's going to be an off-ramp and an on-ramp over the next several years as we're looking at how we respond better to some of these calls for service work. We can carve out for DCR or some other combination of DCR and the county's team. And so that's absolutely what we're going to take a look at. Also heard very loud and clear about the prevention piece, and we'll see what we can do to kind of dial that in. And the last thing is that I want to remind this council that we're in the process of negotiations right now with all of our unions. And so if we do nothing else here, the cost for this department and all the other departments will go up next year, even if we did nothing different.
That's where the largest cost comes from, and we're all committed to investing in our employees. Final comments, it's a...
Hang in there.
So wait, first of all, I just want to say, look, we know that the budget presented is fundamentally solid. We've all agreed we're investing the surplus dollars into our employees, but coming out of this tonight, I'd like to find at least another million dollars for young people through Office of Violence Prevention or through one of the, one of the programs or projects here. Let's do it. Find another million bucks. We've got, you got, you know, a million plus out of YPSY, you got $3 million in this budget here. I'd like it, as much of it as possible, to be focused on summertime. Summertime. Intervention, alternatives for young people in the summer. Let's find a way out of this whole process, let's add another million bucks. That would be my request to come back and try to do that. Okay. Secondly, I want to thank the chief and the department because I do think you, there's some real credit there for showing an immense amount of creativity. You have reduced the number of positions, that's just a fact, but you're finding a way to take those savings, however they're accounted for, and also take those contracts that are not the highest and best use of our officers, and you're putting that into increased patrol. And that leads to my final comment here. What, I really appreciate the health advocates coming out here tonight. So some of you know this, some of you don't. I launched DCR as the mayor of the city in 2020 after George Floyd, okay? That was my initiative, some of my critics. Worked together with the city manager, then Police Chief Hahn, and we put this out here. And the intent is the same today as it was back in 2020. And in fact, when we really think about it and you try to bridge some of the philosophical divide that we hear, not just on the dais here, but in the community, it is the only way out of the dilemma that is faced here, that we face as a community, because here's the truth. Ideology aside, people want to know that when they are in trouble, when they are a potential victim, when they're speeding down their streets, that the police officer, a police officer is going to respond. You're darn right they do, and that's the majority of people in this community. At the same time, Measure L reveals, as much as anything else, people want more investment in young people. They want more prevention, early intervention. So if you think on either side, you're going to win the ideological fight here, convince the other side, modern policing needs to change. We've acknowledged that. There needs to be a lot more work around how we respond in our various diverse communities. And, you know, this chief, and I've seen it with this manager, you don't see a lot of it out in the public because a lot of it is kind of the rough stuff behind the scenes, are doing a really good job in trying to move the department in that way. And we have Dr. Watson, too, in the Office of Public Safety Accountability, that every day is pressing the case, and we're going to hear more from her with some of her audit work as well in the weeks ahead. But people want a good, solid police department. They want, they want the officers available to be able to respond to crime. The answer lies in finishing the research that the public health advocates have put forward here. And, you know, we need your help and maybe others as well because we all want to, you know, check each other's work and make sure that we have it all together. But ultimately, the real reform is in redefining what we expect of the modern police officer in a way that's fair to them and better for the public. Because guess what? Somebody said it, and you've all said it in different ways. It's not fair to men and women who are trained to combat crime to have to intervene in every single crisis situation in our community. It's not cost-effective, it's not safe. And so that's on us. The DCR is the hope, and you're right, City Manager, we're not going to do it overnight. And what's happened here since you, so you know how things are so well-connected, that the reason why DCR has not yet lived up to its potential is because we've had to ask our staff to be on the front lines of the homeless crisis. That's the answer. So how are we trying to change that? Well, we are saying very clearly, we need to be in partnership with our county, that we can't do this alone. We don't do health and human services, we don't do mental health and substance abuse. And it would be a mistake for us to try to take that on as a primary function since another entity of government has the funding, the history, and the skill set to do it. So we've got to write that a little bit so that we, or a lot, so that we can free up the DCR and grow it and really grow it, budget-wise and otherwise, so that we can have this differentiation that will, it won't settle the ideological fights or disputes, but it will be smart justice, smart on crime, save lives, and get the police out of situations, and fire, by the way, as well, out of situations that they weren't trained to do. So let's follow up on this research, let's figure out what we need to do to have an even more detailed and better assessment of these calls with public health advocates, and maybe there are others as well who want to add to helping out with this project so that maybe as the year goes on and next year, we can begin making that shift in a way that just isn't possible now because of the responsibilities that we have, that we have asked DCR to perform. This is pretty good for 2023 government here in terms of a police budget, adding patrol, not increasing the budget much, and in fact, eliminating a lot of vacant positions. Let's go forward feeling pretty good about this, even though it's 11:10 at night.
Thank you for your, thank you for time.
All those in, all those in favor of the item on asset forfeiture, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
What? Yeah, we do have public comment on items not on the agenda. We do have several people, so let's hear from them.
So Mayor, I have five speaker slips.
Yeah.
First is Ryan Misano, I believe he has left.
He's gone.
Rebecca Sandoval.
Reddins.
Macworthy.
Next.
Macworthy.
Next.
Mr. Worthy.
Don't need to keep hearing it.
Calling Mr. Worthy is Samuel.
We...
Barry Akis.
We didn't hear about a budget tonight, we heard a lot of lip service here. That's all.
Please proceed.
People, we got to wake up. Mayor, that's your problem. Let them know your background. Let them know your background, you were only bonds and grants over there. That's all. League of California Cities is the person that paid for him those bonds. Now, when we come up here and we talk about, oh, well, we're going to do this, get away from those neighborhood organizations.
No, I was mistaken.
Those are the things who are going to spoil the situation here. No police need to listen to no nonprofit organization. Where were their expenses from? Where did that money go? That was your voting base. That was your voting base, those neighborhood associations. They were lying to you, some of them come here tonight, I know they found drugs. One come here, said, oh, well, Rick Jenny, Rick Jenny ain't done nothing. Go back to the pros, Oakland Raiders, he ain't had no record down there. He got hurt and they saved him and fixed him up. Jack LaCha, character long as a record down there, people. Wake up. You know, he ain't saved nobody. He ain't saved a soul. Get away from you, say you do this. No, you can have a gang, is what is your intent? What is a gang intent? That's why, anything you can organize in America is what is your intent of organizing there. So wake up, people. Never let the police department listen to a community organization because that's who, the vote, I want what I want, who is a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(4) that you took money from or you put money out here because if they own the city budget, why didn't we get it here? Where's that report? Ain't no report.
Wait a minute, Mayor, can we make sure?
You know, we want to know what is that report, what are they doing out there?
Yeah, if everyone, if everyone could please take the conversation outside, we appreciate. We still have, we still have a little business to do here.
Yeah, but see, the thing, all that you ain't asking for, what was Rick Jenny going to China for? We ain't got that report. What did he take to China, what did he bring back from China? Where's that report? We need reports of those organizations out there, 501(c)(3) and 501(c), we need those things here. We need to know that budget based around these people here.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Well, I'll be back.
Yeah, you'll be back, all right. See ya.
Samuel, then Barry Akis, then Keon Bliss. Akis, thank you.
Barry, you want to come? Oh.
Samuel.
Hi, my name's Samuel, my pronouns are they/them. There's a couple of things I wanted to speak on. I just wanted to remind the, well, specifically the mayor, just if you could, be mindful of the tone that you use while you speak to elderly, especially black and brown elders. Thank you. Something that I've noticed is, especially from last week, is it's interesting to me that I personally wouldn't feel comfortable coming and talking to the city manager or the mayor, and if I could feel like and I see that the people on the council are, don't feel like they're being heard, how do you think that makes your constituents feel? And also just like absolutely appalled by the city clerk in this, like, it doesn't make sense to me that you are allowing this individual to continue to come up here and incite violence, you know, and then continue to give him time? One of those people, most marginalized communities, who are literally coming up here and telling you...
Is it funny?
It's really not, it's really not.
Decorum?
It's interesting how you pick and choose. Okay, Darrell. It's really, it's interesting how you pick and choose and it's super, like, it's super not fair. Like, you really, for the second time, gave this man more time to speak when you have people coming in here screaming on the top of their lungs about how much harm is happening to your most marginalized communities and your constituents, and you let someone who is spewing hate and violence come up here and speak and you give it more time. Make that make sense.
We'll get some decorum when we get some justice. How about that? Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Barry, then Keon Bliss, and then I have four speakers on line.
Mayor, City Council, I'd like to first, let me put this over here first. I'd like to first thank everyone who supported the college tour. We had 15 youth from Sacramento that went to six different colleges in the DMV area, DC, Virginia, Maryland, so thank you very much for all the council members and the mayor for supporting those things, those exposure, that experience, that is preventive, things that we, you know, do. But after I came back from this beautiful tour, I came back to what's continuing to happen in our community. Right here is Mariah, the one-year-old, the one-year-old that got shot just a few days ago in Del Paso Boulevard. While I wasn't able to be here earlier with my colleagues to talk about what we need to reinforce the necessary sustainable funding that we've asked for multiple times, and I want to be very clear, as I'm here present with my council, to say and understand that there's a difference between giving money for intervention when it deals with gun violence, gang violence, and when we're just dealing with youth, right? With youth that probably are not on that side of the fence, but youth that need to be funded. So there's two different streams. So let's make sure that we don't look, if we give money to the CBOs to deal with the gun violence and the gang intervention, that we forget about the other youth funding that we need when we're talking about the community pop-ups, we're talking about the big summer programs, we're talking about all the other interventions that happen, after-school programs, before-school programs, all of those programs, it's two different things. So I just want to reiterate that. Thank you, guys. I know it's been a long session, so I also wanted to say, appreciate it. But as you guys have seen, the work that we do with the college tour, those are some of those things that we talk about.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Intervention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Really appreciate those last comments and also want to show appreciation for councilmembers who've been asking the tough questions tonight, as well as one comment that came up from Councilmember Vang around sunshine is our friend. And a lot of the tension and frustration and anger that you hear from community members, a lot of that could be, actually be de-escalated if you were just upfront and were willing to share information with them, which is supposed to be publicly available. I mean, after all, these are our public institutions, they're not private corporations, they're not businesses, they are public institutions and their power is derived from them, from us. And one of the things that immediately escalates it, I don't know how you, like, how it hasn't really been brought up or addressed, is the way that you treat them during public participation moments like this. The decorum that people were citing about, saying, like, calling out its roots in white supremacy, they're not wrong. And it's something that we actually called out before, and it was something that I was personally targeted by just last year, when I was tried to, when I was tried to remove from my appointed position. The way that you treat people when they come up to this stand, cutting them off, cutting off their mic, is disrespectful. I think you all know that, many of you do, even if you don't want to say it out loud, but that is a fact. And the more disrespect that you show them with how you treat them in their hall, in this public institution, the less likely they're going to actually show any respect for decorum. It doesn't matter who you pass the buck to, it is going to be, they are going to respect how they are treated. Respect is a two-way street. So if you want people to actually show up here and respect rules and talk orderly to you, it might be time for you to actually show them real respect and treat them with that way, and not just cut them off like you're about to do right here.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ.
Cops don't prevent crime. I can't, I can't say this more. I mean, the numerous bootlickers that just, I just adored them. I mean, the numerous bootlickers that, that just taught, just adored them and basically knelt down before them. They only ever show up after a crime has occurred. They do not prevent crime. They only ever can show up after a crime has occurred and there is already a victim. That isn't addressing crime. If you want to address the roots of crime, you address it before there is a victim, not afterwards. And for all the bootlickers paying fake lip service to cops, we need evidence. I require evidence. Maybe you all don't need evidence to spend $230 million, but I would. You're all ignorant if you ignore people calling for evidence, if you're going to waste a quarter of a billion dollars of our tax dollars on ineffective tactics. They're used to be, they're used to being grandfathered in. They're used to being accepted as valid. We have zero evidence of their efficacy, and the public is sick of them getting that deference. We require evidence. We require proof that what they are using is actually working. And be more hand-wavy, virtue-signaling, unserious by tossing a measly $1 million at intervention programs while forking over a quarter of a billion to an unproven system. That's pathetically low. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jennifer Holden.
Hello, and it's almost morning, Mayor Steinberg and council members. So I'm referring to a letter I sent to Mayor Steinberg last night. I don't expect a response. That's not my, my point. However, you made a comment at last week's city council meeting about the lack of participation in the annual budget review. And my letter that I, I sent to you is regarding a couple of points that immediately came to mind as to why people might, more people might not have been participating in a broader public comment in, in process. One, one point I really want to highlight tonight, which is if assistant city managers started talking to neighborhood associations and other community-based organizations about the budget, like, a couple, a month, two, three, four months before they came to the city council, that might really help to improve engagement in the entire budgeting process. I also have some other points in the letter that I'm not going to have time to go into related to how much time the community has to read very lengthy, long documents, and what those, reading those documents are like for people. So I do await your answer to my letter sometime soon, Mayor Steinberg, and I look forward to continuing the conversation about how to improve community engagement in city council processes and meetings. I think there is a lot of work that can be done, and there's, there's a few policies and practices that can be altered. So thank you very much, and I hope the meeting is over soon and we all get to sleep soon. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is caller user two. I have two more callers.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I, I'm used to going last. I remember when I used to come to the chamber, they used to put my paperwork last so I would leave. And I haven't left yet. The thing that disturbs me tonight the most is as I listened to the city manager and his exchange with Vice Mayor Guerra and his insistence that it would be a 10-year window to improve anything regarding equity, diversity, and inclusion.
That's not what he said.
He should be, no, no, listen now. I'm not that guy who comes up there talking about different things. I'm actually in here talking about actual facts, so I'd appreciate not being, being interrupted, because I'm not playing here. I'm serious about what I'm doing. And I heard him talk about, every time someone mentioned diversity, even on the city council, you can sense his resistance, and there's resistance inside the city manager's office. And it's not just him. It's different nationalities and different races. They've been exposed by Sacramento News &amp; Review. It was called the H&R racist Barnum &amp; Bailey scandal. That's when I found out about the AAELC. People should get familiar with the AAELC. That's one of the most courageous group of women I've ever studied. And I think people should really focus in on the resistance to diversity, inclusion, and equity. And it was on display today by the city manager. And by the way, I'm still waiting for the city manager's report. They didn't do it at 2 o'clock, and they didn't do it today. You should take...
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Mike Snell.
Yeah, so just want to reiterate, we're growing permanent positions and permanent divisions in law enforcement. We're, we're growing those positions, mind you, instead of, you know, growing our community outreach through, through the partnerships. And so as an OIF, OIF, Iraq-Afghanistan veteran, you can't spend your way out of conflict through enforcement. Understand that. We didn't win in Iraq and Afghanistan. I sacrificed time for my family, for my son, for that, and we did not win, because that was the wrong approach. Enforcement's not it. In addition, our budget issues run out of money. Hey, so while I'm having an issue opening up my dispensary because of, after passing everything, but my business plan needs intricate, detailed changes to include a promise of 2% gross revenue donated to a charity, which is fine, but how come alcohol license holders don't have to do that? And they're out here, like you were talking about, while you're on the right of the line, Mr. Mayor, you had to respond to that kind of situation. I don't see that on that side of the business. Make it, let's, let's make it balanced, let's make it make sense, you know? And I just do want to apologize to those who I'm seeing on here. I empathize with you, that you're feeling your pain, you're not feeling heard. Hell, even Mayor, I hate to see the hate that was spewed in your face as well. Nobody, I don't like to see that. It's unfortunate. I experienced it myself as a black man in America. But how do we build as a community better and make more balanced decisions with the budget? So we're not, like I said, the, the police department, these folks, just because they're trained, it doesn't mean that they have the answer, the best response to whatever situation they're called out for. So we have to, we have to invest more in the CBOs. Shoot, and last, I'm just leaving it at that. You guys have a good night. I hope you guys are getting an Uber. It's late, and driving fatigue is a, well, I'll let law enforcement handle that.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. We are adjourned.